Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. We're gonna go ahead and call the Bloomington City Council Budget Work Session to order. And we'll get just a couple more minutes or just a couple of seconds here. Barb Atkins has got something for us. Oh, I've got one of those already. Thank you. Thank you all very much, and thank you. It's early in the morning, but we're with enough coffee or Diet Coke or whatever, we're gonna all be able to continue to function. Again, thank you all for coming, and I thank the council for especially some of us having to make some extreme sacrifices to be here on a Saturday. And we do have some very serious challenges that we're facing. And I think the budget situation, I think it's pretty safe to say, is worse than any of us had expected. I believe if I'm not misquoting our city manager, it's the worst since his first year that he came. And there are perhaps a variety of reasons. Some of it, of course, is because our sales tax revenues are not just flat, they seem to maybe even be declining. It's that we have, in order just to keep the people we currently have, we're gonna need over $4 million more next year than this year. Some of that's healthcare costs, but some of it is also getting caught up with union contracts, some of it's getting caught up with personnel evaluations, and that's all hitting us in one year. That's part of it. Another 1.6 million, of course, is the pension policy that we approved, a very aggressive pension policy back in November, and that's all hitting us at once. Now, some of the challenges, the more that I've kind of gone through this, it's really sobering when you take a look at a budget and you realize that there is a very large structural deficit. a form of other budget cuts or some combination. What path do we take? And that's obviously our job, our responsibility, our duty, and to make it clear to our citizens that we're not promising a free lunch. And there aren't any free lunches at this point. So even if we, let's say, are against, we decide that we are gonna oppose a public utility tax, if we're gonna save people the $7 a month, what is it gonna cost us to save the $7 a month? How are we going to get there? What's the pain associated with that? So that's what I'm hoping as much as possible, we can be precise and clear. Now, a couple of things. We, through our budget kind of small group sessions, we had one or two council members, myself, Patty Lynn Silva, and David Hales meet on some of these budget issues. And we, basically, it was a presentation of the issues, the problems, our dilemma, and what are some possible solutions. Frankly, some of the possible solutions that came out of those meetings are not gonna be terribly fruitful. One was pursuing contracting out. And actually, for examining contracting out in some cases might help us, it might actually cost us more. But it doesn't mean we don't pursue that, it's just, that's not gonna solve our structural deficit. If we have, maybe we can save 75,000 here, 25,000 there on contracting out, that's not gonna solve our structural deficit. Doesn't mean we don't pursue that as an option, but we have doable by one of the members of the city council was to lay off half the BCPA staff. Okay? So that's at least something. If we laid off half the BCPA staff, that gets us a little less than 2% of the way to where we need to be to just close the budget loophole this year. So if we follow up on that, many members of the council had thought, and many members of the public have said, public safety should be off the table. Others said, public safety should be on the table. But if we started with that, if in addition to laying off half the BCPA staff, and I'm just using these as examples for what the kinds of things we need, if we shut down the zoo and laid off half the BCPA staff, we would be 10% of the way there, we need 90% more just to get through this year. If we also closed down the pools in the summer, and that's still not gonna get us too far, we've gotta, if we do then begin to go into public safety, we say we lay off 10 firefighters, 10 cops, we're halfway there. That's just this year. So I'm using those as examples that this is, these are the kinds of things that we need to consider, especially if we're gonna say, we don't want a public utility tax, even if it's earmarked for pensions, right? So this is what I'm hoping as we go down this path, we realize, we know what the pain is in the budget that the city manager has proposed. A public utility tax, I would insist that it's earmarked for pensions, but regardless, if we go down that path, it's gonna cost some people less than $7 a month, some more. We know what that pain is. If we're not gonna go down that path, then also, let's articulate what's the pain. And I'll start just in terms of going out on record to say, I do support the city manager's budget minus many of the new positions, and as long as the public utility tax is earmarked for pensions. So I'm gonna turn it over to David for some introductory remarks, and then we will go forward.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Let me just, I wanna recognize and thank several staff members. The budget binders you have here this morning is basically, don't get too concerned how voluminous that is, but basically, that's a hard copy of the presentations, the brief presentations you're gonna see in a minute. But really, the first 10 pages is really the most significant part. We'll keep coming back to that as we'll look on the agenda. But Patty Lynn, Carla Marillo, Katie Bidos, Justine Robinson, they were working till 7, 10 o'clock last night, making sure that you had copies of some very important documents for our use today. Thank you. Also appreciate the directors. We've had many meetings over the last couple of weeks, as we've continued to try and take in what we're hearing, what we can do to kind of bring to you today some budget scenarios to kind of help you in a very difficult process. I'm very proud to be part of the senior management team who is constantly trying to balance our view and our opinion of the needs of the city with the fiscal, the political realities, what our citizens are thinking about, and how they're trying to cope in this day and age. And lastly, I wanna thank you, the mayor and the council, for your service to the community. We know you have a very difficult and challenging job, but as staff, we're here to do all we can to support you, to assist you. And hopefully, some of the things we're gonna present in a few minutes will be helpful to you today. Let me just give you three numbers I'd like you to write down, if you would, and remember. First is 1.8. That stands for 1.8 million dollars. That is the revised drop in sales tax revenue we believe we will receive next year. So contrary to the budget proposal submitted to you last month, we are gonna show you how our revenue projections for next year have been revised to have 1.8 million dollars in less general fund revenue, specifically sales tax. And we'll show you a little bit more detail. The second number, 2.5 million. Beginning with fiscal year '16, not the year we're talking about today, but beyond, we're projecting to just maintain existing staff. 6.5, standing for 6.5 million. The police and fire pension funding proposal, or policy which you adopted, is going to require an additional 6.5 million dollars in new revenue over the next five years. three phrases to kind of think about. The first is long-term financial planning, physical infrastructure, and human infrastructure, meaning our employees. First, on long-term financial planning, we're gonna be starting today to be more aggressive, more proactive in trying to project out our revenue and expenditures, not just for the next 12 months, but more so the next three to five. We have some very capable finance people that have been hired, starting with Patty Lynn and Carla and many others. And it's critical now, I think, as we get past the last five years going forward, you have, and the community has, much more specific, precise, well-articulated projections of what is the future revenue and expenditures based on various policy scenarios which you adopt. We'll get in and show you how the police and fire pension fundings, what's that gonna look at like, as I mentioned, the 6.5. We also realize that any long-term financial planning has to be adjusted for and taken into account the new realities. Across the nation, governments realize that we have limited resources to draw on, we have ever-increasing infrastructure needs, we're still in an anemic economic recovery, a lot of people still out of work, and our labor and commodity costs continue to go up with inflation. So these are all things, I think, over the next couple of years, you'll see a greater emphasis of the staff and I in trying to help give you and the community better, more reliable, long-term financial plans to help you in your job. Second, fiscal infrastructure. While this budget doesn't really get into a lot of infrastructure increase and infrastructure planning, as you know, the last couple of years, we have $400 million in deferred maintenance and major utility asset replacement needs. We feel that we have a great need to begin during this calendar year between now and December is to engage the council in doing a lot more of projections. We'll be bringing back some five- and 20-year capital budget scenarios to help you and the community look at, based on existing water, sewer, stormwater, motor fuel tax, general tax revenue, what can we afford, but what would we not be able to afford, based on these projections? So again, this calendar year, as we get this budget, excuse me, adopted, a lot will be spent. And you cannot separate infrastructure from economic development needs. Businesses rely on a good, clean source of water, reliable utilities, good roads, and there's this constant interrelation and connection between infrastructure as well as economic development. And last, human infrastructure. As I mentioned during my budget message, our greatest asset is our employees, they are the face of the city of Bloomington, they are our ambassadors, they're very dedicated, hardworking, but they're not miracle workers. They can only do so much. Nevertheless, going forward, we need to increase our training to give our employees the knowledge, the skills, and abilities that are needed in this modern age that is changing so rapidly day to day. I've shared with you a revitalizing city government proposal that deals with culture change, customer service, and those are inherent of how we need to look to our employees to help us carry out and to provide the services of the city. And if I could just finish, because as we've had a lot of discussion, we realize that in addition to doing a lot of long-term financial planning, preparing a long-term capital improvement plan, and dealing with employee needs, I also firmly believe that this upcoming year and beyond, we have to have greater citizen outreach. We need to help the community. As you know, we're gonna embark on a comprehensive plan to really get into what do our citizens, our businesses, wanna see the city become. But we also need to engage in a much more focused, robust way, help our citizens understand the fiscal realities. As, just looking at infrastructure alone, for 25 years, the city has invested heavily in residential development at the expense of investing in existing infrastructure. You cannot reverse that in one year, two years, five years. But our citizens need to be part of the process. And so during this upcoming year, I'll be giving you more ideas, suggestions, how we can engage citizens in open houses, focus groups, surveys, citizen budget committees and others. Because I think we need the community to support us, to support you, and for them to help articulate what they want the city's financial plan to address our many needs to be, and what they will support. So with that, we have an agenda today that is based on trying to give you some updates, first on those first three numbers, the 1.8 million, 2.5, 6.5. We're also gonna give you some budget scenarios to help you for your discussion. Then that'll be followed up with some very brief, but very quick, departmental presentations of our major departments, line departments, not all departments. What we hope to do is be able to complete that by our first break, and that will bring to an end the formal staff presentations to the city council. So with that, Mayor, we're ready to move on to the
Actually, there are a couple of points that I was remiss, just to remind us, to some degree, our back is to the wall right now, because we've only got a little over a month before we have to have a budget. And so there are, as we listen to the staff presentation and we think about this from a macro-micro level perspective, we need to realize that next year, we may have as serious or maybe even a more serious budget situation. And that we can do a little more about with a year in prep. But right now, we don't wanna operate on continuing resolution or whatever, we can't do the fiscal cliff stuff that we see in Washington or at the state level. We're very, very, very close to the end of our fiscal year, so our budget situation and options are much tighter. And so just as I had mentioned, do I, even though I do support the city manager's budget minus the new positions, and assuming we would earmark the public utility tax for pensions, is it a budget I like? Absolutely not. It's a budget we can live with, I can live with. And essentially, the macro level ways that we get through it is, one, not spending $4 million on street resurfacing. I don't like that. I'd like the $4 million on street resurfacing when we pass the $10 million bond, I was hoping it was 10 plus 4. But I don't have any other options, especially at this point, for trying to figure out where we could wave a magic wand and get $4 million to put back in the budget. We do have to realize next year, though, if not consensus, because we may not agree, you know, all of us on any of the specific elements here, but if we can find some majority consensus. So it's also good that this is livestreamed, so that I, or the city manager, or Patty Lynn, or other staff that are putting this budget together can go back to say, alright, what did the council say? What were their directions? So as much as possible, if we have some differences, I'm not gonna, we're not taking a formal vote, but I wanna try to see if we've got at least a majority that says we want this versus something else. So that when this is put to a vote, it's a budget that somehow reflects 10 very different perspectives on what this is. Okay? Anyway, I meant to make those two points, I'm terribly sorry. Patty Lynn, I'll turn it over to you.
Patty's gonna be going through some slides, and if you wanna turn to the first section of the book you have here, it's called Financial Presentation, Fiscal Year 2015, Proposed Budget, Council 322. These pages, and especially the last several, dealing with budget balancing scenarios, is gonna be something we just wanna draw your attention to. And just for the public, anyone who's watching, these screens and these PowerPoint presentations, both by Patty and the department heads, will be put up on the screen. So those who are watching at home will be seeing everything that's being presented here today.
I think that's the budget overview that was given on the 20th.
But we don't have this, this doesn't exist electronically with what we're seeing?
It's not on the website yet, it will be posted shortly.
Just to clarify, for Alderman Sage's question, if people haven't heard that, he was wondering if this was what was produced on the link on the budget, on the website, but it's not. This doesn't exist in electronic copy form yet.
These have been developed just very recently.
Alderman Lauer?
Is there a way that we could provide a disc or something, or at a fee even?
Sure, just like with the budget, that's on disc, we can have this. All this information will be posted, too, on our website by the first of the week.
I've been contacted by several CPA professionals that would like to look through this.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. What I'd like to talk about first is David's first number that you talked about, the 1.8 million dollars. As we've been discussing somewhat informally, the sales tax has been declining. And we went back and revised our projections from the proposed budget that was presented on the 24th to what we think it should be when you adopt the budget. So we estimate that we're losing about 1.8 million dollars in revised revenues, 1.4 million of that relates to the state and home rule sales tax. What you have before you is, just change the view quickly here, is a trend here of looking up at the state sales tax. We have the nine-month year-to-date going back to 2005, and then rolling all the way to 2014. As you may or may not be aware, FY '13 was a stellar year for sales across the city. We've been talking about how growth in our sales tax revenue has kind of topped out, and we're seeing some slowdowns and some declines. Between the proposed and now, we have received the December sales numbers, and those you would expect to see be way up. They're still trending behind '13. So because of that, we've gone back and we've readjusted our estimates. But what you can tell from this going across in blue is that we're really trending more towards 2012 than we are 2011. So for nine months to date, we have 10.5 million dollars. We, this year, '13, and I'll show you more detail on the next slide, we've gone back and done the research, and we've seen a plummet in sales. Actually, there was a huge increase in sales in automotive and furniture in 2013. That is not reoccurring in 2014. So because of that, we're seeing a drop. And on the next slide, I can show you that detail from the state that we got. But because of that, because '13 is really an anomaly year, we're looking back at 2012, and we are running about $700,000 ahead of that. So we're adding those heads in, but we're still not gonna be quite at what we were in '13. So because of that, we really need to kind of skew those revenues down. And we're seeing the exact same trend in home rule sales tax, with the exception of automotive would not be included here. So again, they're about, we're gonna be excluding '13, and in comparison to '12, the nine-month data is showing that we're about half a million ahead of '12. We're gonna add that into our projections, but even with that, again, we're still having to drop. I'm just gonna move quickly to the next slide. This is a very detailed slide that, we get this data quarterly from the state, and it breaks down the sales tax that is earned in Bloomington across 10 categories. Keeping in mind that these categories are based on the type of company you are. We had, in the first nine months of 2014, I'm just gonna scroll over, we had earned almost $70 million in sales tax in this area. Of that, 45 million is retained by the state. We received 10.5 million in our city portion of the sales tax. Then we have our home rule sales tax, which is in addition to that, of 11 million, and then the county receives their share. So we get this information every quarter, and it's compiled by Justine Robinson, our Economic Development Director. But when we compare this to last year, which is 2013 through that same time period, if we go down below, we can see that the trend, not only for us, but at the state, is that furniture, home goods, TVs, things of that nature, those types of businesses, and automotive, car sales, used car sales, and fuel are down, not for everybody. And that's really, in '13 was a very, very high, and has now decreased in '14. So you can kind of see that trend going forward. Again, in home rule, you would not see the automotive, because automotive is excluded from home rule sales tax. We have our local used vehicle tax that we charge for them. So just wanted to make you aware of the research that we do do, and kind of the genesis that we're using to bring those numbers down, and let you know that as we refine those numbers, we think it'll be about a 1.8 million dollar loss from our original proposed budget. Moving ahead, both David and the mayor have talked a lot about the status quo budget. The status quo budget is essentially what we've tried to do here, is even without the new positions, we have, you're hearing this term structural deficit. What that means to me is that there is a, our expenditures at the current level of workforce, and some of our current obligations that we have, debt and insurances and otherwise, our expenditures are outpacing the growth in our revenue without adding any new revenue or raising any rates. So as we go forward and we look from '15 through '19, you can see at the bar chart here, that the green is our revenues, and the blue is our expenditures, and that we're really, again, at a status quo, we're really outpacing our revenues. We did assume a
And if I can just emphasize again, these projections do not include the new revenue proposed in this budget. It does not include any of the money for revitalizing, you know, city government. So again, I just wanna make sure that's very clear. We're trying to just show, kind of in the current year status quo, what could this funding gap continue to grow in the future years?
I did wanna make one correction. The most positive about, so there's an extra million in there. But we did, in this scenario, we restored, Mayor, you might like this, we restored the road program in this scenario.
But I know it's just a scenario.
It's just a scenario, but hey, I like looking at it, too. But if we were to do basically what we did in '14 and '15, and I also left the million-dollar cut in workers' comp here, to be fair, so we still have a deficit of about $7 million. And I'm sorry my commas aren't there, but this is in millions, and that's about a $7 million deficit. And you can see, we know now, because of the immune system and because of the analysis that we're doing, that our salary and benefits are gonna go up 2.5 million dollars a year on average. That's a fixed cost. That does not include the other costs, the commitment to the pension, our commitments to debt service, and the fact that our workers' comp and casualty insurance premiums do go up every year. Our commodities, not so much. But what often gets pushed are, of course, the discretionary items that we have, which are kind of capital, and then perhaps adding to programs for the workforce. But when I look
I can also add, too, is, you know, when we talk about this 2.5 million, a lot of time, everyone fixates on, well, what is the percent we include in salary increases in collective bargaining? Well, you also gotta keep in mind, many of these collective bargaining agreements also had longevity step increases, which are already built into the collective bargaining agreement. existing agreements as well. That's something you don't see in the private sector as frequently as in the public sector. So, go ahead.
Okay. And so, you know, when I look at this, it just, again, goes back to that structural deficit that, you know, over the last five years, the council has not acted to raise taxes, and has been good, you know, has, you know, judiciously managed and cut expenditures. In fact, now we're seeing perhaps maybe some of those cuts, we're needing to grow those. But what it tells you is that we're in the, at some point, we've got to raise revenue to cover the expenses, or we have to continue to cut significant expenditures. So, on the next slide, I just have that detail for you, that same chart in more detail for you. Our revenue increases a year, even with the amusement tax that I did leave in, and a 2% growth, because I think we've kind of topped out our sales tax, as we talked about. You're getting about $2 million a year in revenue, and we know that our costs every year are much more than that. And keeping in mind that this does not include any new dollars for the substantial $400 million in infrastructure that we know that is coming down the pipe that we need to long-term plan for. So restoring the road program of about $4 million a year is a bare-bones roads program. This year, we have the bond, but as we go forward, if we wanna have a robust road program and start to address some of our other major infrastructure needs, none of these projections even include debt service for that or cash for that. I did wanna talk a little bit about the utility tax. The utility tax is The utility tax is what we've proposed to help raise a recurring revenue stream. And what I've done here is I compared that to the pension funding. And you can see here that in green is the utility tax. If this starts with fiscal year 14, now in 14, we did actually put that into the tax levy, but this is just for, for pictorial. And in 15, we're showing this is the growth in revenue. This would be the proposed full implementation of the utility tax, of which we can't achieve the whole 4 million in one year because of timing differences, so that will grow slightly in 16. But you can see that it starts helping to fund that, the additional costs that we need for the pension funding. However, once you're in fiscal 17, you know, this is all we can really achieve in the utility tax. And our plan now is that pension funding will continue to grow. So, we need to, we're, we are getting close in these next few years. The utility tax would significantly, it would substantially cover the pension contribution that we've adopted. However, once we're in 17, we would need more. So I think as I prepare these documents, the recurring message that I've received as the finance director is, you know, we, we must, we must try to increase some revenues a little bit year to year. And that doesn't mean that the council certainly has prerogative to cut, but I think that overall in the long-term, I think we're going to have to see some revenue increases.
Before going there, Patty, if you could just go back to that.
Sure.
I'd be remiss if I didn't share with you what I'm hearing from firefighters, police officers, especially recently as I'm trying to have more meetings. Probably the number one morale issue that I see, especially as the firefighters and police officers, is they're, one, they're, they're very grateful for the council passing the police and fire pension policy. They feel that's a great first step. But they're much more concerned about, are you going to fund it? They're very concerned about how low the current funding ratio is of the pensions and they're concerned, keep in mind, police and firefighters don't have social security taxes to rely on. The pension retirement benefits is really their soul, other than any voluntary contributions or retirement savings. So among our, almost half of our general fund workforce, you know, those employees are waiting, watching. They realize that if you fund the policy as established, not only will the community save $70 million over 30 years- -but as you can see, even if, even if the utility tax is used as one source to help fund it, it still is not enough. So as you see these numbers going from $6 million a year to by year five, 12.5 million, that is something the council needs to come up with a fiscal policy decision of how are we going to fund? That's where, as the mayor said, the utility tax is one, but it won't be 100% sufficient to fund the policy over the next five years. Thank you.
Okay. What I've done to help with this budget is I've created a model that can be used. And for example, if we look at Budget Balancing Model A, it opens with our proposed revenues, the 93825309 of the general fund budget. We know already we have to bring that down by the revision in the revenue projections. So the new number that we're allowed to spend or that we have to get to is 91 million instead of 93 million. And we have a gap of 1.8 million dollars to fill. So we know going between now and the adopted budget, we, no matter what, we have to cut 1.8 million dollars. On the second screen, I took the liberty, sorry David, of taking out all the new staff and the revitalization of the city to help address this issue. The question certainly has been posed and certainly these are new things that we are adding in 15. If all the new staff salary and benefits were cut and also the revitalization dollars were cut, we'd actually be to the positive based on about a half a million dollars. Now, that keeps in mind that we are keeping all the revenue as proposed. So I said, okay, well, what if we don't keep all the revenue as proposed? Let's look at that.
And before we go on, again, these, these, let's see, I think we have Model A through E. Do believe that this could be a real focus as you kind of begin your dialogue, but let me just say in B, I've been very involved with, with Patty on this, what we are trying to show is even if we back out all the new staff, all the revitalizing dollars, we're trying to give you at least a starting point for your discussion. I do want to say this, I still believe that some new staff is critical. It is necessary. I do believe that some of the revitalizing dollars is necessary. It's critical to make that investment in our employees. But I know what we're trying to do is give you some high-level scenarios, say if we back out all that new, get back to a base budget, you know, what's that bottom-line funding gap? So hopefully I'll be able to speak to that a little more so. Not trying to get too detailed, as David Sage has talked about, we're trying to give you some what scenarios with the idea that we could have more discussion. But B kind of begins that and let's go to the other C.
Just, just on, on B, just to clarify, so there'd be just under half a million in a sense in a surplus.
Surplus.
So it's one option, could be option B, and then we take some of that for revitalizing the city and a couple of-
A few positions, a few revitalizing, yes, very much so. Yep.
Moving forward to Model C, this is where I take into account that perhaps the revenue will not-
Wait, we have a, we have a question.
Sure.
Old woman Schmidt asked me this and I, I'm not, the, under B, Budget Balance B.
Yeah. You show under revenue as proposed, utility tax zero, amusement tax remains with a dash, but then under the assumptions, it says utility tax, amusement tax as proposed.
Yes, I should, I should clarify that to you. The, the top number, the 938 includes in the city manager's proposed budget, the 3 million in utility tax and the 1 million in amusement tax. It's in the number above. So if we were going to remove that, which you'll see in the next slide, I would be taking that out of the total number. Okay.
And again, let's just make sure, I want to make sure everyone-
So in this number, in this number right here-
Yeah. Model B includes, includes full implementation of the utility tax. Keeping in mind that we won't get all the utility tax this year, but a good portion and a little bit more next year as well. And so our utility taxes would go up to, say, 5% maximum and the amusement tax is included in well, as well.
Those spaces are there so that we can use them to model and adjust. So I think moving to Model C will help. So what you're seeing now on Model C is this model would be the phased-in implementation of the utility tax. So the $3 million for utility tax is in the 93. We're taking away the 1.8 million we would lose from that number if we phased in over two years. And then of course, we must adjust to 1.8. So you're really, your new expense number, what you're allowed to spend in this scenario is 90 million.
And Patty, let's stay on that for a minute. So instead of going from 2.5 to 5% utility tax, one time, we'd go from what, maybe-
You'd go halfway there.
Halfway there. So it's a two-step increase in the utility tax. A half a step, you know, much smaller, the following year, the second, and then by the third year, then we would hopefully be getting a full 12 months of full 5% utility tax. Is that correct?
That's correct. In 15, we'd go a half step. In 16, you'd go to the max in, over two fiscal years. And then in 17, you'd still have some runoff increases from timing differences.
Okay. Just to clarify in C then, essentially, if we don't, if we phase it in, in two, essentially two steps, we've got 1.85 million dollar gap. Are we getting less, excuse me, we're getting that much less revenue. So in order for us to do that, assuming no new staff, no revitalization, we still are shy a little over 1.3 million.
Yep. That would be the cut we would still have to make in expenditures to balance.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to Model D. Model D is actually taking out all the utility tax and leaving the amusement tax in for a million dollars. So we take out the 3 million that was included. We leave in the 1 million for amusement tax. We're adjusting down the revenue projections. If you took out the new staff and the revitalization, the gap would grow to 2.5 million dollars that would have to be cut from somewhere else.
So just staying on that for a minute, again, it's no, and we do understand, some of you have talked about, you know, that, that no to any utility tax increase, but we would keep in that amusement tax. So would still have to cut the budget 2.5 million on top of totally removing all new staff and all revitalizing dollars. So that 2.5 is, is what we'd still have to cut with those expenditure reductions as shown.
And then moving to E is even the removal of the amusement tax. And of course, then your deficit would grow by a million dollars, the gap to fill. So this was, we put this together to try to give you the, you know, the treetop view of the budget and then the dollar that would need to, the dollars you would need to get to depending on what, what you feel you can do. And then, then how, how to fill that gap.
And then, then all of these, just to, just to, all of these don't have roads.
It, it-
Right, the 4 million.
Yeah, does not have the 4 million. And that's a good point, Mayor, because if you wanted to look at a scenario where you add back in 4 million for street resurfacing, you've just got to add 4 million to the funding gap.
To each figure. So, so under E, if we didn't, didn't raise, that's where, kind of, we were to begin with. If we didn't raise any taxes or whatever, we would have about a little over $7.5 million gap to do what we do this year.
And that's cutting existing staff-
Right, right.
Eliminating existing programs, yeah, with no expansion of anything that's being proposed. Exactly.
So I kept this in Excel for your convenience if you need help with some modeling and I'm here to do that. I can, I did put in a line for street resurfacing because I heard about that and then a line for potential add-backs if any.
Now, and again, just keep in mind that going back to those three-year projections, we were throwing back in those projections that beginning in fiscal year 2016, adding back 4 million dollars for street resurfacing to, so, you know, those future years out there, we have been throwing back in 4 million, beginning with the year after this next one, so that you can see the challenges we're going to have even in fiscal year 16, trying to accommodate 4 million dollars of restored street resurfacing dollars.
Other questions from the council of, Ms. Alderman Sizini?
Two questions. One, I have three questions on what was presented and then I have a full page of suggestions and questions on the budget, which maybe should go under, after the break where it's discussion.
Right, yeah, I think that that's probably safe. If you have something immediate to this, just to clarify what data was presented in front of us.
Patty, on the first page, the last item- And 1.5 or is that one?
It's 1.5.
1.5, okay.
Yeah, 1.5.
So we have that. And then on page, the third page, it includes all the pension makeup.
Yes.
Good. But does it include any of the $400 million deferred maintenance makeup?
Well, in this case, we're talking about the general fund and the only, you know, in the 76 million dollars in deferred roads or that number that we have, you're, the 4 million has been restored, but no, the long-term plan for the facilities plan in the general fund and the road resurfacing or program-
Right.
-which is quite large, no, we don't have that in here yet. So this is kind of a bare-bones status quo, if you will.
Okay. And the street and sewer part for the first year, zero.
In 15, yes. Well, other than the bond, yes.
That's a whole new issue we'll talk about, okay. Alderman Sage and then Lauer, in that order, I saw you.
So Patty Lim, I want to be sure I understand, when we're looking at the one page and when we're looking at the categories around furniture-
Yes.
-and automotive and such.
Yes.
So, so we saw that little spike in 13. And, and so that kind of suggests to me, right, that, I guess I'm asking, but I'm also maybe kind of speculating here, that maybe that was some pent-up demand, right? People, we had, we saw some housing starts maybe come up. People bought furniture, appliances or whatever and, and replaced vehicles. I, I mean, at some level-
Yes, I think, I think calendar 2012 has been cited by the EDC as the biggest car-buying year.
So I guess my point is, is we, we may not see a return real soon to those tax revenues around furniture and/or cars if, if in fact, kind of what we saw was kind of a pent-up demand that, that kind of took place in, in, in one year or a year and a half or whatever. So I guess I just want to kind of clarify that in my mind. Did I also understand on, on the other page, that even if the utility tax is fully implemented at 5%, that-
The assumption is with a full implementation of the utility tax, it will not cover the increase in pensions. We correlated those two. But in general, yes, the full increase of the utility tax will not fix the structural deficit in the general fund in the long-term. It, it will help, it will go a long way, but it will not be the end-all.
Right. So at the, so I guess at the end of the day, even with all, all proposed taxes being fully implemented, there's no, I, I mean, we're, we're either going to have to either cut services, cut employees or raise revenue.
Yes.
I mean, there is such a structural deficit there.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So I guess I, I kind of wanted to start to get my mind around that because the, the kind of money we're talking about is, as the mayor alluded to, I mean, we can close down different facilities and- Services, is it? Is it? I'm kind of a simple guy, right?
And again, that's, and that's just focusing on the police and fire pension funding too. You know, that's just one component, yeah.
One piece of the growing deficit, you know, the growing cost-
To fund that pet, police and fire pension funding policy, you're, you're correct. We will have to do that over the next five years to meet the obligations on funding in the policy that you've adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to bring Justine up for just a quick minute because I, I also want to, as we look at these sales tax projections, we're also having a lot of discussion internally on the impact of State Farm. We realize with the loss of employees, shifting employees, we keep hearing different numbers, but we also are believing that there's fewer buyers out there, you know? But can you also comment on what you're hearing Justine too and any other commentary on these sales tax numbers in the current year versus last year in projections?
Certainly, thank you City Manager Hills. There's a few things that happened in the last fiscal year that helped increase- ... as we're starting to see shifts to other major metropolitan markets. Those purchases will not continue to happen if the investments are not staying local. The other thing that you need to take into consideration is that as we continue to fill retail space, we're at a 98% occupancy right now with our retail space within the city of Bloomington. So essentially, we're reaching our peak for our opportunity in terms of capturing new sales revenue and, and generating new sales and sales tax revenue within the city. Unless new retail developments are created, new spaces are created, and then we can bring in new retailers, we will not continue to see those increases in sales tax generation. So those are two top highlights.
And if I might comment too, I, I think part of that, bringing on new retail space, looking at Bloomington, could very well require, let's see, what am I thinking of? Redevelopment of existing spaces, which can be very, much more costly. Developers will more likely be coming to us asking for participation, just like we're seeing in many of the projects of normal. So because we are so build-out, we don't have vacant land, this redevelopment to create new, modern, maybe more appealing, you know, retail spaces could also be something where we're approached and these developers and retailers saying, we need incentives to do this. It is going to be more costly for that redevelopment than some of the bare-land development that we've seen in the- that we've seen in the, in the past. So just something to keep in mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Lauer?
Yeah, I've got a question. And this kind of gets a little bit deeper, stepping back and looking at the entire picture, though. Of the degradation in sales tax projections overall, both the home rule and the, the general, have you taken into account the fact that there's only so much discretionary business income and discretionary personal income that is out there being spent? So we've got a, a bit of a deficit there as well. Is it going to be larger because of that and we have not looked at it? Or did you account for that, you believe?
That's a tough question because I'm, I'm not sure that we have the details on how much each business has for discretionary spending.
I understand that, but we should have an overall estimation of, of our effect on the business environment if we, just as an example, enact this doubling of, even over time, of their utility tax. This can be very, very taxing on, on the local businesses and it will force them to pull back and not have the additional expansion, say, hiring additional employees or expanding within their own realm.
Alderman, I, I just might add that yes, you know, in the overall context, that is being taken into account in the national, the state, in the local numbers as an example, as we see income tax returns coming in for the Bloomington Normal Area, we see what's happening to income growth. We're also tracking what's happening to overall private sector income growth and so forth. So there is a lot of those macro numbers that, you know, just the sales dollars take into account. Certainly, if we start seeing income tax dollars being flat or dropping, if we start seeing, you know, overall personal income not going up, yes, that will be taken into account. But so far, there has continued to be an increase. However, I think this next year, you know, will be very telling on where's that trend going to go, especially with the trend continuing to go down.
Thank you. And Alderman Sterns?
Thank you, I've almost forgotten my comment now, but I did want to say procedurally that if we're going to ask questions and when I hear things said that I, then I have a question, we're going to be way off our, our agenda and our schedule and we already are. And I just want to say that because if we're going to keep doing this, then, you know, the day is going to be structured very differently, but I will go ahead and make my comment. And, and that is simply that I don't think we, we can or should speculate about, I mean, I, I like to see the trends, I, we can talk about, you know, people moving out of the state of Illinois, State Farm transfer, we can talk about all kinds of things, but we really don't know. And what we need to do and keep in mind is that we should budget for the, you know, the worst-case scenario, obviously, with, with tax trends and not, not, you know, depend on some kind of revitalization that we haven't even seen yet because there are so many macro factors that we, we have no idea. And then I, I put another phrase that I want to, I want to key in on real quick, and that is, we have two options, we can increase taxes or we can reduce services. And obviously, no one wants to advocate for either of those. The problem is that the city's budget, the 160 million or whatever, is not all services. In fact, if, if we concentrated on core. It's a question of whether we should cut spending in, in those areas or not. But to say either increase tax or reduce services, no, sorry. There are many, many things City of Bloomington does that are not services to our citizens. That's all I have to say and I appreciate that if I can just, if we can let it drop at that.
Those are the kinds of things. Be used to terminology if we're talking about services. I'm not sure what it is that we do that, that aren't services, but we'll, we'll talk about that. Patty Lim, anything else? Okay, and we are, as Alderman Sterns has said, running a little bit behind, so we can move on to Ken Bays from Police.
Mayor, as Kenny Bays is coming up, first, we just want to let everyone know that Police Chief Hefner had some pre-planned vacation, he's out of town, but he's asked his much-able and new Assistant Police Chief to come and take his place. I do want to say this, that you do have hard copies of all these presentations in the book. We've asked each of the directors to be very brief. We've set a maximum of 15 minutes, if you can keep it a little less, please do so. And we're asking them to focus on some of the highlights, not to just, you know, go over a lot of things that's in the budget book, but there is some critical service level information.
Today is, is, I think it's easy to put the police into a box that we're in our car and we go to calls and we clear, but we're, we're so much more than that. And it's either by edict or law or, or just our, our dedication to the community for the things that we do and provide our citizens. So as I go through this, I'm going to be stressing on a lot of the, for lack of a better, the services and what I feel are obligations to our, to our citizens that we do provide.
And Kenny, if I can, I just, as Jim was looking, I think it's the third, let's see, one, two, three, fourth red tab. So if you wanted to follow along, again, the fourth red tab does have this PowerPoint, so I just wanted to make sure if anyone else wanted to open that. Again, we do have it up on the screen, but you can follow along too if you go to that fourth red tab. Does everyone have, have that, that wants to follow along? So, okay, Kenny, thank you.
I tend to talk kind of fast, I'll try to focus on slowing down. I think it's important to start with what our current staffing is. This slide here represents that and it basically, we have 179 personnel. 127 are sworn in police, the others serve in some capacity to support our main mission, which is public safety. And we have our, our telecommunicators in there, we have some parking enforcement staff that report to us for, for supervision, in addition to other support services that play a very integral part in the success of our agency and the services we provide. Focusing on the sworn personnel, this is our current allocations. We have 81 patrol officers that are uniformed. Those are the, the boots on the ground, so to say, they serve in one capacity or another. Predominantly are, are, we're predominantly that focus, the focus is on the, the officers in the cars taking the calls. Obviously, there is a need for detectives in our, in our department for follow-up on serious crimes and perpetual crimes in order for us to stop them and, and aid in people feeling safe and secure in their community. With police work, there's a huge need for supervision. We're a 24/7 operation that requires advanced training, familiarity with laws. There's sometimes just hard questions that the, the officer out in the street just can't make, make the decision on, and you have to be able to access a supervisor at any time to make those decisions. And sometimes it comes all the way to my office, very oftentimes it does, it comes right up to me or, or the chief or, or my peer, A.C. Wheeler. Currently, our organization is broken down into these different disciplines that report to the, one of two Assistant Chiefs positions. My current position is Assistant Chief of Investigations and Administration. My attention is divided, I would say equally, but that wouldn't be accurate, over several of difference of these disciplines. Not listed in here is Officer Professional Standards, which would actually cover the internal investigations and complaints against our officers that are worthy of a definitive approach with scrutiny, just to make sure that our citizens are treated the way they should be getting treated and that our officers are defended the way they should be defended when they're acting properly within, within our policies, procedure and the law. Also not listed on here are 10 crossing guards that serve in a part-time capacity or seasonal capacity of the city to ensure the safety of our children crossing the streets of busy intersections throughout the city. And I spoke of the parking division, the parking enforcement personnel as well. And then three background investigators that serve in a function to ensure that we're hiring the right candidates for our, for our, all positions within the police department because, as I'm sure you all can relate, the necessity to have good, trustworthy employees, especially at the police department and the access and things that they have that comes with their positions. These are, this is where I'm going to start talking, I'm going to try to hit all of them. I'll focus on patrol is huge, as demonstrated by the pie chart you saw. Patrol is where it's at. Patrol is our backbone, patrol is where we, we get the most done. I don't, I don't want to leave it uncontained within patrol. We have an officer assigned completely to sex offender registration compliance. And I think it's a very, very important endeavor that if we didn't do it, it would be split amongst several officers that on top of all the other things they're doing, they're trying to make sure they do a quality job in that, it's just not a real feasible option. The same thing goes for the other positions listed under there. Our T9 unit serves in a, in a grand capacity with regards to the detection of drugs and things in vehicles and also in very serious crimes. They serve sometimes a dog's place in a position of risk that we wouldn't have to place an officer in. So I feel that's important. Another one I think you're all familiar with is our downtown hire back. An essential endeavor that helps us to, to manage all those things listed there. I don't know how many officers we put down there, but it's still supplemented by our on-duty personnel as well. But we go from four to six officers depending on the night, throughout almost every weekend of the year. Hire, hire staffing during the years that the colleges are in session. I think we all realize how essential that is. Our Criminal Investigations Division, very broad in its expertise. And unfortunately, with today, the complexity of crimes have come to such a point that you just can't do it all. You have to specialize to a degree in order to be effective. I mean, the challenges out there for prosecution are huge and if you don't specialize in it, you're going to, you're going to make mistakes and missteps along the way. Contained within our Investigations Division, I'd like to focus on our sex crimes, child abuse investigators, I don't need to expand on that much more, we all know how important that is. Domestic violence, we currently have two domestic violence detectives that focus on follow-up for domestic and also exposes victims to resources available to them to stop that cycle. You know, to get them out of the loop, which is the ultimate goal of anything we do is to stop it, deter it. Our criminal, uh, crime analysis unit, hugely, hugely assistive in this, this, just this PowerPoint, this isn't nothing of what they do, but they analyze data and give us things to work with so that we can focus our efforts where they're needed. If you look at the, the little diagram up there, where it's pretty easy at a glance to know where we're having trouble in that particular model, right? The hotspot, that's just one way. It's easy for some officers to look at that, say, others, I like numbers on paper. There's lots of people that love these, you know, and the officers, I get it, I'm out there. So. Communication Center, they provide 24/7 coverage for us, for both police and fire, and they serve in a capacity of somewhat of a call center for other parts within the city. Public Works after hours, the Water Department, things of that, that we dispatch resources and services to the community, making sure the service delivery is there, all hours of the day. Records and evidence and management, very critical. It's, it's, it's another essential part of us being successful and completing our mission to serve and protect the public. You know, trial's important, change of custody of evidence is important and maintaining records appropriately is, is important. Problem-oriented policing, I think some of you are familiar with that. That's, that's a pretty, very resource-consuming endeavor when we decide to take it on. It requires an appropriate analysis of a situation to see if it truly, truly is deserving of a P O P because of the resources it takes. But when we do it, we tend to have results. I think we've seen demonstrated at various locations throughout the city. We currently have a couple still active, they're starting to lean off a little bit, but it's a huge, huge commitment with requiring lots of hours, lots of man-hours and dedication and, and constant supervi, supervision over to keep people on target and motivated. School resource officers, it's an opportunity to have positive interactions with students on a daily basis rather than us getting out on them and writing them a ticket or arresting them. These, these school resource officers are actually friends of these children. They also work to improve, promote school safety and we know the importance of that across the nation, the things we've seen. And they also supervise those 10 crossing guards that I spoke of. Street Crimes Division, again, you've all heard of that, I'm sure, and you're hearing of these because we're using them, we're out there, we're doing it. We're out there, we're out there working on the problems. Street crimes can focus on a problem and respond to complaints. Oftentimes, we'll receive complaints from this council here that are passed on to you guys from citizens out there, and we try to attend to those problems. Without this, without this unit, we couldn't do that. We would just have to go case by case. What I want to stress from this is, if we take away from those, those services we provide, we're still going to have to provide the service, it's just going to come from somewhere else. So we're going to still be going to the schools for calls, they, they actually deal with criminal acts at the schools as well. We're still going to, we're still going to have to focus on the neighborhood problem, we're still going to focus on that drug house. It's just, it's still going to happen. Where are we at currently? We've noticed an 11% increase in the last two years in UCR crimes, the Uniform Crime Report. If you look at the bottom, those crimes out there are the ones that they focus on to gather these statistics. So crime is going up, you know, in our city, all right? 11%, I'd say that's, that's kind of huge after we've seen several years of a decline. But how are we doing when compared to some other locations in the area? But green represents, we're doing pretty good. So despite the 11% increase, the services that we're out there providing are having an impact. We're keeping those calls low because I believe, I'd like to say we're being proactive. So many times, law enforcement is a reactive position, but we're trying to be proactive with all those other officers in those different divisions that are staffed by that 127 people. This is how we're doing it, this is the results of our endeavors. We know the green represents, you know, we have a few there that didn't, didn't hit the green. I see one that maybe shouldn't be green necessarily, but overall, we're doing well. So calls for service have increased approximately 19% since 2009. If you look up here at this, we've gone from 60,000 calls to 73,000 in 2012. Projected numbers looking at the end of this quarter, we're looking at 80,000 calls for service this year if it follows the trend that we see right now. By the end of the quarter, we're going to be at 78,000 calls, I'm sorry, 19,000 calls in some service. The number of unfunded, unfunded legal mandates is growing ever, ever so much, every day. Concealed carry, are you guys aware that we have to screen the local candidates for concealed carry and the time-consuming that that takes, that requires our support staff and some officer work? All these things listed here are mandates that we must comply with, that we, we have to comply with and with them come a certain level of liability if we don't. So as calls for service increase, so does the need to ensure that we're delivering quality service. We have to audit and monitor the processes that we're out there in our service delivery. Compliance is with the laws, making sure, again, as I spoke earlier on internal investigations, increase accountability of our agency personnel. And, and we need to reduce liabilities and associated costs to not basically tend into the shop and taking care of the things that we have to take care of in-house. And we have to ensure that our officers are trained accordingly to meet all these demands that are placed on them and it's ever-growing. So with that, I'll venture into this area where we've asked for that third Assistant Chief. If you remember on the first chart, I believe 78 personnel were reporting to one position and the 98 didn't change on the operations side. It's structured fairly different and I spoke of how my attention is split amongst all those different areas. Unfortunately, my attention isn't focused as much as it possibly should be or likely should be under the professional standard section. And we would, if you look at the things listed under there, their attentions would be focused in those areas that offer and provide for us the highest levels of liability and require the, the most concentration so that we can deal with our other duties in the other areas.
I could just clarify, you've got people, some, some of the same personnel reporting to multiple chiefs, that's why the whole doesn't equal the sum of the parts?
I'm sorry, the last part? Yes, it's the same number plus one.
We only have, how many, how many total police?
120, 127 sworn.
27 sworn. And so this is also including the civilian personnel?
Correct, it's all personnel within the agency to include those crossing guards, those background investigators, the parking enforcement. And to close out, when compared to 2009, the police budget has increased approximately 20%. 85% of that current budget is salary and benefits. Of the salary and benefits, 89% of that personnel is covered by a collective bargaining agreement for which they've received their compensation according to that agreement. From 2009 to 2013, the communications center has actually decreased 19% despite a 16% increase in salary and benefits by employees. So with that, looking at our budget, if I've got my numbers right, if I took away salary and benefits, my budget is actually less than 2009 by almost over a quarter of a million in expenditures. So it's already less and it's less from last year, too. So I'll close with that and take some questions.
Questions?
And Mayor, I just want to say, we can certainly take questions now. We can continue through all the presentations come.
Maybe, maybe we want to go ahead and do that.
Directors will be here, you know, throughout the day. So whatever your preference is.
You're going to be, you're going to be here, why don't we go ahead and go through as many of the presentations as we can and then try to do, okay, thank you. Moving right along, Mr. Kimerling. Oh, did you have a clarifying question? Okay. Okay. Okay, right, got you. Mr. Kimerling, thank you.
I'll check my timer, Mayor, to make sure I'm on task. Just like Assistant Chief Bays, I will talk very rapidly. I was going to leave you time for questions, but I hear the questions are going to be at the end, so I will try to make sure to cover all the material. And if you do have questions, please ask when you have an opportunity. And if you do have questions, please ask when you have an opportunity. The first thing I wanna make sure we cover is, I'm gonna give you more of an overview of what we are as a fire department and how we provide the service to the entire community. The first thing I wanna make sure that everybody understands is that N F P A 1710 is a standard for how fire and emergency services is provided to the public. I think the important thing to note is, is that when I give you all these statistics, they're not Mike Kimerling's statistics, they're not David Hale's statistics. These are actually national standards, and I'll try to go over why it is that we use these national standards to measure what we do. And the, the most, one of the most important ones is, is that calls for fire personnel arriving to fire scene within six minutes 90% of the time. That includes a minute for us to get dispatched, a minute for us to get dressed and out the door, and four minutes drive time to get to the scene. What I'd like to show you now is how we're doing. You can see that our 90th percentile of response times for the community are eight minutes and 10 seconds for fire and nine minutes for EMS. Our six-minute benchmark is when we're making it six minutes, we're only getting on fire calls 73.4% of the time, and on EMS calls 67.9% of the time.
And Mike, if you could, just dwell on that again, 90 percentile. What happens in the other 10% of the time?
The other 10% of the time, we're gonna be over that nine-minute threshold.
How much over? You know, what are some of the statistics you're seeing on EMS?
Well, as you get into the 95th percentile, or you start dropping down every one of those, we, we have response times up to 12 to 15 minutes depending on the call. Again, and it's based on, and I'm gonna talk about it here in a little bit, but it's really based on our call volume and, and how many calls of service we have and our trans, and our travel times in our community, which are large. So I'll go into that here. The next thing is, is that N F P A also has a provision for, that we want 15 personnel to arrive at a full alarm assignment within nine minutes 90% of the time on a low hazard occupancy. We're gonna talk about what high, medium, and low hazard occupancies are in a minute. And the nine-minute figure includes those same turnout times we talked about before. And the reason for the 15 personnel is there are, there are certain tasks that have to be accomplished on any fire ground scene to effectively rescue, to keep the fire contained, to rescue personnel, to provide for the safety of the firefighters on scene. So these are, these are all, if you look at the N F P A handbook, it explains what all those 15 functions are, and that's on a low hazard occupancy. And the reason for all these times are, are two things. Number one on fires, the fire propagation curve is actually an engineering curve that shows that fire basically doubles in size every minute. So within 10 minutes of a, of a working structure fire that starts, say, in a trash can, that fire, the room that they have the fire in is gonna reach flashover conditions. And if ever you've seen the flashover that happened, we did the flashover simulator with the sprinkler system, what that means is that no one survives in the room. That's why it's critical that we have a firefighting force on scene prior to that time of flashover. And the one thing I don't have with me today, and I'll just tell you that there's a lot of research being done, that these times, these flashover times are increasing. I mean, it's getting, it's happening quicker. And the reason for that is, is what are we using in our homes today we weren't using 25, 30 years ago? Everything we put in our house now is made of hydrocarbons, plastics, you know, all those things that we put in our home, those are all basically flammable materials. Back in the day, we had, you know, wool carpet, cotton batting, those things don't exist anymore. The second thing that's important is, is on our EMS side is, why do we need to be there in six minutes or less? Because, because after six minutes, you start to have irreversible brain damage if you've had a cardiac arrest. That's the benchmark for this, is that the fact that we need to arrive on scene prior to this happening. In four to six minutes, brain death starts to occur in human being without oxygen. So these are where these standards come from. So again, that, just wanna make sure everybody understands that these aren't just arbitrary standards that are made up. The next thing I wanna talk about is the N F P A 1710 defines a level of occupancy types and how, what, what type of occupancies we have in our community. High hazard occupancies are schools, hospitals, nursing homes, and we can leave out the explosive plants in the refineries, but high-rise buildings, those are high hazard occupancies. All those exist in our community, lots of them. Medium hazard, apartment buildings, big box stores, those are medium hazard. And then low hazard occupancies are considered to be your regular family dwellings and small businesses. Now remember our slide earlier, the N F P A standard for arrival for a low hazard occupancy was 15 personnel. If we look at what they, what's required on a high hazard occupancy, such as our hospitals and nursing homes, 24 firefighters, two chief officers, a safety officer, rapid intervention team. I also wanna point out that these are minimums, doesn't include the EMS component if necessary. 29 total firefighters. Anybody know how many firefighters we have on duty every day in City Bloomington? If I take the ARF driver out who is dedicated to the airport, I got 28. So we're already, so you can see that this is a challenge for us based on the staffing we have every day. If I take out our EMS personnel on the ambulances and I ask you how many people we have on duty on fire trucks in the city every day, does anybody know?
Which figure was that? I'm sorry.
How many, how many just on fire apparatus? We have two engines, or four engines and two trucks, three personnel each. We have 18 firefighters that are just dedicated to fire duty. That shows that on a medium hazard occupancy, we're already working in a deficit. I think it's important to note that because we're gonna talk a little bit about how we staff now compared to how we used to. What are some of the reasons for our, our response time issues? Well, here's one here. You've got square mileage. From 1989 to 2014, we've almost doubled the square mile size of the city we cover. That increases our travel times immensely. I think everybody's been out on Veterans Parkway at four o'clock in the afternoon knows how long it takes us to get around town now. Our stations are scattered throughout the community, try to give us equidistant from any location, but when we try to put more than one unit on scene, it can become a challenge. Population, we all know the population has continued to grow in City Bloomington. We're up to almost 78,000 people from the 2012 census. How's that compared to our staffing? We have actually tried to be, be a very lean department. We have tried to make sure that we have not increased our staffing. You can see our staff, our staff that we have, our line employees, our administrative staffing has actually dropped since 1989. So we have actually tried to be very lean at 109 personnel. 102 of those are, are the line personnel that are on the streets every day. And you can see our call volume, since 2004 to 2013, a 25% increase in our call volume. So it continues to grow. The other thing I wanna leave you with is that in our workforce right now, we have three shifts. We're actually spending over $1.5 million in overtime every day just to fill seats for benefited leave. One of the issues we continue to have is, is that with the, with the amount of personnel we have and trying to fill these seats on the apparatus every day, a lot of our guys are working 4824s instead of 2448s. With an average age of our firefighters at almost 41 years of age, we're beating people up. It's getting, you know, it's a labor-intensive job, there's a lot to be done, and just the, the overall age of our firefighters, that increases our workers' comp, increases injuries. It just, there's a lot going on for us. Probably the last thing I wanna make sure that we, we're all talked about is I hear a lot about, you know, that we took over the ambulance service. When I came on in 1987, we had an ambulance. We didn't take it over, we've had it. The difference was in 1995 is that the, or actually 1987 when I started was that we ran stations with one truck company and one engine company. We had a two-station plus an ambulance model we were working on here, and a lot of you will remember that. And that model meant that the ambulance was just a jump company. Ambulance call came in, you know, that was kinda secondary duty, we just jumped on that ambulance and took it on the call, and if we didn't have an ambulance available when you called, I guess you rode to the hospital and, you know, in your car. What we did in 2010 is we went to the new staffing model. What that staffing model did is it put all, most of our companies, our stations other than one, our single company stations with an ambulance. Basically what we've done is we've actually decreased our staffing in individual stations by one person. We've put someone on, two guys on an ambulance, we've given them turnout gear, we have air packs on the ambulance, and we're having those people do double duty as firefighters on initial calls for service. So what we have is we have five personnel in that building, and if a fire call comes in, all five of them are going instead of the other model we had before. Having that ambulance also, because they're dedicated, we've been able to charge for service, and we're actually have a revenue that we produce every year for our department that if we go back to the original model, we're not gonna have that revenue stream coming in. So I think it's important that everybody understands that. I think the other thing I'd like to point out is that you all have a copy of the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association Consulting Report, which you give to everybody. There's a, on page 55 of that report, it talks about unit utilization hours, and I'll tell you that what's important to understand is that this, this is a very efficient model for us to provide fire service and EMS in the city. But it also means is, is that those four ambulances, because of how busy they are, a lot of times when a fire call comes in, they're not in the buildings anymore. There's a, there's a chart on that, in that report that talks about how many hours a day we're without, we have at least two ambulances or three ambulances or even all four ambulances busy every day. So that takes away from our staffing for the fire response and makes it, again, a very challenging endeavor to get enough people on scene to make sure we could affect all the things we need to on a fire scene. Most of our neighboring fire departments, Champaign, Peoria, Springfield, they don't have a model like this. In fact, I've had a lot of phone calls from a lot of chiefs asking me how we do this, and a lot of them look at me and say, isn't there a lot of risk involved in trying to provide that kinda coverage with your guys on the ambulance maybe being in or out of the building? And it is a challenge, but in this kinda times, we've tried to be the most efficient model we possibly can, make sure we've got revenue numbers, make sure we're trying to do the best we can with the staffing we have. And last thing I wanna just leave you with is that if we continue to see the trends in city size, call volume, and all those other things that we've already talked about today, I foresee in the next few years, we could actually be up in excess of 10 minutes in the ninth percentile in our response times to the community.
Any clarifying questions? Thank you, and thank you for coming in under budget in your time. Thanks, you're helping us get back on time. Mr. Karch.
I will do my best to not go over my allotted time and not use Mike's time. I'll see if I need to pull in this jump drive. If you could be patient with me for just a minute, I'm gonna get this. Is it already in? There we go, great. Mayor and City Council, I just, a great picture to start off with. If you'd look up at the screen, this is very recently. Today, we're gonna be talking about infrastructure in Public Works. The focus that I'll be talking to you about is the tying of the infrastructure to the impact of the budget. Whenever you look at what you do with the budget, it has a direct impact on the funding of our infrastructure, and so that's what we'll be talking about today. Up on the screen right now, you'll see the, this actually was on the pantograph, this Pontiac Tire might be familiar with some. The 10th of March on Lee Street, the sinkhole developed. One thing I thought was really good, Alderman Schmidt sent out a, an email with some, some quotes from some of the residents that had responded to her about the budget. And one jumped out at me, right at the top. "Our quality of life is defined by smooth streets." So, you know, that is, it's one of those that I think, you know...
I'm doing too well, I guess.
It's a, it's a quotable, I guess, tweetable, whatever you wanna call it, but it is very relevant to this conversation. So, you know, we, I come before you a lot and talk about the different infrastructure in the City of Bloomington. Up on the screen, I wanted to, to put before you the breadth and the width of all that is out there with, with some of that infrastructure. And so let's, you know, without going into all the numbers, you, you know what we have out there. Let's talk about some of the problems that you get, you get texts, you get emails, you talk to residents, the documented street problems that we have out in, in Bloomington right now. Today, we have Public Works crews out on the streets on a Saturday trying to keep up with the spring potholes that, that are just prolific, they're like bunnies, they're just multiplying, it's, it's unbelievable. So, you know, you've got, we've got a lot of street issues, we have flooding issues, we have stormwater issues, sanitary sewer issues. You know, you, we know some of the issues out there. How are we dealing with this? Here's, what we're talking about is there's, there's been a lot of planning that's been involved, there's been a lot of objective criteria that's been put in. Our staff for the last five years, I give a lot of credit, there's been a lot of effort put into making sure we give the council objective, professional recommendations on how to catch up, how do we do this? Now, this is going to impact, we've been looking at our streets, this is what we started with. We came to you whenever I first started, we started providing to you data on street ratings. You know, five years ago, whenever I started as Public Service Director, then Public Works Director, I came to you and, and showed you some of these ratings. You, you understood that, you bought into that, it made sense, it was very tangible. You could talk to your residents about it. Here's, here's what I want you to look up at the screen, if you can, or look at your sheet. You all know the system, one to 10, green is very simple, even I can follow it, green is good, red is bad. So the, look up on the screen and, and you see just how many shades of red. I mean, that's, there's just an overall hue of red in the City of Bloomington. So when residents say our streets are, are bad, you can, we can quantifiably, yes, we, I don't disagree with that. We, we have some concerns with our streets and, and we're trying to do something about it. Our sewers, what I wanna, what I wanna point out to you is in the same way, again, color coding is one of my favorite things, it's easy to follow. Before 1900, we have an old community, this is a, this is a historic community. Look up on the screen again, the deepest red in the core part of town are the combined sewers or sewers built before 1900. It's almost 90 miles of sewer out of a total sewer in the City of Bloomington of 370. 90 miles out of a total of 370 is in that deep red. Those, I mean, they start to become issues, that's why we see the cave-in, that's why we see the problems. You know, right now, the city doesn't have a functioning lining program, preventative maintenance, those things that we really need to have as a best management practice to maintain our sewers. It's, it's like not giving your car oil changes, it's just not, not functioning. So we look at our sidewalks, our staff has been working very diligently on a draft sidewalk master plan that within the upcoming fiscal year, our council will see. We've been rating all of our sidewalks, we've been putting a lot of effort toward, you know, how do we, how do we start working on our sidewalks? What condition are our sidewalks in? In the same way, you know, we have 420 miles of sidewalks and our, you know, preliminary numbers that you'll be seeing within this coming fiscal year, you know, we have two point, almost $2.5 million worth of sidewalk needs that they're poor or less. And so again, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of aging infrastructure that's out there, and, and as you drive around, this is not news, but there, there's some times when communities will come and they'll just make these broad sweeping statements that it's bad, oh, this is, this is not okay. What we wanna do is always provide you professional, objective criteria so that you have defendability whenever your residents talk to you. That's really important for you to have that. Sewer master plan, you have a thousand-page document that now I'm sure all of you have been staying up at night reading, that's been delivered to you. It helps you to go to sleep at night. But the, the, out of that thousand-page document, in the first five years, there's over $40 million worth of improvements that, that are very much needed. These, these are not, you know, oh, we really wanna add, these are, these are critical infrastructure needs that are out there. And we have in the 20-year plan, 140 million. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And, and as the, as the Public Works Department has talked to you about this, this comprehensive view, this block-by-block, you know, infrastructure, as we look at going block-by-block, we look at what's under, what's above, we're really changing a lot of things, but there's a lot of need out there. But I, I don't want to just be gloom and doom. I feel bad, I wanna stop and, and say, we're making progress. There have been a lot of improvements, many of you have seen that last, these last five years, the council has approved a lot of increases in funding, let's talk about that. You, as a council, you, we used to spend half million dollars, less than a million dollars on street resurfacing back into the 90s. Whenever I first started in the City of Bloomington, I, I was the person helping put together some of the resurfacing programs. And I remember it was like, oh, we have a half million dollars this year, woo-hoo, alright, great. It's, it's just now, we see we're paying for that. And we're ramping up, we're seeing the trend, big thanks to our council for ramping up and starting to, to put, to put the investment into our infrastructure.[1676.33] starting to, to put, to put the investment into our infrastructure. Sidewalks in the same way. I, I look back on where, whenever I started, where the sidewalk expenditures were at, and, and to where they're truly needed, we're paying for that now. Uh, and, and so, but the thing is, is a lot of that is maybe past council. I don't want to jump on past councils or past public works areas because they might not have had the objective criteria that said, here's what the city should be spending. And, and now we have some of that data that you as a council can be defendable on what you're doing. You, because of this, you, you have a $10 million resurfacing bond this year. Big credit, much thanks. Um, but what I want to encourage this council and, and from a professional standpoint, I need, I need to make sure you hear this. This is very important. We need sustainable funding. Uh, we need to, moving forward, we need to make sure we stay at a plan, we stick with the plan, we set what the service level is, and we find some, some sustainable funding so that we can make sure we stay the course and get, get better, get back to that tipping point where we have a good, a very good infrastructure. We're proactive as a community with our infrastructure. I like to, to focus up on the screen, if you can, take a look at, uh, I'm gonna point out this individual. This is Jason Kennedy. He's a crew leader in our Streets and Sewers Division, and he would hate it right now if I called out his name. A very humble, uh, quiet individual who is diligent, hardworking, and one of my, uh, my favorite guys in the department because he just, he, every time you see him, yes, sir, how, you know, what can we do, sir? Yep, yes, sir. Uh, he always has the military hat on, camouflage military hat. He's one of our best crew leaders. What he does is he works with the asphalt from pavement patching, pavement patching program. Had a good conversation with him this last week. We're talking about this coming year, how can we ramp up and continue to do more? We got this last year, the council approved the expenditures to buy a very simple piece of equipment, uh, that our crews used to hand throw, I mean, hand throw with a shovel, uh, almost 3,000 tons of hot asphalt. I don't know if you can get, wrap your arms around that, but 3,000 tons of hot asphalt. That's, that's a lot of, it's a lot of manual labor that our crews are trying to do. We now have a piece of equipment where it drops out of the chute and it spreads it more evenly, allows us a more uniform product. Um, what you need to know is we're making it, we're, we're adding equipment, we're adding operations, we're increasing our efficiency. On the top left, you're going to see our, our, the CRF pavement preservation program. I, I want you to know, yesterday, our, our staff, we, we hosted a little pavement summit. We had 67, uh, public works professionals from across central Illinois, down on the government center in the basement. We had them in, we, we brought them in, we talked about, they came because they wanted to, Bloomington, what we're doing, some of the, the things that Bloomington is doing, it was about the Bloomington program with our pavement preservation. And there are a lot of communities like Pekin and Morton that came up afterwards. They're gonna start doing some of the things that we're doing. You need to know that there are some very good best management practices that are happening here, but we need to make sure they're funded. We need to make sure we stay the course. And, and that takes that, that, that courage, and it takes that saying, okay, for, everything you do with the budget also impacts our infrastructure as well. So, there's still a lot of work to do. We talk about our combined sewers, you know, this, the, uh, hot pink, whatever, you know, I guess I go back to colors. I, I guess, and that's not my favorite color, but hot pink is still a, a color up on the screen. We've got the combined sewers that we have a lot of work to do with our combined sewers moving forward. It's gonna be out there as something that we're gonna have to be dealing with as we move forward. I want to talk to you about the, a, a simple, a, a simple thing for you as you consider the budget. Action costs money. It's, whenever we ask you for these things, you know, we talk, we throw out these big dollars. It's, it's hard to even, you know, when you talk about tens of millions, hundreds of millions, it's hard sometimes to even fathom that. It costs money for us to, to, to be proactive. You know, similar to an oil change on a car, it costs money. It costs money to do things to your car to do, uh, just to keep it up. Uh, let me, I wanted to use an example. I'm gonna do a, a comparison example for you just to get a feel of, of proactive versus reactive. I'm gonna use sewer lining as the example. Sewer lining, you know, it's about $250 per foot for lining and grouting. We had 200 feet of sewer on, along, on Long Market Street, West Market Street, we did. We saw a great need. We saw, oh, this is, this is, you know, we went ahead and we did this. We don't have a good functioning sewer lining program like we'd like, but we said we have, this is negligent if we don't do this. We see this issue. And so we, we, we went ahead and did this. Uh, $250 times 200 is $50,000. So, we have $50,000 we expended. I'm gonna contrast that with a reactive approach. I don't know if you remember our, our IMEV hole. It was one of the, again, I'm, I'm a, I'm a picture person. I like pictures speak to me. So, I, I brought in the photos, you know, we had this, uh, sewer video. And I put it up on the screen for you at a council meeting, and the sewer, the sewer camera was going down, and you're, all of a sudden, you look off the left, and there's no sewer there. And it's this huge hole under Douglas Street, East Douglas. And, and then we call it the IMEV hole because you could fit an IMEV into it. And so, yeah, exactly. Alderman Fazini's IMEV could have gone down into that. But, um, what, what we've got, I wanted to compare that $50,000 for proactive sewer lining of 200 feet with $50,000 for us to repair a point issue. So, instead of fixing a, a long stretch that was, you know, preventative in nature and allowed us to, to not have to come in and do this, now we've torn up the whole street. We've had to, it's gonna be over 50,000 by the time we're done with the pavement, the fixing the pavement. So, it, it's good for you to understand that action is expensive, but inaction is even more expensive. And I think that sometimes in the past, we've maybe kicked the can. We've delayed some things, and, and I'm asking you not to do that. I'm asking you to, to, to see some of the planning that Public Works has done, that it's been supported by you, it's been supported by our city manager, for us to, to have this plan and move forward. So, the last thing is that I think right now, we're paying for the, you know, from, from the past, some of our, our, the low cost that we were putting toward our sidewalks, our streets, our sewers. And we were more of that reactive at times. And, and again, I, I think that the, our, our staffing in the past was using the funding that they had, and, and, and I'm not, I'm looking forward. Let's look forward, but let's not go back. Let's, let's make sure we're being, trying to get to, get our programs up to healthy state. And so, right now, we're playing catch-up. That's what this slide shows. This was something that was provided to you. We're gonna be updating our pavement ratings for this year. But, uh, the point is, is that we're playing catch-up right now, and we don't like it. And I know you don't like it either, and I don't believe our citizens like it either. So, um, what the, going back to that original slide that our quality of life is defined by smooth streets, I'm gonna say our quality of life is defined by quality infrastructure. Uh, whenever we look at, we look at companies coming in, and we look at new companies, they, they wanna, you know, you talk about curb appeal. Curb appeal matters. You know, we tell you, it, it, it does matter. People don't, they want to come to community. We, we've got a slide out there. You, you all looked at the, the numbers that talk about the, the quotes, how great Bloomington is, how we're in the, you know, this, all the retired folks and everybody, millennials, everybody wants to come here. But they want to come here because it's a, we have a great community, but the infrastructure has a good impact on that. So, uh, with that being said, uh, Public Works is done.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, uh, two minutes under budget. Any, uh, questions? Okay. No, clarifying questions, Jim. Clarifying questions, Jim. Okay. Well, I, I think it's important if we, just to make sure that everybody understands stuff. Okay. Craig.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I'm dealing with a little bit of a cold, so if I sound a little nasally, um, bear with me, please. Um, Jim, I applaud you for having that pavement summit, um, at the government center the other day. I happened to be riding the elevator with a couple of the guys leaving there, and they were very complimentary. They said they left with some really good concrete ideas. Okay. Just want to make sure everybody was awake this morning. Excellent. All right. Um, I'll, I'll be at the comedy club this weekend. Two shows, 7:30 and 11:00.
And we'll be sure to miss it.
Thank you. This is what I do for my real job, and I love it.
Yeah, of course, you did, Joe.
Okay, absolutely. Um, with the water department budget, uh, very quickly, um, what I'm gonna do with this presentation is basically tell you what we do. Um, give you a budget snapshot, what's new in this budget, what are the major drivers, um, moving us forward in this budget, what are the other things beyond those major drivers that we might do in this budget? And looking at the future, where are we going? Water department, what do we do? We do a little bit of everything. Um, we're somewhat unique in that literally, we produce a product, a city product that is consumed. There is nothing else in the city that's, uh, like that. And with that comes enormous, enormous, uh, responsibilities and a lot of unfunded mandates. Um, you hear about US EPA, uh, Department of Health, Illinois EPA, we have to follow tons and tons of rules. Assistant Chief Baze talked about those unfunded mandates. They come down the pike every day. Uh, just this January, we had to, uh, start abiding by a new rule to get the lead out of fire hydrants, uh, because of brass parts and fire hydrants. As you can imagine, with 4,500 fire hydrants, it's something that we'll get to eventually. Um, they're not saying we have to take them out of the ground, but it adds cost to each and every fire hydrant. We're in water treatment and distribution. That's one of those duh kind of moments. That's what we do. That's the core stuff. But we're also in risk mitigation. What is that? Well, if we don't treat that water, uh, correctly, um, we get a lot of people sick in a very short period of time. So, we have to constantly look at, how do we prevent some of the things from getting into our reservoirs? And I'll talk about that a little bit more. How do we, uh, um, keep, uh, pipes from breaking so we don't have some of those issues? So, risk mitigation is a very important part of our job as well. Watershed protection. Again, uh, we don't own our watersheds. Uh, they're largely in the county, but we hopefully have influence in those areas. So, we have a very aggressive watershed protection program. In fact, on Monday, you're gonna hear about an award that we've just, uh, received. And you'll hear from our, uh, plant, uh, manager, Rick Twate, and he'll tell you about a lot of those things and those very unique, uh, efforts that we have out in the, the watershed. Research, a lot of folks don't realize, we have participated and are currently participating in several national research projects. So, it takes a little bit of our time, but we have, um, a, a benefit in that when we're on that, it, with those research teams, we're firsthand learning cutting-edge techniques that we can put in place in McLean County, in the city of Bloomington, to certainly make our water system better. Fire protection, that's huge. Uh, the insurance services office is gonna be back in April, uh, to new, do another rating. Uh, the water supply is 40% of that rating. It's not all fire. And we work very closely with the fire department. We have an excellent working relationship, and, um, we're doing things with fire protection, fire hydrants, maintenance that, uh, are, are basically cutting edge. Billing services, um, of course, we produce the bills for the city, but a lot of folks don't realize that we also do billing for Benward. And when you look at that bill today, it's completely different. We used to call it the water bill. Uh, we make sure it's called the city services bill now because it contains a lot of things. Um, and, you know, some of those have come along, as recently as five years ago, with the stormwater fee. And who knows what the future holds with unfunded mandates, but we do all of those services. And some of those are driven off of something I'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation. Street maintenance at Lake Bloomington. Well, we're a water department. What do we know about street maintenance? That's why I rely on Jim an awful lot. Um, we do have to plow snow up at Lake Bloomington. Um, it's not a whole lot of miles, but it's something that's pretty unique to us. Um, and we have a crew up there that does those kind of things. They fill in potholes. They do the, uh, the kind of maintenance that we see in town as well. Other maintenance, um, we have to, the occasional dead animal, we have to pick that up. Um, when we have the complaint, which I don't think we have in town, hey, a snowmobile just drove over my lot. We react to those kind of things as well because we are responsible for those 200-plus lots up there at Lake Bloomington. Water meter reading, yeah, another one of those duh kind of moments. But for the water reading, meter reading, we would not be able to bill, uh, for sewer in the city because you do not measure sewer. You measure water. And from that register, it drives the billing for the city sewer, sewer services. But we also do that for Benward. Benward does not read their meters. They do not produce their bills. We do that 100% for them on a contract basis. Locating services, huge. Um, it, what used to be maybe 5,000 locates in a year is 5,000 locates in a month. If you have seen the, um, directional drilling companies that are putting in the fiber optic, every time they're going down a street, we have to locate what's underneath the ground. And you hope you have very good records. Um, it's a very, very difficult job. We do it for the entire city. We do water, sewer, streetlights, traffic signals. Um, you know, if it's there and the city owns it, we locate it. And again, that gets very, very tricky. It's not highly scientific sometimes. Uh, at times, it's dead reckoning, but the liability is huge if you don't do a good job. Uh, 24/7 operations, uh, much like fire and police, we're there constantly. When you're eating your turkey dinner, we've got an operator out at the plant. Um, and that goes throughout the year. We're there for emergency response. This winter has been very trying. We had people that worked 20 hours straight. Um, go home, catch a few hours of sleep, come back. Because when the bell rings, these guys are very, and ladies are very dedicated. We foster and support economic development. You might say, yeah, I understand that. But for the water department and its ability to supply the enormous amount of water when Diamond Star, now Mitsubishi Motors North America, came to town, that plant is here. It's served by the city of Bloomington, Water Department, not the town of Normal. And the same is said about Bridgestone Firestone. Again, another business that's in the town of Normal, but served by the city of Bloomington. We work well beyond the city's borders. Um, again, snowplow goes to the exit of the city, stops, turns around, comes back. Our work at times just starts when we get to the city border. We keep driving out into the county because that's where our watershed is. That's where we have monitoring wells. That's where we have some of our research projects. We have a lake patrol. Um, it's a courtesy patrol now. We used to have sworn officers, carried guns, did the whole thing. We had a Lake Bloomington Police Department. Liability was too great, uh, for that service, so we went back to a courtesy patrol. But we still do those things every summer out at Lake Bloomington. We have to have somebody out there checking boat licenses, fishing licenses, making sure people are safe. Uh, we have laboratory services, both contractual and in-house. And we are, people say we need to get to that model of regional water supply. We are a regional water supply. We serve the majority of McLean County, Hudson, Towanda, Bloomington Township, a lot of unincorporated areas. So, we get into a little bit of everything. And again, as you well know, we own a bridge. So, another one of those interesting little side notes. This budget is status quo. Um, and I say that on the department side, but not on the customer side. We can hold our budget here at a status quo, at the Latin term, as it was before. But not on the customer's side because their calls for service, we have no control over. If we have a rough winter, we have to constantly move back and forth and move money from here over to there. My overtime budget, we've blown right through it. You budget not for that worst case, but what you think is normal. Again, it's very difficult to hold the lid on when you have commodities that you're buying, uh, for chemicals, and it's a very large driver in your budget, and they go up or they go down in any given year. You just don't know. We have revenues of approximately $18 million, 17,9. Expenses this year of 24,5. That's an imbalanced budget. How can that be? Well, we're spending more in capital this year. We're drawing upon fund balance. And yes, we do have fund balance. It was a very strategic thought process that through the years, you were so grateful or so kind to allow us to raise the water rates. Um, and we put money in the bank, and we said that was for future capital expenditures, and that's exactly what we're doing this year. So, that difference between the revenue and expenses is coming from fund balance. There's no rate increase in this budget. There hasn't been a rate increase for three years. There's no change in fees. Okay. What is new in this budget? Not much. We're status quo. There's no new personnel, no new programs. The big difference, as I mentioned earlier, is capital spending. We're trying to catch up on some of those development projects for groundwater, some plant expansion issues, and then trying to take care of some of the distribution system problems that we have, replacing pipes, if you will. Here's our major drivers. That product that we produce, we have major inputs in that. And the two that are really major are chemicals, over a million dollars in chemicals to purify the water here. The water in town is free. We just provide the pressure and the purity. And that's what the expense there is for. Um, labor, we're no different than someone else. We are literally a factory. We take a raw material, water from our reservoirs, and we make it into a finished product, finished water. We also have the distribution part of that as well. We've got to get that water to our customers. So, much like a bread truck driving down the road, we've got 350 miles of pipe to get that to our customers. And we have to maintain that entire supply chain. And that's what we do, and that's why it is labor-intensive as well. As I mentioned, our capital, uh, projects this year are a bit higher than, uh, they have been in the past, but we have some very major issues going on. Groundwater development, something that will hold us for many, many years, and plant expansion. Again, something that will hold us for many, many years. And anytime we do a, a pipe replacement project, we hope that's there for 100 years. What else are we gonna do in the project or, or in the budget, uh, in this upcoming year? Another 6,000 radio read meters. That will get us to better than 95% deployed. As I promised several years ago, we are down to one meter reader from three and a half, and that position will go away when we're done with the 6,000 as well. Uh, that's what we said we were going to do, and that's what we have done. Uh, we will have no meter readers after this given year. Uh, develop a water conservation plan. We're working with the Ecology Action Center to make sure that we can drive down the amount of water that's being used because every time we're able to do that, um, it keeps us from bricks and mortar building. If we can get people to use a little less water, particularly for irrigation purposes in the summertime, then we will keep our capital costs down. We're gonna continue the water supply planning efforts. That's constant. We always have to look to the future. We're gonna look at our water supply and explore further in the southwest area, look to develop that well that we know where the water is in the southwest area. We're gonna continue our, with our fire hydrant testing program. That's very critical. It's been very, very successful. And our leak detection program, because as we treat that water, we certainly don't want to waste it. Looking to the future, where are we going? Uh, we're gonna continue with those long-term, uh, efforts to improve the sustainability of our water supply by having that active watershed program. Water conservation will be something that is a little bit unheard of in Illinois. In the southwest, it's the way they live because water's scarce. When you get 40 inches of rain per year, a lot of people don't think you need water conservation. But when you But when you see how our, uh, water, um, demand swings in the summertime with the amount of irrigation that takes place. It's incredible. And that means we have to hold plant in reserve for three months out of the year. And everybody pays for that. In in- interim groundwater supply in the area of southwest Bloomington will be developed. That's the bridge to get us to that larger supply, which is in Tazewell County or near the, the border with Tazewell County. We're going to be coming forward with a report to let you know how much that will cost long-term. So you can take a look at that. Because if we build that plant out there, we will have to use it. Because you can't have an investment of tens of millions of dollars just waiting until a dry day when you turn the plant on. It has to be used. Um, we know that groundwater is the way we're going to go. It's the long-term view. We cannot do anything else with the reservoirs that we have. We can hopefully extend the life of what we have through conservation, but we will eventually have to go to groundwater. And the water department, we're going to ramp up our capital expenditures in the area of infrastructure. And that will include the Faithful and Gould, uh, report that talks about buildings. We're in that report as well and we have a lot of needs in that building, uh, area where we have to replace roofs, boilers, things of that nature. So, uh, with that, I'll leave you with this quick little quote. That is in the report as well. We are a humble profession. And quite frankly, um, we're known as the silent service and, uh, but quite frankly, it's very important to things that happen at each and every day. And I don't know if you noticed that the fire chief, when he put up his, his, uh, display there, uh, the badge that he had was the Fire Department 1868. This is outside of our DaVine Street office, 1875. We followed them by a few years and, uh, I think we've got some pipe in the ground that's about that age as well. But we've been around for a while. So thank you.
Any clarifying, uh, Alderman.
Quick question. Um, first of all, not only humble, but lovable, I might add.
Pardon me?
Humble and lovable.
Oh, thank you. And I'm going to give you a hug.
What is the, uh, what is the, the latest estimate for the interim groundwater facility to be operational?
Probably two to three years.
That seems to have taken much longer than it was when we first started talking about that.
Absolutely. One of the things that we've run into just very, very quickly with that particular issue is, again, um, one of the areas that we thought that would be ideal for us, uh, to work in, and in fact is, um, there is a competing interest there. And that competing interest is gravel removal for aggregate. And there are several, um, either options, um, which we were not, were aware of those being existing there. Um, and actually the, the area where we did some testing, we thought we could buy some of that land. Gravel is a heck of a lot more, um, competitive as far as cost per acre than what we could offer, uh, for groundwater supply. So we're finding or having to move further away to get away from those gravel operations.
One more question.
Sure.
Percent of cost recovery for any Benward services that we provide?
100%.
Okay.
Yes, we do an analysis on that and we actually have cost of, uh, uh, you know, an inflationary increase each and every year for that. Um, and we look at that from time to time, but we do make sure that we're covering our costs 100% with them.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Great. And we move right along to, um, Mr. Kennedy. Oh, there he is. Okay.
And if you will bear with me real quick, I do need to pull up our.
And, and while he's doing that, I, Craig also included in this packet some information of what has been done since 1990 on increasing our water supply. Um, hopefully you'll take a look at that. I think if anything, we have failed as a city to maybe communicate and inform our citizens of all that we have done. Every time I hear that nothing's been done on our water supply since the last drought, that is false. That is incorrect. And if you read this, there has been much done. A lot of time, a lot of dollars have been spent. Uh, so, uh, one of the internal goals we have is during this next year is to help our citizens fully appreciate what has been done. How has our reservoirs, uh, increased capacity? How much have we spent? So there's a true story to be told, but unfortunately, we have done a poor job in helping our citizens understand what we have done to rely on our surface water story. So, but do take a look at that because that was included, but not necessarily part of the presentation. Turn it over to John.
Okay, John. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor and, and City Council. Good morning. Um, fully realize that, uh, you've had, you've seen four, uh, excellent presentations so far of all the important, especially infrastructure and public safety issues. Um, and I especially enjoyed the quote from, from, uh, Mr. Karch regarding the quality of life is, you know, defined by smooth streets or infrastructure. Um, but, you know, quality of life is also, is, in addition to that, not to underfund that, but in addition to that is things that, that folks do um, outside of their, outside of their careers. So it's, um, very important and that's kind of where, you know, we fit into things. I, I fully understand the challenge that, that you folks face in getting to that concept. Um, for some, it's a large leap to understand what parks and recreation brings. Uh, and it's not easy to get your hands around some of the things that we do. So, um, as I, as we work through this, that's what I'm going to try to hit on some of those topics. Um, as a quick review, our department is very diverse in, in the different things that we do. Uh, we park maintenance, you know, dealing with, you know, simple, or it, not simple, but you know, complex issues of biological nature. Emerald Ash Core is one. Uh, we deal with very high, um, high-ranking, um, touring artists on the other end of the spectrum that come to the BCPA. We're, we're in big business. We're in big business at operating three golf courses, uh, in a Pepsi, in the Pepsi Ice Center. You know, so we cover a lot of different areas, um, and, and offer a lot of different services. And we reach a lot of different people throughout the community. One thing that's difficult to quantify, what I'm going to try to do is try to help quantify some things for you. There's a gentleman by the name of Dr. John Crompton. He's the most distinguished scholar in the parks and recreation field. He's a distinguished professor at Texas A&amp;M University, um, very well-respected. Uh, he has created a, a model called the approximate principle. And what it does, it, it allows us to plug in figures to show how well-maintained parks add to the property tax revenues for, for, for municipalities. So what we have done in our department is gone through and looked at, we, we judge the quality of our parks, how well they're maintained. We've looked at property values of homes and land in the proximity of those parks and calculated that it increases the tax rate for Bloomington at about 1.8 million, which equates to about almost $300,000 annually in property tax revenue. So you could take that model and if you were to change the quality of parks, one way or the other, the amount of property tax revenue coming into the city would also correspondingly change upwards or downwards. Economic impact. I realize sometimes these numbers can be, seem awfully huge, but you know, working with the CBB and, and looking at since 2006, why started 2006? Obviously, that's when US Cellular Coliseum opened in April of 2006. The reopened BCPA was September of 2006. So figures that we're able to come up with, with assistance from the CBB, but the economic impact of the Coliseum, the BCPA, the zoo, our golf courses is about 120 million since 2006. What's our role in economic development? Um, leisure services, recreation, quality of life, culture and arts are very important, uh, to CEOs when they're looking at, when, where are they going to locate their businesses? Uh, and so, you know, this particular study, you know, shows that quality of life scored very highly, um, when looking at companies, when they want to look at where they're going to locate. Because the, the most important thing to them is their employees. The employees to work for them need to, needed to live where they're at, generally speaking, not all industries. Um, and they want to live, they want them to be in a place where they want to live. We play a big part in some of the great rankings that the city of Bloomington has received over the last few years. I'm not, I'm not saying we play the only part, okay? I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes and anybody else back here, but, uh, our department plays a major role in some of these high rankings. Um, top 10 cities on the rise, the 100 smartest cities, fastest-growing cities, top-ranked cities to live. You can see the various publications that have, that have ranked a city this high. One I did not include on here because it's a little bit older than these. These are recent, uh, within the last year or two. One that's older, because they haven't done it since, um, we're the fifth-best city in the country for golf. Um, and actually, they looked at Bloomington Normal and the surrounding, uh, ma- mainly the county. So we're the fifth-best area in the country for golf at the last, uh, the last time that they updated that, that study. We reach a lot of people. We reach families. We reach youth. We reach senior citizens. And some of the numbers, you know, through programming that we reach, you know, can get rather large. You can see almost 30,000 in our recreation programs and events. That does not include the number of people that come out to some of our larger special events like the Fourth of July. These are more, um, you know, because we're not, we're not really taking attendance there. We, it's just kind of a shot in the dark if we were to guess, you know, how many folks were there. But we reach a lot of different people in a lot of different ways. And we each, we reach a lot of different demographics from, from crib, uh, to the end. So, you know, we reach a lot of different areas. Our facilities is another place where we reach the community. Uh, our swimming pools, close to 55,000, uh, people will go through our, the two swimming pools. We'll annually have 100 to 110,000 visitors to the Miller Park Zoo. It's a regional destination. Uh, the Pepsi Ice Center is a, is a packed house. Um, especially 10 months out of the year. The summer months are a little bit slower, but you know, September through June, boy, there's a lot of things going on at the Pepsi Ice Center. The BCPA reaches a lot of different people. It's a, it's a busy facility. You know, there's 30 to 40 touring acts that get, you know, probably the advertising of what happens there. But there are events just about every single day of the year in that facility, whether it's, you know, different meetings, rental agencies renting the, the building for other purposes, wedding receptions, things of that nature. Our golf courses, 72,000 rounds played. Our spray parks, we don't, uh, monitor how many people there, but it sure seems like there's millions of them there. Every time, every time I'm out there, they're packed, you know, during, obviously during the season, so. And now, I haven't even talked about the most populated recreation amenity in the, in the community. I, I think you would all agree, the Constitution Trail gets the highest marks. Anytime I talk to folks, any surveys that we do, the most utilized and most appreciated amenity we have is, is the Constitution Trail. We have a little over 30 miles that we maintain. This budget is status quo, meaning there's no new, no new positions in it. There's no new programs, nothing major. The 2.5% increase is due to majority, mainly a large one-time lease payment um, and some other standard, your standard salary and benefit increases, uh, just to maintain exi- existing staff. Again, now I'll quickly go through our, each division. We've got our parks maintenance that hits, you know, everybody, the different events, uh, that we put on, products that we offer. 38 parks, six public buildings that we maintain, you know, three spray parks, two swimming pools, four lakes or detention basins, 30 miles of trail, almost 27,000 trees, 1,274 acres. And this is done with one full-time supervisor. He's available 24/7, 365. Uh, the zoo, the zoo is a regional destination. Um, you know, we bring people in and especially school groups in from throughout McLean County and farther. Uh, it is the destination that sets us apart, uh, or a facility that sets us apart from other, from other places. Uh, in the recommended capital budget is the first new exhibit in the, in the master plan, the flamingo exhibit. Um, this exhibit is estimated to be a $250,000 expenditure with 100,000 of that coming from private dollars. The Miller Park Zoological Society, who you're well aware of, is an extremely good partner for us. They estimated that a, a new exhibit could increase our zoo attendance by 5%. Our recreation programs truly do reach all different demographics. Uh, again, break down a little bit of the attendance. We get about, about 20,000 in our programs, a little over, almost 10,000 in special events, again, not including, you know, Fourth of July. Uh, the Pepsi Ice Center, talked about it a little bit, um, really extremely high demand. It's an extremely difficult, uh, job being the Pepsi Ice Center manager, just scheduling ice time. There are so many competing groups you guys have heard from in the past. We hear from them. Uh, there's not enough ice time available to go around during the time that, that folks want it. It's actually been a profitable, uh, position for us. Each year, there's been an operating profit since after the first year it opened. But this chart here goes back to fiscal year 10, shows that, again, operating profits does not take into consider debt, consideration debt service, but just strictly operating numbers, it does operate, uh, pro- profitably. Aquatics, we have the two swimming pools, Holiday Pool, O'Neil Pool. There's basically our fiscal year 14 attendance. Fiscal year 14 included last summer, which was one of the cooler, uh, summers on record. So our attendance figures were a little bit lower than usual, however, still well utilized. Our pools offer life safety, um, by all the thousands of, of, of young, not only youth, but even adults teaching them how to swim. That's a life safety skill that's very important for the community. The soar programs, special opportunities available in recreation. Generally speaking, we're the only game in town, uh, for this demographic. Yeah, this is a community therapeutic recreation program, uh, up for individuals that are unable to, to compete in traditional recreation programs. It's also 40% funded by the town of Normal. So we have a sponsorship with, or a partnership with the town of Normal to fund this particular program for this group of individuals. They're very excited about our programs there and their families are so appreciative of what we all offer and, and they're thanks, very thankful that, that receives the support from the council because it's, it's a group that doesn't get served by other, by other communities and other, and other organizations as well. Uh, the Bloomington Center for the Performing Arts, as I mentioned, reopened in 2006. You know, it, a lot, a lot of different attendance comes from all over the state. It's a regional destination as well. Uh, it, it's an economic impact, uh, driver for the downtown. To talk with, you know, a lot of the business folks, especially the restaurants, they're very busy on the nights that there are shows at the BCPA. Try to get into Luca Grill on a Friday night when the, when there's a concert going on and it's challenging enough, but it's even more challenging when there's an event going on at the BCPA. And there's other restaurants and, and businesses that, that would say the same thing. The CBB estimates the BCPA's annual impact at just about a million dollars a year. Our golf courses are very highly rated. Uh, we have, out of Golf Digest, out of five stars, we have a three, a four, and a four-and-a-half star golf course. Um, our golf courses are operationally neutral, generally speaking. There are years when it's a very competitive industry and it's a very weather-dependent industry. So when, when weather is good, we can make some profit. If we have a very poor weather year, then we can, then we will dip, dip in and show a loss. But generally speaking, overall, we have made changes to where the golf courses are rev- revenue neutral. What that does not account for, and I'm the first to admit it, is it does not, we're not able to, to get the revenues for capital expenses strictly based on revenues of the golf courses. So we're able to be operationally neutral, but there still is demands for capital expenses that, that the golf course revenues have not been able to create.
And if I could say, I just to help the council, sometimes I've heard the comment, well, the golf courses pay for themselves. Uh, and I just want you to understand, but again, from a true operating, excluding capital, excluding depreciation, excluding many other things, just strictly the operational, yes, it, it is breaking even. But one of the financial policies we want to get articulated in writing is going forward, those revenues are not sufficient to deal with the increasing costs of capital. And as these golf courses age, just like buildings and that, we're going to have to increase general fund, you know, uh, ex- uh, funding for future capital. So we'll, you'll hear more about that in the upcoming years. Thanks.
Thank you. And, you know, it is not easy, um, for me to put in my recommended budget a $250,000 cart path resurfacing job when I fully understand what the conditions of our streets and other infrastructures are. I know that's where you guys are at. However, on the other hand, we've invested millions of dollars in Prairie Vista Golf Course. Um, and these are, you know, just one quick snapshot of, you know, what our cart paths look like. And, and we do have a relatively new quarter-million-dollar golf cart fleet that, you know, is showing the effects of, of being used on similar cart paths. So, but fully understand the challenge that presents, uh, when you, when you look at the overall picture. Looking forward, uh, Craig mentioned the Faithful and Gould Facility Assessment. For our department, we're included in that. There's about $5 million in facility repairs that are identified throughout our various buildings and facilities. Not included in that is several million dollars needed for our 15-year capital improvement budget items, which, you know, are things some are just maintaining existing assets. Some things are, are looking at new, uh, at new things that are tied to annexation agreements or, or mainly just trying to make upgrades to existing facilities. So with that said, what are we doing to be proactive? We fully realize the general fund cannot support all of these things. So what, what we do as staff is we look for grant opportunities whenever possible, being careful to realize what grants, uh, the long tentacles of the grants can be. We try to be careful with that, but we out, we're out there looking for other force, um, other places to find revenue. Different, uh, Illinois State, Federal, Local Grants, as you can see a list there. Uh, we also are trying to reach. Uh, we also are trying to reach, uh, private funding, private partnerships. Uh, currently, if, for a plug, if you're gonna shop at Macy's this month, you'll have the opportunity to make a donation at Macy's, and that money will get filtered back to Miller Park. So, we look out for anything that we can find to help the part, private partnerships. Zoological Society is an excellent example of, of society that not only helps zoos operating expenses annually, they're helping raise funds for the master plan. There's a group trying to form, the Friends of the BCPA, which would be very similar to that, to, to help operate, operational, uh, issues with the BCPA. The SOAR has the Tootsie Roll Drive Donation Program. We, we try to sell advertising and sponsorships in our program guides, in our golf courses, in our BCPA playbills. Uh, we look for sponsorships for shows at the BCPA and other recreation programs to help offset costs, create revenue. Last thing I want to leave you with is, how do we compare na, nationally when it comes to cost recovery? And this is something I'm probably the most proud of. If you look at our expense budgets, and you added up all of the different divisions we have, folks would think we have a fourteen-million-dollar cost to the city, but that's only the expense side. We raise half of that in revenue on our own, in fees and charges and other, and other revenues. So, our cost, we, we recover fifty percent of our costs. As you can see, the national numbers, that puts us in the upper quartile, uh, throughout the nation, of a Parks and Recreation Agency covering their costs higher than almost, uh, you know, a very high percentage of, of what other agencies do. Why is that? We happen to have some revenue generating businesses, the Ice Center, the golf courses, the BCPA, we, we do generate some high revenue in, in certain areas. And this number excludes the one-point-seven-million-dollar in sales tax that's earmarked for the BCPA, it does not include that. And it does not include the debt service to the BCPA, just because that's how it would, uh, compare most accurately with this NRPA report. If I included those numbers, our cost recovery comes up to fifty-seven, fifty-six, fifty-seven percent, but more accurately, the fifty percent cost recovery is, I, I believe, shows that we operate, um, both as lean as we can on the expense side for what we offer, and we do what we can on the revenue side to try to generate as much as we can. So with that, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Quick clarifying questions?
I was just gonna say that, uh, I saw, we just got an email during your presentation about, uh, singing the praises of Parks and Rock, I don't know if that was planned, but, uh...
Boy, if I had the talent to do that, I'd take credit for it, but...
Citizens are, are, you know, singing the praises, so thank you.
Thanks, thanks, John. Okay. Mr. Kayler.
And if I can, you know, we're very fortunate to have Frank Kayler here, as, serving as our interim Community Development Director, and we've asked him to take a little less time, about ten minutes or less, but as we, many of us realize, we're seeing a lot of upcoming activity in the comp plan, we're seeing development, uh, recover, developers are, are a little more active, not as active as they were before the recession, but we wanted him to take a few minutes and just comment, uh, on the, uh, Community Development or Pace Department.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, I'll try and make my presentation proportionate to my tenure here, which has been very short thus far. Um, very impressed with the dedication and the talent and the integrity of the staff at Pace. They have a lot of institutional knowledge there, uh, they bring ten, fifteen, sometimes twenty years' experience to their position at the benefit, but we'll also see, uh, shortly, its liability. Uh, within the next month, upwards of about nine members of the department will be retiring, so we're gonna see about a thirty percent turnover in that department, so succession planning is gonna be very critical on the ongoing, uh, situation. There are four, uh, sections of the, uh... Four sections to Pace, planning, code enforcement, facility management, building safety. Uh, facility management, uh, the move there is to create more of a new division outside of Pace, take over responsibility for the myriad of buildings within the city, and I, I think it's appropriate, that's gonna allow us to focus on our core issues of planning, building safety, um, and code enforcement. Planning is responsible, as I said, for, for zoning, comprehensive plan, historical preservation, they work closely with the Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, other historic, or other, uh, neighborhood organizations and what have you. Um, just running through this real quick, zoning regulations, allowable uses, density, parking, building height, placement of the building on the lot, all those things have to be factored in. Um, and Craig talked about his, uh, the utility locates, if someone's putting addition onto the house, putting up a fence, a swimming pool, we ask them to, to call Julie, the joint utility locate, so, uh, utilities can come out and identify where, uh, lines are, and that certainly impacts upon his operation. We've seen building permits increase from about, uh, six thousand in two thousand and eight to almost seventy-eight-hundred, uh, in two thousand and thirteen, about a sixteen percent increase in the number of permits coming up. But getting back on, on planning itself, um, we, we cooperate with the West Bloomington Revitalization Project, work closely with Economic Development, McLean County Regional Planning Commission, uh, although McLean County Regional Planning Commission is leading the charge on the comprehensive plan, as they can support and understand, it's, it's our comprehensive plan. It's what we as a city want to envision for the future moving forward. And a lot of that work is gonna fall back on the planning division to help coordinate on that. Work with local and regional organizations, agencies, associations, and the Downtown Bloomington Association. But if you think about it, the community that has access to three major interstates, two major universities, two world-class healthcare facilities, eighty thousand residents, downtown, portions of which are on the National Register, many communities would have three, four, as many as five planners on staff, one of which is focusing on neighborhood revitalization and historic preservation. We have one planner that coordinates all those activities within the Pace Department. Uh, Peoria has five, Decatur four, Champaign nine planners, Urbana three, Normal one, so it's a, a very lean operation, uh, in that regard. Granted, uh, some of the plan reviews have gone down in recent years. Uh, you can see the number from two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen, I think a lot of that's focused on the economy. We've seen the housing starts go down significantly, and it's not just in Bloomington, but throughout the country, throughout Illinois and Chicago metropolitan area, where I'm very familiar with. Those numbers have come down significantly. I think Will County at one point was one of the fastest-growing, uh, counties in, in Illinois, and they issued, I think, less than two-hundred building permits for new homes, uh, this past year. And they're having a symposium coming up next week to say, why is this? What, what's happening, and trying to identify that issue. The lack of housing growth certainly impacts some of the numbers Justin ended talking about, fewer houses, fewer people are buying furniture, upgrading their, their existing homes, so it all comes together in that respect. Uh, code enforcement, property maintenance, rental housing inspection, community development, block grant programs, um... Peoria has five code enforcement officers, just as, as an example, we have two, you know, trying to work with the vacant homes, foreclosed homes, uh, the housing maintenance issue. Uh, one of the things that I think is gonna help moving forward, the legal department is looking to implement an administrative adjudication program, which could help expedite bringing people in, uh, on code violations to get a, uh, declaration of, of guilty or not compliant, non-compliant. And the upside of that also, the revenues we receive from that, not that it's a revenue program, they'll stay with the city. When you go to the circuit court, you have to, you know, share those numbers with the court, so we'll have a, a better handle on, on those revenue programs itself. Again, uh, code enforcement, fire inspections, we'll, we'll come back to that in a second, you know, those have gone down a little bit. I think part of it's because of staffing and the challenges. Uh, rental housing, we have twelve thousand rental units within the community, and, and there's a, uh, a degree of expectation that the city is out there and taking a look at those units, make sure they're, they're safe, and coming up with some reasonable program over a period of time to inspect those units. Right now, we have a, a part-time person looking at that rental housing program, so it's kind of difficult to, to stay on top of that, uh, as best as we can. Community development, block grant, I think that's one aspect of our department that really has a, a significant impact. You know, in, in the last four years, almost six-hundred-thousand dollars in state funding, uh, for single-family rehabilitation, those are two-year, uh, grants, a pass-through of one-point-four-million for the continuum of care, rehabilitation of a hundred-and-forty-nine housing units, uh, demolition of, of seventeen dilapidated structures, and turning ten of those lots over Habitat for Humanity for the construction of new single-family homes. Four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in infrastructure improvements to benefit the low-mod area, curb, sidewalk, sewer improvements. Uh, we've assisted nine agencies to the distribution of two-point-three-million in annual block grant funds, and collaborated with eight different agencies for homeless, family, and, and children services, so very much engaged. A key person of that, Sharon Walker, she's retiring at the end of this year. Um, and that, one of the things that's really concerning, because that's not a program that someone can immediately step into. Uh, we're in the fifth year, uh, of our five-year action plan that, that HUD requires us to have. United Way is working with us for a, our assessment of needs, which would be the precursor for the next five-year plan. We're working closely with, uh, human resources to see how quickly we can track, recruit, get someone on board, so that they can work side by side with Sharon throughout the rest of the year, or how much time is in there to get to know those agencies and that continuum of care, in, in that five-year action plan, so they can very much assimilate and, and internalize all the information that will become on that. So again, it's succession planning. One of the areas our department gets involved in is the inspection of businesses to make sure they're compliant with life safety, our fire inspectors, you know, are there extinguishers? Are there exit lights appropriate? Are the aisles blocked or doorways blocked? Um, those types of situations, we have more than three thousand businesses in town. One thing we critically need is a business registration program to identify who those businesses are, where they are, who to contact in a, in an emergency, are there, um, uh, items stored on site that, that the first responder should, should be aware of, and then we can, uh, systematically get into a fire inspection program. We used to have four fire inspectors within the department, we're down to two. But again, it's something we need to get on top of, and so our department can go out and look at those life safety issues that people are, are asking us to do. Uh, so building safety is a, cre, is facility management we talked about, uh, building safety, uh, plan review, fire inspections, building inspections, mobile home parks, um, again, some of the issues, and I'll just, a little different on the chart here, two thousand and eight was actually six thousand, uh, permits, two thousand and thirteen, almost seventy-seven-hundred permits. If you think one permit equates to about five inspections per home, per location, give or take, twenty minutes per inspection, get out there, you do the math, we're at about thirteen thousand man-hours of doing inspections for those permits which are applied for. Uh, that doesn't take into account plan review, that doesn't take into account the, the time necessary to enter into the unit system, which our people are becoming much more adept at, would hope to have tablets in the next year so they can more accurately record their field inspections and get that new information to the system, uh, much qu, more quickly than they have. Again, the thirteen thousand staff hours to do the inspections each year, it does take its toll. Uh, we've seen a reduction in staff in Pace over the last five years. Part of that is rightsizing, part of it was, was dealing with the budgetary issues, but I don't think you'd see a more lean operation than what we presently have in Pace right now, and still trying to balance the, the effectiveness of the life safety issues and, and what can we do, uh, cost-effectively for the citizens of Bloomington. That's pretty much where we're at, Mayor.
Okay, uh, any clarified questions? Okay, thank you. David, do you want to, uh...
I'm gonna wrap it up, and I'm only gonna take a few minutes.
Okay, and then we will take a break.
Yeah. I just, uh, I, I want to just say again, one of the goals and objectives of the staff, especially directors, is to help you be as informed as possible on issues, the services, so that you can make the best policy decisions. And I think, hopefully, uh, you have been educated, informed, learned something from these presentations. I know I have, I'm here every day, and I don't merely have the kind of grasp of who our customers are, the services we're providing, the impact it's having on our seventy-eight-thousand citizens, like you have heard from these presentations. Now, there was a reason we chose just to focus on the so-called core services, the line departments, those that are out there in front. We have a lot of staff services as well, some of finance, HR, IT, a lot of these other departments, yes, maybe smaller, but that they're to support the line departments. Uh, unfortunately, and I, I want to say that we have a lot of good work that is being accomplished by these staff departments. However, we are not meeting the needs and the expectations of our line departments, just as an example, as I've been out there talking with firefighters, time and time again in the meetings I'm having, they talk about, you know, the IT personnel we have are great, they really enjoy them, but they have so many technological needs in the fire department, and our IT staff is so lean, they cannot meet those expectations, they cannot meet the needs that our fire and police department have, so that they can be more efficient and effective in using technology, you know, to provide those critical public safety services. The same is true with our HR department, a very lean staff, they do the best they can with those numbers. But again, we're not turning things around a, as quickly as they need to be to help cer, make sure that we can help fill positions, vacant positions, as quickly as we need to. Uh, so many of our staff positions were heavily cut back after the last recession, we've never fully recovered. So when we look at internal customer service, uh, we are getting a poor grade when it comes to supporting our police department, our fire department, our public works, our water, our parks and recreation, and Pace Department. And a lot of it comes back to a lean staff, but a lot of it also comes back to, uh, managers not being able to manage. Hopefully going forward, and that's why you see, uh, as we talked about, the revitalizing city government, we need to be about a culture change, we need to be about trying to help our employees, not only give them the resources, which is critical in the budget time, but we've got to constantly be looking at how we can be more cost-efficient in the labor we have, how can we better support and, uh, enable our core line departments to do their job to our city's expectations? And that's why you're seeing some of these dollars that are being requested, not only for my office, for the directors, but for managers as well. And what you haven't seen is necessarily positions in HR and IT. The reason for that, there is some significant dollars in revitalizing, uh, government that is just dollars. Basically, we still have some work to do to say, how can we take those shortcomings, those needs in IT and HR, and make sure that we can better fulfill our critical mission to support those line departments? That is still a work in progress, and hence, I wasn't to the point of being able to say anything other than requesting, uh, I think there's what, four or five-hundred-thousand dollars in there? Because if our staff departments are not able to support our line departments, they're being held back. And that's where we need to put that priority, but you can't continue to talk about cutting staff positions, these staff departments, without it continuing to be, have a critical handicap, you know, to these line departments, and we have significant needs there. That's why part of that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand has about a half-million to see how we can totally continue our reorganization and revitalizing, rightsizing these staff departments to better serve those core. Uh, so, with that, Mayor, I think, uh, this kind of brings to a close what we wanted to present in the way of staff, and I think we're almost ready to, uh, ready to take a break.
Three minutes over, but that's pretty close. Okay, so, uh, I will, let's take about a fifteen-minute break, and then we'll come back and continue our discussions. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and continue, and in this section, we, um, this is the beginning of Mayor and Ca, and City Council discussion. Ultimately, we have, we want, we wanna have enough time here, maybe about forty, forty-five minutes, uh, to, so that we have enough time for a lunch break about at eleven-thirty, obviously, we don't wanna choke off any productive discussions that we're having, and then we'll have lunch, and then we'll come back and continue. What's, what's obviously most important here, again, it's good that it's live-streamed, is as much as possible, if we can give feedback to the staff, what kind of budget do we want them to put together to present to us in April? Now, one possibility might be, if we're, we still have ten different perspectives on this, is to maybe, uh, come up with two possible budgets, uh, in early April. But clearly, we have only a little over a month to, um, to make all this happen. And one thing that I, um, that the presentations here, I think, help drive home is just, uh, obviously giving us a, a more grounded perspective on what's actually happening, and I do want to commend our, uh, new councilwoman, Johnny Painter, for having met with all the, the department heads, or virtually all the department heads, and I would certainly encourage, um, all of us as council members, if we have time... And I would certainly encourage all of us as council members, if we have time, particularly if there's something we have questions on, to go forward with that. And I do believe, Mike Kimerling, I was remiss, at some point I said that I would urge the council, and maybe we would organize a follow-up to the attempt last, was it a year ago or so, to ride with the firefighters? Station tours, I'm sorry, yeah. Great. And then I'll be mentioning this again, and maybe we'll work something out in the, maybe mayoral remarks on Monday, or maybe the subsequent council meeting. Because it certainly helps us to understand more precisely what's going on within our city and what the implications of the trade-offs that we might make happen to be. Now, I'll just make one comment and then open it up for statements. Clearly, at this point, if we were in a situation where our general fund hadn't, or we hadn't made some pretty substantial cuts five years ago, and I think it's roughly 75 positions that were shed for a variety of ways five years ago, and if our general fund had experienced, well, you know, inflationary tax increases of 1.7%, 1.8%, then essentially, in other words, if we were today where we were five years ago, then there might be some more obvious targets, at least from, as I take a look at the budget. And then we, because again, at this point, we've done a lot of the belt tightening, and we have not had inflationary increases. In fact, actually, I believe about a half a million dollar decrease in property taxes a little over a year ago that was voted, I believe, December of 2012. So that's part of what the kind of, the box we're all in here in trying to make some decisions. And with that, I will open the floor up to comments, questions, direction, and again, we can do more than follow-up questions here from directors, since we have them here from our city council. Alderman Fazini.
I'm gonna read some of my remarks, and it'll make it a little shorter. I did send an email to everyone back a couple of weeks ago and ask for comments and willingness to share with citizens, if any of them wanted to. But let me try to start with a little historical perspective from my viewpoint. I see the need for street and sewer repair to get us up to average at about $60 million. It's probably a little on the low side after this last winter. For pensions, it's about $100 million, and deferred maintenance is about $400 million. That's $560 million. And that's built itself up over the last 30 years. So if you want to just do the simple math, divide 30 into 560 million, and that's $19 million a year. Every city council in the last 30 years has presented a balanced budget to the public. Actually, what they presented was a budget that was $19 million in the whole, because we weren't taking care of our streets, pensions, and deferred maintenance. That's historical perspective. My first comment was, the request to increase staff by 17 people is not resonating with citizens that are contacting me. My previous experience in the private sector, I can say that our employees are reasonably well-paid and their benefits are extraordinary. Stress is part of what goes along with well-paid jobs. What I'm gonna need to see prior to agreeing to staff increases is that the increase will produce enough revenue to pay for the salary and benefits of the person filling the job. Or I'd need to see expense reductions of at least an equal amount for the person filling the job. For example, we'd reduce overtime by more than we're gonna pay for new people. That's item one. Item two, I think we should consider reducing the 30-year goal to move pension funding from our current level of under 60%, not to 100%, but to 90%. That will save us some money. Number three, we have in our current budget doing the repair on three, not repair, doing three intersections with traffic signals. In the previous five years, I think we've done none. I believe we should be starting a little bit more gently and do one a year for the next three years rather than three all in one year, and that would save $700,000 in this coming year. Number four, under no circumstances am I gonna vote to approve a budget that does not contain at least $4 million and probably closer to $6 million for street and sewer repairs above the $10 million bond. That additional $2 million is basically because of the harsh winter. And I want to go into, when we voted to do the $10 million, one of the reasons given for not doing it was that we really don't want to issue more bond debt, because bond debt might, maybe is considered bad. Some bond debt is bad. And if we took $4 million out of our $10 million bond and just used it for operating expenses, that's what's called bad bond debt. You don't take long-term bond debt and use it for current operating budgets, and I would have voted against that myself. So I, in good conscience, cannot allow $4 million to come out of our $10 million bond. That's just sort of kicking it down the road again. Item five, we have a proposal to increase the utility tax to generate $4 million in annual income that would be paid by all of our citizens, and as the mayor said, it would be a small amount per month per person. This could be used for two ways. One, we could decrease the current funding gap by $4 million, or we could use it to service new bond debt. And depending on the interest rate, and we're in a 30-year low right now, and the term, whether it be 10, 15, or 20 years, we could generate somewhere between $40 and $50 million in funds available to use for, some of for streets, some of it for faster catch-up on pensions, some of it for deferred maintenance, and some of it just to put aside for the next three years to give us time to correct our structural debt problem. And then we wouldn't be under pressure to do something immediately. And I don't believe we would have an adverse effect on our bond rating, having worked in that industry, if we know we have a $4 million absolute source for the repayment. So rather than just take $4 million and spend it, I would think it'd make more sense to take that $4 million, turn it into 40 to 50 million, and judiciously use the 40 to 50 million. We also have the opportunity to change another tax, and that's the locomotor fuel tax, and that would generate, with a four-cent-per-gallon increase, $1.4 million, or something close to that, because that's what the city of Champaign did, and that's what it generated. And it's about the same size. The other thing it found out in Champaign and Urbana, because then Urbana followed to do the same thing once they saw it was successful, is that the gasoline prices at the pump didn't necessarily go up. And empirically, I travel back and forth to Champaign at least once a week, sometimes two or three times a week. And over all the years I was doing that, after they increased their tax, I was buying gasoline in Champaign, Urbana, just as often as here, because the prices were the same or lower. So we can consider doing a locomotor fuel tax where 30% of that is paid by people who don't live here. That would not work if we did it and our sister city to the north did not. But I think it's possible, in fact, even probable, that before we did something like that, we would get agreement from the leaders of that community, and we'd do it jointly. Those are the comments I sent to everyone, so they shouldn't be new. I think our roads, our streets, our sewers, I love the quote that Jim said, "Our quality of life is defined by smooth streets." You know, that's accurate. And his other main point was, inaction is more expensive than action. We need to take action. We need to fix our streets. We need to spend the $10 million and probably $6 million more to be able to make some headway. Without doing that, we're gonna be doing what Carl Woodward keeps telling us every time he comes before us. You're just gonna keep kicking a can down the road and letting future generations pay. I don't think this council wants to do that. The past 30 years where the councils has done that, and we need to stop it. I find it a privilege to be able to be on this council and to be looking at things this way, and I appreciate the fact that we are in a difficult situation. We're not gonna get out of it immediately, but I think a bond issue using either the $4 million or the locomotor fuel tax to generate 40 to 50 million will really help us get there. And Tracy, I have all this written, so you don't have to... Yeah, copy it. I'll give you a copy when we're done. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. Just one clarification. I think the one thing that as I, I think all 10 of us have agreed on is that we're not gonna kick the can down. I mean, I think we've all, I think that's something we can, we may not agree on how we get there, because, and you've said some things that are probably gonna be, I'm sure, spark some controversy, but I think we agree on that. The other thing, just as a clarification, so the, you're suggesting that the public utility tax, rather than being earmarked for pensions, be something that be put into a bond and be a dedicated revenue source for a bond, and that's where that has come from? And just in terms of the public, not the public, the motor fuel tax, that it's not something in our city manager's budget, but in conversations with normal, they are interested, because they've had some of the, they've got some of the same problems we have. But that's, again, at this point, others who want to weigh in. Again, I'm trying to take copious notes, so I have some idea too, to make sure that I can get some kind of sense of where the balance of power is in our council. All the women's turns.
I got back just a couple minutes late, so just a question. Are we giving our budget, which it sounds like...
Either budget positions, ideas, clarification, questions, anything.
Okay, because I was thinking that it was on the agenda for this afternoon to discuss, so I don't want to jump ahead of myself here.
Well, at least as I see this here, our discussion starts right now.
Okay, okay. I'm just gonna wait a few minutes. I'm going to weigh in, but I just wanted to clarify exactly what we were doing. I'm gonna let somebody, Alderman Schmidt.
Okay.
I actually, I have a question. Clarify something Rob said. So the $4 million that we're talking about not going in the streets is in addition to the $10 million, or is it coming out of the...
No, just to clarify, and the city manager can clarify this, but essentially, the two main ways that the staff is proposing this year in the budget as presented to close the gap, the macro level is one, a public utility tax, and the other is, in a sense, not spending the $4 million that we had had in the past on street resurfacing.
And that is over and above the $10 million?
Right.
It's not taking the $10 million down to $6 million?
No, it's not. It's not taking the $10 million. In other words, it's, we have $10 million that was approved, that we still actually, still have some details to take care of. Now, I have been getting lots of pushback from people, and I have said, yeah, I don't like this, but, I mean, again, I thought, my intention was, when we talked about this, it would be four plus 10, but things are, circumstances have changed, and the situation is more difficult. So, but it does not mean that, again, it's not six, it's 10. Now, I think you were saying you thought you should, we should spend more than the four that was budgeted.
Yes.
You thought we should do up to six million...
We should do six million in our, in our natural budget.
Okay.
And by not doing it in our natural budget, we are kicking it down the road again, because the $10 million was not to fix an annual, it was to help get us so that we don't keep going behind.
I think it was your comment about a bad bond debt, which I agree with.
Yeah.
But I thought you were saying that a bad bond debt is taking a $10 million bond and reducing it to six to fix the structural deficit, so I think I must have misunderstood that.
No, no, that's exactly what I said, and it's what I meant. I think by having a $10 million bond, that's an isolated incident. That's what we wanted to do in addition to four. If we get rid of the four, I think we are essentially taking $4 million out of that bond issue and using it for operating expenses in one year. Yes, that's what I was saying.
Right. And I think that, and people have said that to me in many situations, and I've said, yes, that is what it is. I don't like it, but I don't know, given the fact that we've got such a tight timetable, I don't have a really good alternative if I, because if I was gonna oppose something, I would say, this is what, how I want to fix it. And I think, frankly, I feel like my back's to the wall every time I look at these. It's more sobering. Mr. Hale.
Just briefly, a couple of comments. Everyone needs to keep in mind too, that when the property tax levy was adopted, basically, we raised the payment for pensions, and this year by 1.6 million, and so in our general fund budget, we had to come up with, where do we find the cut? You know, that cut partly came out of the $4 million for resurfacing. The other part is that our labor costs for this upcoming year are a little over $4 million greater than the current year. And with declining revenue, that's, you could say, another way as to why there's not $4 million, it's the 1.6 that went into pensions with no associated revenue, that and an increase in four and a half, four, four and a half million in labor costs, operational expenses. So rather than cut programs, significantly cut services, knowing at least this year, for a one time, we had the $10 million bond, we, I recommend that we not do an additional $4 million, because in order to do that, then we're just in the very significant program, services, labor cuts.
And just, so to clarify, the, we need $4 million, a little over $4 million more next year, just to keep the people we have right now.
Right.
And some of that is healthcare, but the bigger chunk, much of it is getting caught up on union contracts that had been passed in many people who had not had their, had salary raises and had, essentially, because they had not been evaluated in many years. That's all getting caught up, and it's all hitting us at one time. And unfortunately, it's that, for other reasons, that the planets aren't in alignment to make it difficult. I'm sorry, Alderman Schmidt.
One other thing, again, I really, I want to continue to emphasize there is a strong linkage between utility tax increase and the pensions. At $6.5 million, you know, we are tying that utility tax to the $6.5 million we need for police and fire pensions.
But we would need to, if the council were in favor of that, we would also then need to by ordinance earmark that money for pensions.
Well, as you've, there is another chart in here that is showing, you know, when you say it's earmarked, indirectly, that's what we're doing, because we're taking the pension payments out of the pension fund. The pension fund basically is what we use property tax revenue. So as you've seen in one of these charts, we're going from $6 million to $12 million. It'll all come out of the property tax levy, but in order to do that, you've got to reduce other revenue going into the general fund to replace that. It's the utility tax. So yes, I think we want to continue. There is that linkage, but in five years, 95, 98% of our property tax levy will be going to pensions. But the way we're replacing that is with utility tax, plus we're gonna have to come up with two plus more million. So it's convoluted, but yes, indirectly, that's exactly what it is. Utility tax is helping us come up with the $6.5 million we need for pensions.
And if we wanted to specifically earmark it though, that would have to be an ordinance associated with the budget, correct? I mean, if we wanted to bind ourselves in future...
And again, we're gonna accomplish the same thing, you know, but the property tax levy, I think, most cities, I think a very wise decision they've made is because you don't want to see the volatility like in utility tax, which we can see, by having the property tax always be the primary source, that is gonna be more consistent, more, you know, and ultimately, many cities, in order to ensure that money's already there, and that's really where the bulk of that will come, but we've gotta have to replace it, i.e. with utility tax. So it's a much stronger, I think, commitment to our police and firefighters, you know, of saying that indirectly, yeah, the property taxes will cover it, but we'll lose that revenue in the general fund.
Alderman Schmidt.
I guess I just want to share a couple of observations about the utility tax that I'm hearing, and I'm sure I'm not alone. The two groups I would say that have expressed concern about this are those who are on fixed and low income, who are struggling now to pay their utility bills. So while it may not feel like such a burden to many of us sitting up here, it certainly is for an awful lot of people that I represent. The other group is businesses, and particularly small businesses, who have said, you know, if you do this, I'm likely to go under. So we're, you know, we're adding money one place, but when we think about some of the numbers Justine and others have shared with us, we're going down in another area. But I will say that I've received more favorable support for amusement tax and motor fuel tax increases, which we really haven't talked about motor fuel tax increases, but, you know, that is a very strong sentiment against utility taxes and... And, and, um, you know, so I, I just put that out there, and, and I, I think other people will probably say that they've heard the same. And if that's the case, we really need to, um, figure out, i- if, if not that, then what is the, the actual cost to citizens by taking it out of something else? Because, you know, one way or another, we're, we're gonna have to, to balance this, and something's gonna have to get, so. I, I hope we can get to that kind of articulation.
Okay. Alderman, uh, Lauer, and then Sterns.
Well, again, I'm gonna break it down and kind of put it in layman's terms. My dad used to put his hand on my shoulder and say, "Son, you're just robbing, uh, Peter to pay Paul here." Um, I'm not sure that, uh, I understand how you're looking at that, but really, I think we need to take a look at the entire picture. And, uh, we need to prioritize like, like Alderman Sage keeps coming back to, and look at our essential services and what we absolutely have to fund first, okay? And then look at the other end of the spectrum, and what are these niceties that maybe we can do without? Maybe we can, uh, reach, uh, the same level of service, but in a different way that won't cost us the same amount of money? Um, and there's, there's probably some places that we could do that. Uh, again, I think we probably need to be talking to folks that actually provide those services to find those savings. Um, so, I'm not in favor of, uh, I, I agree with Alderman Fazini. Uh, I think it's, it's a very poor decision to, uh, issue long-term bond debt and then put it into the actual operating budget. I, I totally disagree with it. I did not vote for that, uh, with that premise in mind. And, uh, I know I'm new to this, and, and maybe not the, the sharp politician that some, uh, might be, but, uh, it goes against my principles, and I, I still think that, um, we issued that bond debt to, to cover that. And, uh, if we don't spend it, um, or unable to spend it in this fiscal year, it should be set aside for next year. Um, and, and be in addition to the 4 million that we would normally spend, uh, to increase and, and try to get ahead of, uh, a, a huge asset to our community, and that is our streets. Um, and, uh, we have a number of other, as you've, uh, uh, mentioned as well, uh, additional and very looming expenses in, in infrastructure that we need to be addressing as well.
Alderman Sterns?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to, um, talk about one, one of the issues that's come up in, in this little discussion so far, and not really give my entire budget position here, because I have a lot of different issues and different, you know, et cetera. I just want to talk a little bit about the pensions, which, um, is a topic we've been circulating. I don't know if any of you have seen the Illinois Policy Institute's latest. They came out with a couple of reports. This one is February 27th of 2014. Illinois's Top List of States Worst-Funded Municipal Pensions, uh, Systems. And, um, one of the statements I highlighted, the study found that the municipal pension funds for Peoria, Decatur, and Bloomington all pose, quote, "critical risks to city budgets" and are dangerously underfunded. Now, that was something that one of our other auditors, Art Tepfer, I believe, strongly kind of tried to get across to us. And I'm not sure, you know, what happened to Mr. Tepfer, but he's no longer, I don't think he's our, our consultant anymore. He's, anyway, not the main one. But, other, other things they, that the Illinois Policy Institute talks about is how, what, what the solutions are. And it does say that in large part, it's up to our state legislators to change these, um, uh, pension plans and change the way they're formulated. But it also says, "Cities can reform how services are delivered." Cities can reform how services are delivered. Now, in, in concluding my discussion of this, and hiring and such, I just want to remind everyone of the Panograph article, talking about the 17 new hires. We all know about, um, for instance, going straight into it, the communications director. Whether that position's been hired yet or not, I don't know. But one of the things this council talked about some weeks, months ago was, why don't we try, when we can, contract for something that isn't, we don't have right now? Let's see if we can contract. Um, an internet search would produce 100 companies that provide communicating resources. And yet, our plan going forward is to hire this pension, in essence. We're gonna hire this person, and lo and behold, there we go, another pension. Now, that doesn't matter after all, because it's only one pension, is that right? Well, it matters to me. This is a philosophy, it's, it's a, it's a goal. And, and the goal seems to be hire. That means pensions, and that means benefits, which are absolutely astronomical. Benefits have been discussed as 50% of a salary here in the, here in the city of Bloomington, another 50%. So, my question, full philosophically, and from the, you know, up here, the policy, is why on earth? What is driving that decision to hire? Now, you can say, "Well, Judy, it'd be a lot more expensive to contract." And I, I understand, you can pay 100, 200 bucks an hour for expensive consultants. I, I get that, I know that. But, you can also, on a, you know, because I work as a contractor quite often, you can also, because you don't like the way they comb their hair, in essence, they're gone. You know, anybody's gone on a dime. There's no workers' comp, there's all of the risks, and all of the, all of the, um, compensation goes away. And it, it, it's just mystifying to me, what is the intention here? We're talking about 17 new hires, really? Are we trying, and I, I don't mean this in any disrespect at all, but are we really wanting to drive the city over the cliff? I mean, to me, there's a lot of very difficult things entrenched. As most people know, I was not a fan of managed competition for public works. It's a huge subject, huge. But are there simple, day-to-day things we can do to mitigate this worst city in Illinois for pension problems? Uh, yes, yes, there are, and that's one of them. Um, so, I, I agree with a lot of the things that Alderman Fazini said in his overall position. I agree with Lauer, Alderman Lauer. Um, I will not be voting for this budget either, if it takes the 4 million that I thought we had in, um, our budget for streets. Um, and no, we do not take out debt. We do not, you know, for, uh, bonds. We do not bond operating expenses, period. That's the worst financial decision you can possibly make. So, other than hiring when you should be, you know, contracting. Um, and we can do it, and we should do it in some cases, and this is one. So, I'm not saying all 17 of these could be contracted, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying, whenever and wherever. We had a wonderful contractor, staff lady Laura, I don't know if she's still here or not, but I do know she was contracted. I thought she was great, you know, she was a lot like Bobby, just, just great. Now, why on earth would we hire? Would we put another pension and another huge set of benefits? And this goes down the road. This is not something that we just, you know, uh, turn on and off. So, I'm, I'm really confused about the overall philosophy here, when I see, when I see and hear things like this. And I made this very clear, by the way, I think, in our, in our meeting, that I'm appalled, frankly. That we would consider raising one single tax and hiring two assistant city managers. I, I just, I just, you know, I'm very, very disappointed and very concerned about this, the future of our city right now. Um, and I appreciate that, thank you. I'll, I'll have some more comments on raising taxes and other things. Thank you.
Alderman Sage, and then, um, Mboka.
Yeah, and I'll be looking forward to the conversations this afternoon where Aldermen's talk specifically about what they would, what they would cut. Because again, I hear a lot of high-level platitudes. I don't hear any practical suggestions for that. So, I'll look forward to hearing some of that this afternoon as well. Um, again, when we talk about city services, and, and I think I'll, I'll echo a little bit of what, of what Kevin said. We have kind of a continuum of services, and I've talked about this before. We have those core services, things like water, police, and fire. And then at the other end, we have some quality-of-life services, like parks and rec. And then we may have some things that fall in between, like public works and some other things that are probably closer to core services. Um, that means certainly solid waste pickup, and that's a core service, but maybe some of the other things that we do. Um, and so that's part of the philosophical conversation. We have to decide, in my opinion, what, what are we going to kind of target as core services? Because those in effect then become fixed expenses, if you will. And the quality-of-life services, that may become a little bit more variable in nature. And, and so that's part of the conversation I'm having with myself, and I want to make sure we can have this afternoon. Um, some quick, back of the, back of the envelope calculation here. I was just, as, as, as the Parks and Rec presentation was being made, if I looked at all the different divisions, maintenance, rec, aquatics, BCPA, zoo, Pepsi, Pepsi Ice Center, I did not include SOAR. Um, that's 11.2 million dollars in our budget. Um, if, if we decide that, that the quality-of-life issues are ones that may be a little bit more variable in nature, not so much core, not so much basic, that suggests to me that that's an opportunity where we might look for, for some savings, at, at least in, in there. That, some cuts in services there. Um, so as of right now, and, and again, I, I guess I, I'll look forward to the conversations this afternoon. For me, I'm not necessarily ready to accept that we've got to have tax increases. Um, until we have specific, more specific conversations about some, some potential cuts in services. Um, and that, that would, that may mean some cuts in staff. Um, and, and, and then have that conversation with the city. Um, and particularly with our respective wards in our constituencies about what they may or may not be willing to accept as part of a, working towards a balanced budget, where, where we're, we're trying to find some way to get to a balance without, um, I guess, kind of juggling or managing tax increases versus cuts. So, again, I look forward to that conversation this afternoon, thank you.
Mboka?
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm actually, Alderman Sage stole, stole a little bit of my thunder. I was gonna go in the same direction. Um, what I've heard from many of my constituents is that, you know, they're not open to tax increases. Um, which, um, i- in my opinion personally, is, uh, is fine. Uh, but then, the question becomes, uh, what are we willing to give up in order to, uh, to be able to continue to, to function? So, today, um, um, I guess it, it became even a little clearer, and I appreciate the department head's, uh, presentations in terms of, this is what you might be giving up. You know, here is the economic impact of the BCPA. Uh, here's what happens to streets when you don't, uh, maintain them to the level that you're supposed to. And I, and I think, um, you know, one of the things that I appreciated a lot about the, the solid waste discussion, uh, was that, uh, and I know we, we have a little less time now. We're under a time crunch. But with the solid waste discussion, I think it, it, it took a little bit of time for people to really tune in to what a cut in service would mean. Uh, and eventually, I, I think people came around to the idea that, yes, we do like the service, and we, uh, we, we want to keep it to a particular level. Um, we, um, not necessarily increase it to the point, or increase the fees to the point that you, you want to, but yet, we still like the service. So, you, you need to, we're open to, uh, a little bit of an increase. And, and I think, you know, to, to the extent that we can, over the next month or so, uh, we, we really need to present those things clearly to, to people, and, and let them know, um, this is what you, uh, you might be facing if we, uh, we decide to make those cuts, and are you open to it? Because as far as I'm concerned, like, you know, I know that the, there are a number of people who like the BCPA, who like our, a lot of our quality-of-life, uh, venues. Uh, but my experience has been that those folks tend to be a little bit quieter uh, about, you know, their likes, until they realize that, oh my gosh, what is happening here? I do not want to lose this. And I really need to, uh, to me, I think that robust conversation needs to take place uh, before we, we get to cuts or tax increases. So, those are my, just my initial comments.
Actually, given our time, we have Alderman Black and Alderman Painter, uh, in that order. And those will be our two last, um, sets of conversations until we have a break, and we have lunch in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak about this, because we've, we've had, we've spoken a lot of high-level discussions about the budget and what we'd like to see. And, and ever since we, we originally brought out the idea of the 17 new hires, uh, we've gotten a lot of feedback. I'm sure all of us have had many phone calls, um, many emails regarding the topic, and, and hearing what people have to say. And, and I'll, I'll say what I really, uh, what I mentioned when the budget was first presented, which is that I've been trying to challenge people who have reached out to me, um, about, specifically if they're opposed to tax increases, what is it they're willing to give up? Um, tell me which programs you can live without. Um, and then conversely, if people, um, like the level of service or want to see it enhanced, which there are a lot of people who do reach out to me saying that. Um, which, how would you like to pay for it? Would, would it come through the form of utility tax? Um, and, and surprisingly, and this is one of the things I've learned, is I've had a lot of people tell me that they want to see a property tax increase, um, which shocked me. Um, I, I didn't think that would be something that most people would be in favor of. But, uh, that's, that's some of the feedback that I've been getting. Um, as we move forward with the budget, um, I tend to find that a lot of people are, are citing quality of life as something they want to get rid of. Um, as something that's not a necessity, that they don't want to, uh, pay for, and that's fine. Um, I'd be very curious to see if we were to present a budget which gutted Parks and Rec, which gutted a lot of the, uh, the, uh, quality-of-life programs that we offer, what the feedback would be. And I think it would be a lot more negative than, than we would imagine. Um, you know, I've, I've heard people talk about, you know, I've never been to the BCPA. There's a lot of people who go to the BCPA. Um, you know, I personally, you know, I, I think I've been to the zoo once, but there's a lot of people who go to the zoo frequently. Um, you know, we talk about, um, how we can, and I've mentioned this before, the state of Illinois presents Bloomington with an uphill battle. Um, Illinois is not growing, it's actually losing people. Um, we have to create an environment in which people want to come here. They want to put down roots, they want to invest, and they want to stay. And as a council, if we're talking about things 10, 15 years down the road, even longer, say, 30, 50 years, we gotta be making smart decisions now. And, and as we've talked about the infrastructure challenges that we face, we've often kind of, I don't know, scoffed, or, um, kind of looked down at some of the past council decisions and how they funded infrastructure, and, and, you know, hey, look at the problem that we have today because of the, you know, 20, 30 years, and Alderman Fazini talked about, this didn't just happen. And I don't want other future councils to look at us and say, well, they made some bad calls now. That's not at all, and I think we can all agree, that's not what we want to be in that position. Um, and so when we talk about infrastructure, investing in infrastructure is something that I think is critical, and that is across-the-board feedback that I've gotten. I represent the west side, where we have a lot of the older sewers, we have a lot of the older streets, we have a lot of the deteriorating issues. And people say, if you want to put money, if you're gonna raise my taxes, put it into roads. I don't want to see it go to quality-of-life stuff. Okay, that, that, that's valid feedback. Um, or cut programs to fund my streets, also good feedback. So, we talk about how we're gonna move that, that 4 million which is in question, or we had previously typically budgeted towards, uh, street resurfacing, on top of the 10 million. That's the direction I want to go. I want, I'd like to see it to be that, that fixed. And I think that would resonate very loudly with the residents because of the harsh winter that we face, and a lot of people have reached out about potholes. I'm sure Jim, you've heard a couple comments about potholes recently. Um, and that's, that would be addressing what, what citizens are looking for. Um, but I'm, I'm anxious to hear some of the, the, the feedback on how we're going to pay for that, um, and, and some of the things that we are comfortable cutting. And, um, I'm still trying to solicit feedback from, uh, residents and, uh, neighborhood groups. And I, I would say that overwhelmingly, the, the idea of adding 17 new staff has been met with a lot of skepticism. Um, but, you know, one, one of the things that, uh, I, I like to think of as our role here is we, we empower David to give us a ser- level of service that we're asking for, do the job that, that citizens are looking for, and then he asks us for resources to do them. He's doing his job by asking for resources. It's up to us whether or not we give it to him. And if we don't give him those resources, then we have to deal with the consequences of not being able to provide the services that we're asking for. So, I think it's, I, I, I appreciate you for coming out and saying, this, this is what we need for the job that you're asking us for. Now, do I think that the council is going to go for all 17 positions? I don't think so. But, that's okay. You're doing what we're, we're, we're supposed to be doing. So, um, I appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing more feedback from other council members and residents.
And then we will end with, uh, Alderman Painter. Just wanted to clarify on this, um, when, oh, I'm sorry. When Chris Kuss and I went to LA, the thing is, I've mentioned many times, everybody said, "What have you got to offer millennials?", number one. Second runner-up, pretty close, I think almost everybody, may have been everybody, but it wasn't the first question, is how quickly can you move in terms of providing incentives, or whatever? Right? And another one that almost everybody asked us is, "What have you got for quality of life?" That's what they're, those are the kinds of things that corporate leaders are looking for. So, I know it's, it's fashionable for us to talk about quality-of-life issues as if maybe, you know, it's a frill, and maybe it isn't perhaps relative, it is relative to something like streets. But there certainly will be economic incentives, or, or the economic consequences. If people do a Google search, and whether they're coming to Bloomington Normal, and if they've, whatever, cut their BCPA staff in half, they've shut down their zoo, they've closed down pool, nobody's gonna come here, right? And I think that's a, a real, uh, situation, and I think that's a real problem. So, it's not just us and our narrow, uh, involvement in quality of life, but there are other things. Okay, I, Alderman Painter, and I won't cut you off, sorry.
That's okay. I'll finally speak. Um, I've gotten some feedback from my constituents too. And overwhelmingly, they don't want a tax increase, but it's because they don't trust us to be good stewards of their money. And quite frankly, I can't blame them because of some of the things that have gone down in the past. I think that we need to have a very aggressive education effort to the public to let them know what we're doing and why we're doing it, and showing them where every penny is going to go. I don't think that we can cut much more because we've pretty much cut to the bone. I know people are really upset about hiring seventeen more people and, and, well, that is a lot. But when you put it in perspective that we've laid off over eighty over several years, I think a lot of people just don't understand that. It's tough. It's a tough situation we're in. And I think we've just all got to work together and put our shoulder to the wheel and cooperate with one another. And hopefully, with a long-term plan and succession, we'll get the job done. Thank you.
Okay. It is eleven thirty-two. We're two minutes late for lunch. So we will come back just a little afternoon and continue this spirited, robust discussion. Thank you. We'll start again as soon as Alderwoman Sterns takes her seat. No pressure, yeah. Thank you, and thank you, everybody. Again, we'll continue our robust conversation. And one thing, just in terms of some of the conversations that I've had with some of our aldermen and others between our eleven-thirty agenda, excuse me, adjournment and now, did sort of really reiterate the fact that many times, I think, many of our citizens don't quite understand the full range of activities and services that are involved in the city. And some of that is something that perhaps we can do a better job of, especially over the next year. And I know I've had some town hall meetings, certainly with Alderman Lauer, Alderman Black, and kind of a de facto town hall meeting with Alderman Sage. And that might be something over the next few months that, especially now that the weather's going to be, we hope, breaking. Maybe we can begin to have more of those, partly as an education, but then also obviously for us to learn and hear what people are saying. And especially, we know, no matter what kind of decisions we make in trade-offs on this budget, that next year, we're going to have some very tough decisions, maybe even more difficult than this year. So getting more feedback and ideas certainly would be helpful. One thing that certainly occurs to me is that when we see our general fund, and our general fund revenues have not been raised, as we, as I mentioned, you know, at the beginning of conversations, in five years, you know, why is it that the general fund of the city of Bloomington would be the one thing that costs don't go up in the entire economy? Well, it's not, obviously. And, and that's one of the difficulties. When the private sector raises their, the cost of their Big Mac or whatever, you know, it's part of competitive pressures in the market. And, you know, we, we know that costs go up for everything. And it's much more difficult, of course, when you're in a situation of government. And obviously, we wouldn't, if McDonald's asked us, do we want to pay more money for our Big Mac? They would say, of course, I don't want to pay more money for my Big Mac. Just like citizens will say to us, I don't want to pay more money in taxes. Actually, I don't want to pay more money in taxes. My property tax is over eight thousand dollars. I have a coroner every time I see it. Now, only one thousand of those, that goes to the city of Bloomington. But it's, it's certainly not something that we, we want, but we do have some difficult trade-offs. And so if we, whether we're cutting or function services, or whether or not we're raising taxes, if so, how, are they surgical? And again, the, if we do raise taxes and they are specifically earmarked, it's a little easier for people to take. As Alderwoman Painter said, you know, people don't trust us. And perhaps they've got good reason for not to trust their elected officials. We've got to earn that trust. And perhaps one way to do that would be either earmarking something for pensions, or maybe having it as the sole revenue source, as Alderman Fazini had suggested for a broader bond. Those are certainly things when people see what they're getting, then it's a lot easier perhaps to accept. Anyway, I'm not going to say anything else. I want to go back to continue our discussion. And is there someone especially, I was about to say, who I have not yet heard from? Alderman Fruen, thank you. Perfect timing.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments. I think I'm probably known for somebody that shares their comments throughout the year through emails. I guess I've sent out a few emails, so I think I've made my, my position pretty clear on several things. A couple of examples would be the utility tax and our benefit-rich program that we're all concerned about with regard to adding new employees to that kind of a situation. But there are a couple of things that just resonated this morning. And this doesn't necessarily bring solutions, but it tells us where we are, that really, people don't want to be taxed. You don't want any more taxes, period. And it reminds me too of the session we had at the BCPA about a year or two ago. We had some kind of a budget open house. And if I remember right, over a hundred people there, broken down into tables. And I think staff's got this well documented, but, you know, people didn't want to give up anything. So that's the challenge we've got right now. So as we've all alluded to, it's going to be hard to sit here, and that's our responsibility, to sit here and provide city staff, which they've asked for, what can we give up? And I think I'd like to see the conversation more directed to, to that aspect of it. What can we give up and try to find out that solution? We've always talked at times about providing Cadillac services. And we tried to cut that back a little bit in our garbage discussion, maybe, for example, picking up bulk waste less often or something like that. But it just didn't work out that that change was made. But I think that's really the direction we need to go, because I don't think we have enough support within the council to raise enough new revenue that is going to cover what obligations we have. So I guess from my perspective, what I'm hearing, if I flip to the revenue side real quickly, it seems to me like the more tolerant revenue options could be amusement and motor fuel tax, just as a thought. So let me see if I've got anything else real quick here. I was thinking out loud to myself, I thought, should we make some sacrifice or some allowance on letting our reserves dip a little bit because we've built them up to such a high level the last five years? But I don't think that's a solution either. We've worked hard to get there, and I think we should stay there. I also have one more thought, and that is, we talk about this culture change. I'm not so sure that we shouldn't ask the public to participate in that. And in that, in, in that comment, I mean, I'll use the example of Thursday, I was on the trail for a couple hours. And I noticed the tremendous amount of garbage that was along Constitution Trail. And obviously, it's the result of the long winter. And it's also the result of maybe some construction going on or some businesses going on. I won't name those. But later on during that day, I noticed several of our good employees, I assume they're Parks employees, cleaning up in our parks. And I thought to myself, you know, occasionally, we've seen dedicated portions of the trail that are picked up by fraternity, sorority, service clubs, et cetera. And I don't know if that's the right example, but I just think we need to shift some of our services that we've typically provided or try to encourage others to help us out. And I'll use that as one example. Another example that I think we could shift that has never gotten much traction, I don't want to get into the minutia quite at this point, but I've long been a proponent for school crossing guards being managed by the schools. And I don't even know what that costs right now, whatever that number is. It would be my belief that if we took that money and gave to the schools and said, manage it yourself, they would accept that in a heartbeat. Because I just think they're there and they can find a way to do that. So there's a couple illustrations. We're talking about trash pickup, and we're talking about crossing guards. And I think it's part of this whole theme about changing our culture. And I think that's part of it too. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, as we go forward, to reiterate, you know, is, we need to give clear direction to the administration, as clear direction as we possibly can, the preferences of ten people about what type of budget to put together. And that's what I would like us to do, try to be as clear as possible. It may be specifying pain, or what are the things that you don't like? And I'll try to keep some notes on this so that then at the end of the day, we can at least see if we've got some, maybe not consensus, but at least a majority that, that are suggesting what types of revenue or what types of programs are we going to eliminate or cut? And how do we go forward? Alderman Malamboi, and then Alderwoman Sterns.
Thank you. The question by Alderman Fruen reminded me of one that I had myself, actually was about the reserve. Where does it stand right now? And if we were to use some of those, because we used those for the park last year, right? For Eagle View?
And help me understand, what, where does what stand?
The reserve.
Oh, the general fund reserve.
Right, the general fund reserve. Where does it stand right now? And if we were to touch that, what would be the impact?
And I'm going to have Patty help me, but, you know, the total, and let's just have two terms. The total general fund balance as of April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen was just a little under twenty million. However, I think the number, the part of that we keep referring to is the, and help, if you want to come up here, Patty, is the undesignated fund balance. That, that we can quickly get into for emergencies, things of that nature. Do you want to comment on both the dollar and the percentage that that is as of April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen?
As of April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, or somewhat, our cash projections from there, we have about thirteen million dollars available in the general fund balance. And that gets you just shy, a couple of basis points shy of the fifteen percent goal that the city had. I would probably point out at this point, David, that we were going, we will be coming to shortly with some budget amendments.
To dip into that.
To dip into that for snow and ice, overtime and such.
Policeum, you know, emergency improvements.
And so forth, so that would feed into that. But that is, and the other caution I would give you is that when you use that to help balance the budget, that is a one-time revenue that is not there that following year, you're kind of starting that next year without holes. So that, that's all I would say.
But if we dip into it too much, that's going to begin to affect our bond rating.
Oh, yes, yes. The policy was to, back in the eight, when the quarter-point sales tax was adopted, the goal was to achieve a fifteen percent fund balance. You are there. You're just slightly below. So we didn't recommend using it to preserve the city's finances.
Just so we're all on the same page, there's probably a little bit of a rate of return on that as well, as long as we maintain something close to that fifteen percent, right? What kind of rate of return are we getting?
On, on liquid dollars, not much these days.
I know. But I mean, do you have a figure about where it might be?
It's way less than one percent, like, that we would be earning.
Okay.
Way less.
So since what, well, what are the inflation rates? Okay, Alderwoman Sterns.
Is that what you consider the same in, as unreserved net position?
Well, there, if you're referring to that in the CAFR, that's a different method of accounting. The net position is based on accrual accounting. I'm talking just cash available to spend on a budgetary basis.
Okay.
Is thirteen million in the general fund.
Right. I had asked for that other figure, and I think you're going to provide that with me, for me at some point.
Yes.
Plus, I'm interested in whether that is increasing or decreasing that net unreserved, you know, the net unreserved position for the city in general. I'm interested in knowing whether that's going up or down.
Okay.
I'm also interested in knowing how our per capita debt is going, what direction. Do you have a sense of that right now?
I think we're lower than normal.
Lower than, than the town of normal?
Yes, we are. We're lower than the town of normal. We haven't updated that since our latest bond issue, but that is forthcoming.
Forthcoming. Okay, great.
And I think the thing we want to remind everyone too, other than this most recent bond, which took it up, but over the next ten years, we'll have, what, fifty percent of our outstanding long-term debt paid off? So that's a very, very positive. It does open up the window of opportunity for some infrastructure bonding, things of that nature. But yes, the ten million dollar bond did increase that by, what, one point two million?
Yeah.
And it does, you know, keep in mind, those two things, you know, our expenditures are up one point two million because of the ten million dollar bond. And then for the, for the pensions, when we increased our pension payments by one point six, that also, you know, reduce some of our, so any, those are just a couple of quick comments. Thanks.
I think that's important to know how the per capita debt is trending, up or down. And right now, I think we do have a, you know, we're pretty far out there with debt, and that's what the bond rating agencies seem to be saying. Because one of my goals that we can all see and measure and hope for is a triple A bond rating, such as, for instance, our neighbor Champaign does have. But that's not what I wanted to comment. I really wanted to comment on Alderman Fruen's comments about volunteerism. Patty, I mean, this doesn't. And I wanted to agree with that, that wholeheartedly and point to a recent article, I don't know if you saw it, in one of our, one of our many journals about Flint, Michigan, and how they're addressing blight on a block-by-block basis with volunteers, graffiti removal, which is something I have long wished for, that we could, you know, help these people that are hit with graffiti. And if we had some volunteers or some people to go out, I'd certainly volunteer, to help get, you know, paint over or somehow remove the graffiti, I think that would, that would be great. So I'm with you on the volunteerism. I mean, the trail, there, there's a million possibilities. Princeton, Illinois has a fabulous theater series, and they just do all kinds of, they're about as far from Chicago as we are, but they bring out all kinds of plays and what have you, and it's all volunteer. The whole thing is volunteer. I can't, I think it's Spotlight Series or something it's called, that's up in Princeton. But having, having said that and agreed about the volunteerism, totally, in fact, if we could get a, a real program, you know, I, I'm going to put it on my Facebook page, but I think it would be, I think it would be great. And it would have to be a budget, you know, a help, something, something that's free. But I do have, I just wanted to chime in here with a very long list of suggestions, and I can run, should I run through them?
Go ahead.
Number one would be the contracting of any position that we can contract, such as a communications director. I don't think it's a dead issue. I think it's a very important issue. Again, I don't know whether we've hired the person or not. But I do know that corporations, State Farm, you know, Caterpillar, they all, they all take advantage of the opportunity when they can to get a specific thing on a contract basis. And that way, there's no pension, there's no benefits, there's no long-term risk, et cetera, et cetera. So that is a very specific and a major suggestion that I have, when we can. And that doesn't mean taking public works private. I've already, you know, like I said, I was a very strong advocate of keeping our public works people in-house for a lot of reasons, a lot of reasons. But when we can, a given position, exactly like communications, I would strongly advocate contracting. Now, we contract our legal services, part of them anyway, to Baird Smith, somebody. I apologize for not having the firm name clear, but we, I do know that I've been told we spent two hundred and fifty thousand, quarter of a million dollars last year in that service. And I would strongly look at consulting, doing that kind of thing, asking, why, why can we not somehow bring some of this in-house? And if it is costing us a quarter- And if it is costing us a quarter of a million dollars, um, what are we really, what's our deliverable? What are, what are we really getting? Cause I'm frankly, I'm not sure that our, that our, um, situations would have been all that di- I don't know, with a, you know, an in-house attorney or, or something like that. So I think we have to constantly evaluate what we're paying and what we're giving. But here's, um, some of my other thoughts, something like gun range maintenance. It's unfathomable to me that we couldn't hire, I mean, contract, I'm sorry, mowing, et cetera, whatever in, is involved in that. Um, uh, the motor fuel tax fund, I noted, has three point eight million in it, I believe, right now. And I'm not sure why, maybe that's earmarked, I, I don't know. Um, when it comes to the Coliseum, I realize we have a contract out there, but are we really, what, what are our safeguards to make sure that the city is frankly getting their percentage of the concessions? What are our, what are our safe, I know we have an audit, but what are we really looking at, um, to, to make sure that the city is getting everything it should get, frankly? Um, park dedication has one million in it, I'm not sure why. Retiree, retiree health buyback, sick leave buyback, um, that is, it seems to be a, a fairly huge expense and we have a lot of retirees coming up and I think we're gonna have a very, very, very major, um, payout. Now, our, David, just asking you directly, have we eliminated sick leave buyback for non-union employees?
Or for non-union, yes, all of it. Uh, we have been able to negotiate eliminating it for some units, but we haven't on police and we only prevailed on the fire, but now that's on appeal. So those things are, take many, many years usually to try and eliminate it, especially from interest arbitration.
Okay, well, that's a huge, a huge step forward and I really, you know, I appreciate anything, anything we could do along those lines. Obviously, we're gonna have to pay what we've already promised, but new employees. And frankly, I think, again, taking on employees is something, every single employee, we should really be asking ourselves, is this a service that could be, could be, um, contracted? Then we're looking at a zoo plan for seventeen million, I mean, really? I mean, how's that, how's that going to affect us going forward? The other night, we were told about a, uh, city plan that needs to be revised and my question was, if that event, um, what is the cost of this? And I don't believe that we have a cost. So I think we need to make sure that we really understand what we're getting into with all of our, all of our various plans, what is it gonna cost? And what the deliverables are and how really, how, how critical is that? And just, that's just a few things, um, a lot more, a lot more things. Uh, the parking garage concerns me greatly. And I'm wondering how many millions of dol- I mean, what is going to be the cost of that? You know, that unusable space in the parking garage and how is that affecting the Coliseum? And what are we doing with renting space, et cetera, for people to park down there? Because I know the home show was pretty much affected by the, uh, closed parking garage, at least, I understand they're going elsewhere next year. One other quick thing and then I will stop, this is, this is just a, a shortlist. On the hire back, the police hire back, um, yes, that is a huge expense. But in my, in my view, what have, what concrete steps have we taken to really, you know, if you will, fix that, uh, situation downtown Bloomington, which I've observed firsthand so many times, that is so chaotic, so troubling and so disturbing to our, our reputation and our, in general, the atmosphere down there? So that maybe we wouldn't need the officers, or maybe we could do with certainly a lot less if, if new, new criteria were put in place, such as one I've suggested many times, that we close the street, that we get control, much, much better control of that situation, so that we don't have all of the hire back that, that we do have. Um, to me, that cost would go over to those who are benefiting, which would be the, the owners of some of these businesses that apparently are over-serving our, um, youth. And by the way, we had a business, another business obviously left down there, which we really haven't noted, but I think it was a really, a really great business and I hated to see it go. So I, I think fixing that situation would be very, very beneficial to our, our budget. Thank you.
Okay, just, as we go through, just, uh, I, I'm making lists of stuff, but mostly, Judy, I think some of the things that you're talking about, like, uh, questions about the parking garage, these are not things that are really, I mean, we can give updates on that, but our main goal here is to talk about our particular budget. Um, I mean, I think what I'm gathering you're saying is, we can save money by thinking about contracting for some positions, but perhaps not others like legal, uh, and maybe things like gun range, maintenance, mowing, um, and you had a question then about the retiree sick leave buyback, I think the, the council has been attempting to pursue that. Um, but are there any other ideas or did I miss, are there some other specific ideas for how we can get this budget closed, this gap?
Um, I think, just moving in, in that general direction, I mean, what, I guess what, why I brought up the parking garage is I'm thinking that's a situation, uh, maybe I'm mistaken or hearing wrong, that we really have to deal with very soon. So I see that as being a strong pressure on this budget. And I don't know if, how we're looking at it, but if we're not.
Yeah, as, as I understand it, as, it's not directly related to this budget, that, cause my understanding is we're gonna dip into the fund balance temporarily until we recover, because it's not our fault, right? Is, is that correct?
Generally speaking, y- yes. To make the repairs, more than likely, we'll have to come up with the money, either from fund balance or borrowing funds, and then through legal action, arbit- mediation, arbitration, hopefully then we would be repaid. But as we all know, litigation can take a long period of time, but yeah, more than likely, we'll have to front end the money first and then hopefully recover that, which we've got strong attorneys that are gonna be working on that. And we'll have more to report on that here in the next thirty days.
Right, right, and so, so that's not exactly something directly, I understand what you're bringing up, the cost, but it doesn't, doesn't directly affect our particular situation this year or next year.
Also, the motor fuel fund has three point eight million in it, what, why, why do we have that?
Yes, uh, we are showing, you know, we constantly put in the budget, you know, what we're projecting to use the motor fuel tax. Previous discussions, we, we've recommended we use motor fuel tax revenue, which is about two million dollars a year for major new construction. As an example, the replacement of the bridge over, um, Six Points Road. Uh, as you might hear, we're on the budget now, you know, at the state, to have them hopefully pick up sixty percent of that. But we're proposing that only our forty percent will come out of motor fuel tax. We've used motor fuel tax for other projects as well, Hamilton Road and others. Now certainly, you know, you could avoid some of that new construction and shift that money, uh, but it gets much more costly, there's a lot more paperwork, but nevertheless, um, and this budget does show how we would use some of those motor fuel tax for big projects. Hamilton-Bundcomers is another one. If we had to extend Hershey Road across the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks would be another, um, et cetera.
Thank you, uh, Alderman Sage, you're next.
And thanks, Terry, cause I'd like to try to get us back to a little bit more of a reasonable, rational conversation, right? Here's, here's what would help me, is in looking at particularly two of the models that finance brought, brought to us. Um, one of them being no utility tax and the amusement tax, and the amusement tax is a two point five million dollar gap.
That's Model D, right?
Model D.
If everyone wants to budget balancing, Model D, yes.
We're gonna have to give specific direction to staff before the end of the day today. Um, now, if that's, that two point five million doesn't even include the fact if we, if we say, as some have suggested, ten million dollars on roads is not enough this year, I want to spend fourteen million dollars, well then that gap jumps to six point five billion dollars.
Right.
Okay. Um, Model, Model E is no utility tax increase and no amusement tax increase, and that's a three point five million dollar gap. Again, as some have suggested, we're not gonna spend, I, I won't vote for anything that, that doesn't spend fourteen million, ten million's not enough, then that gap jumps to seven point five million dollars. And so what, I think what might help me is, is I, I think be- before lunch, I, I, I think I tried to be clear and, and, and I'll say it again, cause I think I need some sense or I think it might be helpful if we had some sense. Who's, who's in favor of?
Of which model?
Some taxes?
Right.
No taxes, whatever, I mean, we, if we can figure that out, then we can move on to the conversation about where we come up with the gap.
I think that's probably a good idea. If, if we can just very briefly, if you'll take a look at each model and, and, and if these aren't models that you favor, then, you know, what are those positions? But if we have one that you, that people seem to lean toward, balancing budget Model A is on pa- my page eleven that circled, and this says utility tax and amusement tax as proposed, other revenue revised downward, right? Okay, and David, you want to say anything else about that?
Well, again, that, yeah, that includes full implementation of the utility tax one time, you know, going all the way to five, and the amusement tax, so, though, that, that new revenue is included in A. But even with that, uh, we would have to, uh, you know, cut one point eight million from the budget.
Okay, but, and then, no, is that one, that's without the street resurfacing?
That does include, uh, no, yeah, that's without an, an additional four million, the six million in street resurfacing, and it does include all the new staff, um, and the revitalizing.
So essentially, ba- ba- balanced budget or Model A, if we remove the new staff,
Uh-huh.
would be approximately balanced.
Yeah, in fact, if you want to go to, let's see, which one, yeah, Model B.
Model B is the closest to that, I see, okay.
Yeah, that eliminates, uh, all the new staff, all the money for revitalizing, that gives us four hundred and seventy-seven thousand quasi surplus. But yeah, that's full implementation of the utility tax too, and full implementation of the four percent amusement tax.
Not counting the four million dollars?
Yeah, it doesn't count the four, none of these, none of these scenarios include an extra four hundred million in street.
If, if, if we're gonna talk about putting the four million back in, we've gotta take, we gotta add the four million as Alderman Sage has suggested in each of these. Now, balanced budget, a balancing budget Model B, since there's some surplus, we could have, some of that could be directed towards some of the revitalization and maybe if there is, I think, some to designate a new position that was justified for overtime or, or maybe legal, something like that, for B.
Question.
Question.
So the, the revitalization plan, the, I, I'm sorry, I really am, I missed this here, is seven hundred thousand, is that right? I mean, what?
As proposed, correct.
What, what was talked about the other night, when I asked for the cost, the seven hundred thousand, is that right?
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And again, a bulk of that is, is to help have money to really address HR and IT, which were really struggling. We're not training the needs and expectations of the big line departments.
Okay, now if we go for one second.
Right, I'm not talking about anything internal, I'm talking about the plan that, I, I apologize, the regional, the, the city plan that we're revi- that we're re-
Comprehensive.
Yeah, I'm talking about that. What's the cost of doing that?
Well, there's no additional marginal cost.
And it's minimal, because you, you've got existing staff, I, it seems like I've seen in their budget maybe twenty, thirty, forty thousand, uh-
In our budget?
No, that's in the Regional Planning Commission budget. It's not costing us really anything at this point in time. It's all being picked up. And if we don't do it, they'll go on and do normals, comprehensive plan. Both need to be updated.
Right, and had we gone with House of Levine, that would have been two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so the, okay, thank you.
Okay, and so, all right, so again, um, that's just reviewing item for balancing budget Model A and balancing budget, uh, Model B. B again, has no new staff, Model A has the staff and the revitalizing city. Uh, the balanced budget C, uh, let's see, has the utility tax but phased in, amusement tax as proposed, other revenues revised, revised downward, and elimination of all new positions. And that one is still about a one point three million dollar gap. If, if the mu- utility tax is phased in, in C, as opposed to going in, uh, all at once on Model B, and, and I think, thank you very much, Alderman Sage, I think this is, is very helpful, especially from a version of this, on Model D, utility tax is removed, the amusement tax is proposed, and the elimination for revitalizing, that means we're at a two and a half million dollar gap, not counting roads if we want to put the four million, so that would mean six and a half. Under E, utility tax and amusement tax are removed and no money for new positions or revitalizing city, and that's three and a half million, and if we put the, the, uh, roads back in, it's seven point five million dollars in terms of its gap. So this does in, in some level, help us to identify the trade-offs and difficulties and the challenges that, that we face. Let me, let me ask you this, and cause I think we have consensus on this one piece, I think that from what I understood from the comments that people made, that there really is no support for continuing with all seventeen of the new positions. Okay, so that part, I think then that suggests we can put budget Model A off the table, right? Um, now we look at Model B, that's one that has, that's, if we implement the utility tax and amusement tax, eliminate the new positions, we have somewhat of a surplus that might allow us with Model B to u- still put something in for revitalizing, uh, the city. And then C gives us a bigger, gives us a deficit, D gives us a bigger deficit, E gives us an even bigger deficit, and that, those are all independent of whether or not we do the four million, and there certainly seemed to be some support for putting the four million back. If we do that, then as clearly as we can make our case today, what's the trade-off? Where does that four million come from if we want to put the four million in? If we don't put the four million in, is there a budget model that people seem to lean toward? If you lean toward one that's a deficit, and that would be C, D, and E, how do we fill that deficit? And how, what directions do we give to the city manager to say, these are the things we want you to pull out, uh, to, to make up for that gap? Is that fair enough? So I think we're down to B, C, D, and E, or, or, and/or the question of the four million. Alderman Melwambe, I am so sorry, and I think Alderman Law, you're about to ask, so let me write, he's down to see who's next.
Okay, just a, a quick clarification question about the four million, so if we were to add that, how is that going to work in practical terms? As far as I, I understood, um, you know, the, the ten million was a stretch from a staffing perspective.
Yeah.
Uh, so how is it gonna work? Is it for the summer, later?
Massive pain and suffering. You're talking about very significant layoffs, elimination of probably all of our capital equipment purchases, you know?
No, 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 no. I think you misunderstand.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is adding the four million dollars for street resurfacing.
Well, so, so could we even practically?
Right.
Undertake an additional four million? I'd have to ask Jim, what do you think? Even with, we have contracts on Monday night's agenda, could, could we even bump that up and do another four million? And make sure you talk about the infrastructure, sewer and stormwater and water underneath.
The key is, is, we talk about impossible and easy. Uh, and, and so I'm not gonna say it's either-
Between those extremes.
I know, those are the two extremes. I'm not gonna say it's either one, I'm, but I will point out that it is, it is, it is going to be very difficult, and I'll tell you why. Uh, the difficulty at this time of the year is for us to get the, the, the work we've gotten done, remember, we, we came and said, please give us some money that we can televise the sewers, so we have some of that done, maybe a lesser amount, just so you know, we have, because of the funding you gave us, we do have some sewers that are televised, that we do have some projects out there that could, could go with some of the sewers already done and ready to go. That, that's, that's helpful, so I would say-
I bet it's not prime time.
It's, it's, right, not, not prime time televising or NCAA games, but it's the televising of the, of the sewers that would, sorry, I have that on my mind as well, but the, uh, the, the sewers, we do have some of that done, so there is some of that ready, that our, our crews actually, because as, as, you know, we, we look at this upcoming, you know, like, how much we went out for bid on, there are some, there is some flexibility we have. Uh, we probably would have to look at whether it's a complete four million, um, you know, it might be a lesser amount of more like a, a two million or something like that, that we have some backing for. I probably would stand before you right now and say, if you were to ask me my, my gut feel without going back, and, and I would probably say two million, we probably have the extra televising on and we could, we could, you know, uh, do that. The difficulty is going to be, we still have to put together a contract. We still have to put together the, the contract documents and all the work associated with that. And right now, we've got a deadline of October thirty-first, oh, yeah, uh, October thirty-first on the contract we're gonna be bringing, so that, they have to get that work done by then. The, by the time we put together all the contracts, this, and my point is, it's going to be more and more difficult. If you told us right now to move forward and do that, we'll, we'll pursue it as hard as we can. But four million will be closer to that impossible, if you, if you gave us more like a two million, it'd be more, it'd be more reasonable, but, uh, it, 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 this is practical matter, I think that was a good question.
And I would say too, you know, we'd have to outsource a lot of that, we'd have to contract, cause, cause our engineers and that also have a lot of other projects and that, and, you know, Jim's trying to be modest, but we'd probably have to get a lot of outside engineers to even help us tackle some of that additional work with all our existing
Our staff is stretched, I mean, you hear that often, I know, but it, they just are, that's, that's a good way to say this.
With the ten million, we're good, we're good to go with that portion.
That's coming to you Monday night for a hopeful approval.
Uh, let's see, I had, uh, Alderman Fazini next.
Yeah, I'm gonna read again. It, it occurs to me that this would be an excellent opportunity to outsource work with no danger to our staff, thinking we're trying to eliminate their jobs. Outsourcing road and sewer repair work is a better alternative than delaying the work. So I think we could do the fourteen million, or sixteen, uh, based on the winter. Uh, and, and when we're looking at these budgets, uh, keep in mind, for the last ten years, we've averaged one point nine million dollars in street and sewers out of our natural budget. The ten years before that, we averaged point nine, not even a million dollars. That's why we're so far behind, uh, and, and so, we really don't wanna go to zero, uh, which is one of the suggestions. But, all of these budgets, if you put the four million or six million back in, are, are gonna get way further behind. And we're not talking about the nineteen million dollars that we need in there for over the next few years, catching up sixty million dollars in streets, a hundred million dollars in pensions, and deferred maintenance of four hundred million dollars. So it's not, if you take model E, it's not three point five million, add four to it to get to nine, it's add four to it and add nineteen to it. I mean, we're way back further than we think we are.
Okay, uh, Alderman Fruen.
Looks like we have an elephant to, uh, bite off, and I guess you do that one bite at a time. I like the way we quickly concluded that we would not add new staff, concluded? Yep. So, can we take that to the next step? And we're public here, I don't know how we do a straw poll, but I think it'd be nice if we went around the dais and just said, whatever topic you wanna take, amusement tax, utility tax, um, motor fuel tax, and just get a yes, maybe no, and just get a sense for where we stand, okay?
Actually, if we, in order to, to maybe, um, expedite it, if we could also start with, uh, asking people whether or not they wanna try to figure out whether we put four million back in, four or two, or just go with the ten this time.
Mayor, can I make just a real quick suggestion?
Of course.
There is a hy- hybrid idea here.
Okay, please.
That I'm harboring, I'm not sure I'm even gonna favor this, but if we took the four million and borrowed it and paid the debt service that it would accrue at the same time, and put it back in, therefore alleviating bonding next year. So we've got the, the budget to do seven plus million dollars next year in, in street funding, okay? Uh, we're, we're basically borrowing the, the money that we would have allocated, that four million dollars that we would have allocated for fifteen, and putting it into the sixteen budget. Now, obviously, we're gonna have to figure out a way in the next twenty-four months, how we're gonna replace that additional.
If you could clarify, I'm not totally sure I understand you.
You've, you've got a fourteen million dollar figure that you're dealing with.
That the ten that we borrowed.
And we talked about pulling the four million out and, and, and using it in this for operating expenses, okay? Which is not palatable to me, okay? However, if we borrowed that money that we were going to put in there, okay, and allocated it into next year's, but the sixteen budget, okay? And paid the, rightfully so, we would have to pay the debt service, so there's probably three hundred thousand dollars or so in debt service that we're gonna have to come up with in addition to the four million, okay? And, and that way, we wouldn't have to have additional bonding the following year for the sixteen budget, okay? So we're, we're still spending the entire figure, but we're delaying it for twelve months, okay? So that we have an excess of funding for the following year, we won't have to have a, a bond, okay? Uh, and we'll still get the same amount of work done, we're, we're delaying it for twelve months, which probably isn't the, the best, the best plan, but it may be the only workable plan here.
To, to just, if I could, maybe I'm the only one who's not totally understanding, you do, so we would borrow four million more?
No, I'm not talking about borrowing, I'm talking about that fourteen million dollars, okay? And we're gonna spend that over a twenty-four month period instead of a twelve month period, okay?
So we spend the, so we spend the ten million that we've currently borrowed, and we get, we get four million next year?
We ha- well, we'll have to come up with the four million that we would've had anyway.
I think that's, I think that's what the, this proposal, I think that's what the budget proposal here is.
I'm not sure that's clear here.
It was in, I mean, it, it essentially, if, I'm, I, if I'm understanding Kevin's correctly, I think that's what you're proposing. We spend ten million, or ten million dollar street resurfacing this year, and then we find four million next year to put back into the budget. And then, so we'd spend fourteen million over two, two years, I think that's what you're proposing?
Well, yes, but when you look at the three-year, uh, trending, and Patty helped me, because, what, pardon? Yeah, but what was the funding gap the following year, when we re-added the four million dollars? Wasn't that about a seven point five million dollar funding gap?
Well, regardless of the gap, I, I, just, just to Kevin's point, I think, I think what Kevin's saying is what has been proposed, right? We spent ten million this year that we have borrowed, um, and one of the ways that we get through this year is by not spending the other four.
Right.
But we put the four back in next year, so we would spend fourteen million over two years on our street.
However, yes, we definitely are proposing put that in, but then next year, following year, we have a seven point five million dollar funding gap. Right. No answer how to kind of bridge that.
Four million for the sixteen budget though, is that correct?
Yes, uh-huh, it would just be four million.
Fourteen, fourteen million over two years.
Well, no, in, in the sixteen budget, we would have the four million plus three hundred thousand debt service that we already would've spent, okay?
Where's the debt service come from, Kevin?
Because you've, you've borrowed the bonding money, it's cost you nine hundred thousand dollars a year, okay? So we have to replace that, if we're gonna be ethical about this, okay, 'cause we didn't intend to, we bonded it early, if, if you wanna look at it that way. It was cheaper to do it in a, in a large sum than it would be in small increments, I'm sure, okay? But, so if we're gonna be ethical about it, we, we need to service that debt in the proper year.
You don't think with three hundred thousand though, would it?
Well, I, I don't know, I bet it would be pretty close.
No, but that, that's, that's including paying principal, the interest on that is a small fraction of that, right?
The ten million?
But, but that, that's, that's principal and interest, if we're replacing the, we're not gonna replace the principal, we would only replace the interest.
But, you're just doing the debt service, that's what I, what I'm trying to get at. So we'd have to, we'd have to come up with that extra three or four hundred thousand dollars, whatever it happened to be, okay? We'd end up with the original four million in the sixteen budget that we would've planned originally, plus the four million that we should've spent this year in fifteen. We'd have an eight million dollar budget for streets in sixteen. Is that, is that what you're?
Well, a- a- again, what this is proposing is, we just use the ten million dollars this year. Next year, our projection and our policy direction is restore the four million, ten million this year, four million next year, four million beyond that. But the reality is, you have a massive structural budget.
That's, that's a different subject. I'm just trying to.
Right, right.
We're just trying to break it down here, and look at the fund that we actually have, we've got that ten million dollars, okay? And we're, and we're gonna delay spending the extra four that we would have put in the streets, okay?
Well, we don't have the four million.
Yeah, we don't have.
I understand that, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. What I'm trying to say is, we have four million dollars allocated before the bond, okay? Do we not?
Well, that, we don't have it in this budget.
I understand that.
But we would put it back in.
We would put it back in, and that's what I'm trying to say.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
So, we, you were talking a minute ago about a seven million dollar gap that we, we were projecting for next year, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if we were to, to go down with Alderman Lauer's idea here, that would then become an eleven million dollar gap next year, because we'd be adding four million, which we would've already budgeted this year, towards next year to do a total of eight million, am I understanding you correctly? So we'd be looking at eleven million dollar holes, as opposed to a seven million dollar hole.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's true, and we would have to have a plan, but we do have twenty-four months to come up with filling that gap, rather than twelve.
And, or thirty days, which is about where we are right now.
Right, yeah, well.
Just saying.
Right.
Okay, uh, I am not sure who was next, Alderman Sage and then Sterns, or, sorry. Oh, okay, Alderman Sterns and then Fazini. Oh, oh, wait a minute, well, we've got a couple proposals out there, uh, so, a- actually, that's, we got sidetracked a little bit, and, and I appreciate what you're suggesting. So, if we could, maybe quickly go back to Alderman Fruen's suggestion, if, as much as possible, the key elements, what do we do about the, uh, street resurfacing, right? Add the four million, keep it out for this year, uh, some combination, what do we do? Uh, what are the reactions toward the, um, public utility tax and amusement tax? And I think even some of the, put the gas tax online, but at this point, these are the, um, the elements that are in the, the city management proposal. I'm gonna start with Alderman Fruen, and then I'll go around, and then, oh, yes.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, add to the, you know, suggestions about the straw polls for various taxes and such. Um, one of the things that I think each one of these budgets kind of assumes is something that's been said a few times. In terms of the city, you know, the, the city's budget, the, the staff, the various departments, all of that, we're at an absolute bare bones. I mean, we're, we're assuming, when we talk about this, that there's nothing else that's not in any of these. We're, we're, we're agreeing with that, that we're at bare bones, there's nothing we can do.
I think, I think what we're saying is, in terms, that, that doesn't mean there aren't things that we can cut, and I think some of your suggestions, you know, over the next year, contracting out certain kinds of things, we, we may be able to save a little bit here and there, and it might be fifty thousand here, and not that that's not real money. I mean, but when we've got a multi-multi-million dollar gap, that's gonna be something we can work on over the next year and reassess, right? Today, just because we're, we're giving our feedback on this, doesn't mean we say there's nothing to cut. It suggests, if we got a seven and a half, eight million dollar budget gap, um.
Well, let me throw out.
How are we gonna get there?
Well, let me just say this, for instance, now, something I've talked, I've talked to some people that are here today, and various emails I get and such. The, the, the concept, and this has been around as long as I've been on council, is do we need three golf courses? That's been out there. And, so, there's something, I don't know, I have no idea what the appraisals would be on any, any of them, I have no idea of what we would save in a year, blah, blah, blah. But the point is, we're not talking about any of those things.
No, I, I think those are some things we can also talk about, no, but, but even if we sold the two, two of our golf courses tomorrow, that's not really gonna affect this.
Well, Terry.
Because the, because the operating cost is approximately neutral, and that doesn't mean we, again, that's contracting out, or maybe even divesting two, maybe Prairie Vista and Fox Creek, we could conceivably do that. That's gonna save us potentially capital expenditures down the line.
Right.
In this budget, right now, the tire's hitting the pavement, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I, and I do see that, but I just wanna make it clear, that there's nothing, there's nothing out there right now in terms of, um, internal sort of, you know, operational, that's the term I need, cost savings, there, there's nothing.
Well, and, and, well, that's why, that's also, if you, if you've got some, we would love to hear them.
Okay, well, the problem is, I think, part of the problem is, I mean, obviously, I threw some out, and they were pretty much soundly rejected or more or less.
I don't know that we rejected.
Well, I think we kind of, um, said, let's get back on track here, so to me, that's saying, that's not, that's irrelevant. But I think that when we, when we do that, when we talk about costing, frankly, you know, I'll, I'll just say this, lot, Alderman Lauer and I voted against half a million of consu- outside consultant fees over the last four or five months. But we're always saying, in my, in my view, hey, it's only a hundred thousand, hey, it's only fif- you know, we're always saying that. And, and consequently, some of the bigger policy things, like contracting, sorry, but like that, don't happen, because it's just, it's just not, you know, not relevant to this situation. But, you know, I'm willing to do all the straw polls and, and all that, I just wanna make it very, very clear, that in terms of suggestions to us, you know, from frankly, the city staff who knows the internal workings of every department. We're, we're accepting the concept of we're at bare bones, there's nothing really, there, there's nothing significant, there's nothing really that's gonna help us in the next month to, um, cut our operational costs.
Well, a- again, I, I, I think if you've got some ideas, and that's, that's our job as policymakers, multi-million dolla- now, again, I, I, by, by the ideas, I wasn't suggesting that your, the things that you listed were not things we should pursue, but they're not gonna help us much in this fiscal year right now, contracting out. So, we, these are things we absolutely can pursue, and I think we might even absolutely get some idea on whether or not, should we even be in the, the golf course business or beyond Highland Park? I think those are legitimate questions. But right now, with the tire hitting the pavement, and if, as Alderman, you have suggestions for multi-million dollar savings, I think we'd be thrilled to hear.
Mayor, if I could too, I, I, I think I need to make this, I am committed to continuously looking at cost efficiencies in staff and the providing of the services. As an example, currently, we have one, we're gonna bring on a second contract employee in IT, exactly what the councils asked for. And, and as we're doing that, we will be looking at what is that cost comparison of contracting out for kind of a hybrid, you know, some contract employees and some in-house. That will, even the revitalizing city government initiative is part of looking at what is the best way, the cheapest way, the most effective way of looking at all services of the city. That, in my mind, unless you direct me otherwise, nothing's off the table, so we are doing that. The difficulty sometimes we get is, some of those things, we need to start a little bit more privately, confidentially. The more you start talking about eliminating whole departments or contracting out, it really affects, in a very negative way, morale. And unfortunately, uh, that's something I think we wanna be very cautious and judicious, but again, I just wanna point out, I'm committed to looking at, irregardless, uh, of how we can provide services in the most cost-efficient, effective way to bring best value to our taxpayers. That's gotta be our mission, our goal every day going forward. So, we're not stopping, looking at all the ways to, uh, to improve upon, you know, how we can provide services in a cheaper manner.
Okay, so, uh, again, we're going back to, uh, Alderman Fruen's idea, and again, if you could give us just some idea, and then we'll continue the discussion. Kinda tell us where you are at this point, we may change our mind in the afternoon.
On the four million.
Uh, on all of the core, uh, that is the, on the four million dollar street resurfacing, do we, do we keep it in there, do we take it out, or do we have some, um, other version, maybe of something that we might want to, to try to work on? The elements, the other critical elements of, of three different types of taxes, and if you've got any other types of cuts that you wanna put on the chopping block that might get us there, then, you know, at least as a first pass, let's put this on the table for purposes of discussion, and I'll start with Alderman Fruen.
Uh, first pass, very preliminary, I would go, this year, I'd go ten million on the roads, and four million next year. Amusement tax, uh, yes, motor fuel tax, yes, and utility tax, no.
Alderman Fazini.
I'd do the ten million bond and six million in the, uh, natural budget for roads. I would go with the four million for the utility tax, but only if it was used to do a bond issue to get us between forty and fifty million dollars to spread over everything and get us through the next three years. Uh, local motor fuel tax, I would, uh, go yes. Is there one more?
Amusement.
Amusement tax, I, I could do that.
Okay, Alderman, uh, Blatt.
Um, I am open to talking about utility tax and the amusement tax, but that would need to be coupled with some sort of cuts from the currently proposed budget, um, so we're kinda giving and taking a little bit. Um, I would like to see the four million on top of the ten million, but I am comfortable moving on that. I'm, the more I think about what you're saying, I, I can, I think we can do something with that, although I hate to defer problems to future Scott. Um, and, um, as for, um, the, the cuts, I think, I, the direction I would like to see, um, would be a budget that would be presented, which would have drastic reductions in service and staff, so people could see what it would look like if we did what they're suggesting, quality of life, parks and rec. Um, in terms of revenue enhancements, I would love to see, um, increased fines for downtown violations, I think that would be something I, in the long term, we can, we can, I'd be open to talking about. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think, when it comes to.
The one, the motor fuel?
Motor fuel, I would be interested in looking at, but I'm wary of it.
Okay, so that's an undecided?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Alderman Smith.
I'm at ten million for the roads next year. Um, I'm right now not interested in the utility tax increase, amusement tax, I'm okay with, uh, motor fuel tax, I think I'm okay with. Um, I actually think, when we're talking about cuts, that maybe adding none of these new positions is already a cut. You know, I mean, we're, we're already taking stuff off the table that we probably know that we need, so, um, and I'm, I'm interested in, um, pursuing Judy's idea here about, um, golf courses. I understand that, you know, obviously, we, we, w- we don't realize savings immediately, but if there were sale value, it also is sort of like bridge funding, uh, bridging funding, I don't mean funding a bridge. Um, you know, that, that provides us with. Yes, apparently, um, it, 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 it has a potential for number of positives, and I, and I honestly think we need to talk about that as we think about what our priorities are as a city.
Okay, thank you.
And where we are, right?
I'm gonna clarify something for the group.
Okay.
Uh, golf courses sell for somewhere between thirty thousand dollars a hole, uh, which might be Highland, uh, to up to ninety thousand dollars a hole, which might be the, uh, the den, the den. Uh, that would give us between five hundred thousand and a million six one time. Yeah, uh, that would give us between five hundred thousand and a million six one time.
If, if we could get a buy, yeah, get a buyer.
No, just so you get an idea, I mean, that's, that's from a lender's standpoint.
Alderman Painter.
I'd say no to the utility tax, yes to the amusement tax, yes to the motor fuel tax. Um, I'll go with ten million for the roads. And, I think we do need to talk about some creative ways to do some cuts. Um, because I think that we maybe do need one or two of those positions, um, just to save us money down the road. Um, as far as the golf courses go, I've got kind of a crazy idea, but I'm gonna throw it out. Um, Highland Park is an old course, probably has really good soil. Could we turn it into community gardens? We've got water there, we could rent out plots for people to grow their own food. Um, maybe use part of it for a soccer field, rent it out for that. I know that's nuts, but anyway.
And, and maybe a cricket field that I have, uh, many, many people who are, in fact, I, I've got hounded for that, uh, four or five times just in the last week for a cricket field. Um, Alderman's turn.
So, when we're talking to taxes, are we talking about leaving the positions in, or taking them out?
I think we've agreed to, uh, open once, I think Alderman, uh, Painter suggested that there might be one or two that might be put back in. But most, I think we already agreed we're not going with any positions.
Well, some of the public safety might actually save us money from overtime.
Right, right.
Um, and if you, I've gotta throw in one quick little. I think the, the downtown fixes that I've talked to a lot of people about, could immediately start saving us a lot of higher back. And I know, every, every single thing we mention, oh, well, that's only a hundred and twenty-five, you know, that's only, and that's, that's how everything is. So I think it's kind of unfortunate, you know, I, I forgot to mention, I would look at all travel within the city, as somebody who just traveled. Um, I would look at all travel, I would, I would like to have numbers on that, all travel. And frankly, as someone who's sitting here eating, all food, all food. I, I'd be happy to bring my own lunch, I'd be happy to bring my own coffee, I'd be happy to bring my own pop. Um, it's, it's tiny, but it's something, and it might be symbolic, okay, that's it. I, I would be only for the amusement ta- amusement hatch. Um, the others, I, I just, I just think it's unfair, I, I, I just totally disagree with. And, the, um, uh, the streets, um, yeah, I definitely would like to have the fourteen million. Um, the four million to next year, I guess I'd have to think about that a little bit, um, and understand what that would really do to next year's budget. But, um, I guess, have I answered the questions?
I think that's right, no, no motor fuel, no utility amusement?
No, I think people are really maxed, really maxed on taxes.
Mavoka.
Thank you. Um, well, I think in terms of the utility tax, I, I would say no for now, because I'm, I'm not quite sure what the impact would be. It's hard for me to gauge, and I'd like to hear more from my constituents, especially after we present them with, uh, um, the possible cuts that we would be, uh, looking at. The amusement tax, I would say yes, that seems like, um, yeah, unanimous one. Um, local motor fuel tax, uh, for the same reason with the utility tax, I'm not one hundred percent comfortable with that. Uh, so I'd like to see, um, what the impact would be there as well, 'cause I don't think we know that yet. Uh, as far as roads, I would go with ten million as well this year. Um, I, I'm, I'm disappointed that we can't do fourteen million, uh, but at this point, I think the, um, the added, um, stress on, on staff to be able to complete that before then, I think is, uh, is a little bit too much at this point. But, uh, we definitely should look at that for next year. Uh, I'm also, uh, I would be looking for more creative ways to, to cut fund, uh, funding for some of the initiatives that we have. One of the ones, I mean, not to pick on, on John, John is one of my favorite people. But I did look at the, um, the Parks Master Plan. Uh, I think there was something a hundred thousand dollars allocated for the next fiscal year, right, John? Is that correct, did I read that right? Right, okay. Um, so I, at least I, when I looked at it, it looked like master plan, and so I wasn't sure if this is something that we could delay by one year, or the following year, or is this something that had to be done? Um, so with the number of some of the, uh, um, items that I've seen in the budget, I, I'd like to know whether or not, you know, there are things that we could delay. I think at this point, that's, uh, that's all I'll say.
Alderman says? Um, the ten million dollars, yes, because I mean, I think it can be said, if I have to go back and say to the, to, to people that I meet on the street, we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty percent more next year than we did this year. I, I think that's something that would, what they would see as value. It's not fourteen million, but it's ten million, and, and you look at the four million the following year. Um, I, I think that's something that, that again, would have some perceived value. Um, when it comes to the taxes, um, I'm, a- as I sit here right now, uh, because, because again, I still haven't seen a, what I would say, a legitimate and credible list of proposed cuts, okay? Um, that, that I'm not in favor, i- until I see some of the, until I see some potential cuts, and I have some understanding of, of where those cuts might be, and I can have at least some preliminary conversation with the people in my ward, and I'll do that very quickly. Um, I, I'm, I'm not prepared to, to say yes to taxes, until I know we've turned over most, you know, just about every stone we can, looking for some reduced expenses elsewhere. Now, um, but, but that's, as I sit here today, if we come back, you know, in a week or so, and, 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 and I'm mostly in, probably in, in favor of a Model E, and, and you come back and say, three and a half million dollars in cuts, looks like this. And, and again, I, I, I wanna see some, I wanna see some diligence, I wanna see some legitimacy about those cuts. I don't wanna see, you know, we're, we're only gonna run the police department two shifts out of three. I mean, I don't wanna see that kinda stuff, right? Um, i- until I can understand what those potential reductions, those cuts might be, um, you know, I'm not prepared to, to swing more revenue over there just yet. Alderman Lauer.
I, I just have one question, a- and, and as I'm understanding, David too, you're also opposed to the amusement tax. That's what E is, correct? Okay. Right, yeah, okay, I just want...
Okay, I'm, I'm with Dave as well. I'm, uh, at this point, and, and I don't know that I can be convinced otherwise, because my folks just don't have it. We're looking at massive folks losing their homes, we're losing our tax base, as we know it right now. And there's a, this is the negative side to what you're talking about with all the other proposals, okay? Um, and that's what I was trying to get at earlier, uh, just in our business community alone, there has to be a positive sales increase over this proposed budget, if we didn't do, uh, any taxation. There is, and I don't know where that is, it's an intangible to some extent, I know that it is very tangible to each and every one of those business owners though. 'Cause they're the ones that are paying that bill and, and writing that check every month. So, um, with that mindset, um, there is a lot of things, and David, I'm, I'm gonna sit right here and tell you, sir, roll up your sleeves, 'cause I know without doing a, a, a massive amount of layoffs, we can find it, okay? And this is something that Terry and David and I talked about. Um, I would like to see a program where we sit down with every employee, and this is what private industry does, this is what the airline did with me, this is what the aviation operators that I worked with did for me. They said, look, you're worth X amount of dollars a year, prove it, okay? Where can we find the, the, the savings? How can you do your job more efficiently, more effectively, cheaper? How, how's it gonna happen? Because we've got five competitors out there, they're gonna do it cheaper, okay? Um, no, I'm not, I'm not on board with, with, uh, you know, private competition, no, I'm not. But, that doesn't mean that we can't talk to each and every one of our employees and say, how can we do our job cheaper, better, and, and probably safer in a lot of ways? And I know that those answers are out there, I don't think we're really talking to them, okay? Um, so, that's, that's the bottom line here with me. Um, on top of that, I think that there's some, uh, non, uh, uh, how, how should I put this? Uh, uh, essential services that we should be looking at, uh, better allocation of expense, okay? We are subsidizing a number of quality of life issues, and I don't disagree that they have great value, okay? But I do disagree with the fact that we're properly funding them, by, by subsidizing from the general fund. Um, and I understand that there's a, a top-end level at which people will pay a ticket price and maybe not come, okay? I understand that. Uh, but if we were in private business, that's exactly what would happen. Your airline ticket is this much, sir, are you gonna go to LA or not? Okay, and that's the bottom line, okay? You're welcome to shop around. Um, and, and, and that, that, that's the hard, that's the hard decision that we're, we're gonna have to make. So, looking at raising the fees, okay, for, uh, things that happen at the BCPA, things that happen at the zoo, things that happen at the Coliseum, things that happen at our golf courses, things that happen at our parks, okay? All of those things should be further allocated, so that they're paying their true expense, okay? We don't have to be, uh, necessarily income generating, like, like a, a, a for-profit entity would be, but at least cover our expenses or a break even in each one of those areas. Um, until we do that, I'm with Dave, I, I, certainly, I, I wanna keep an open mind here, but, uh, I, I won't accept allowing, uh, people to be taxed completely out of their homes. It's just not gonna happen here.
And, and I just wanna echo, and, and Kevin, I, I agree with you totally, and, and I'm, and I'm glad to hear you say some of those things you said at the end about, you know, parks and rec programs and that kinda thing. The, the, the problem is, we're five weeks out from having to approve a budget, you know? And so we're at the point now where we've, we've gotta change numbers in the cells on the spreadsheet. We've either gotta increase revenue by way of higher fees and less subsidization, or we've gotta decrease expenses. And, and so, um, there's a, again, a lot of good ideas that have been suggested, but there's not, there, there's not as many of them that are, can be applicable here within five weeks. And that's the guidance that we, we absolutely have to give staff before we leave here today. And, and, and so my, my question is, is I, well, I may, maybe, I was, I'll, I'll just ask you, do, is, do you have the guidance, David, that you need at this point, or if you don't, what gaps do we need to fill from a philosophical or a directional? If I can just summarize too, David, in the same page, I think we had a majority for the amusement and gas taxes. It didn't include you, but I think we had that, uh, and other creative cuts, but we don't really have, I mean, some ideas, but in terms...
No support for the utility tax.
No, there wasn't, right, apparently, no, nobody wants to go down that path.
Which, which if we can, let's look at Model D, because I think Model D, a- as I'm hearing it, seems to be maybe more of that majority position. It, uh, there's no utility tax in there, but there is the amusement tax. Um, it, it also...
A million, is that roughly?
Well, I, I just, uh, let's, let's wait and come back to the local. So, you know, basically, I'm hearing more support for Model D. There did seem to be on the local government motor fuel tax, some interest there. I'm not sure that I heard the majority says, yes, let's do that today, because frankly, I think that kind of proposal for a new tax is gonna take some time. I think we're gonna wanna reach out to Normal. I do think there is interest in Normal, to maybe consider that.
They would do, they would do it, perhaps even at the same week.
But if, if anything, I see that as something we, we actively pursue and bring back, but I'm not sure that that's gonna necessarily help this. It, it might even help more so next year, when we restore the four million in street resurfacing. Um, I also, as I look at Model D, I, I kept hearing the ten million dollar, but a- as I understood that, I think people were saying, let's continue with the ten million dollar street resurfacing this year, and then next year, do all we can to restore the four million, at least.
I think that's what we had, it's a, it's a pretty clear majority.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was unanimous.
So, we're really not adding anything back in there, so that local, other, as I look at this, what I see is, is for myself to come back with a city manager recommended, um, you know, two point five million dollars in cuts, in order to balance this, this Model D. And of course, I'm gonna be working with the directors and, and everyone, and we'll really spend some time aggressively moving ahead on the local government motor fuel tax, you know, to, uh, bring that back for further policy discussion on the coun- by way of the council.
And even, even if, even if it was one point six million, it would not, that wouldn't, yeah. That wouldn't close our gap, for sure, there'd have to be a cut.
Yeah.
With Model D.
Uh-huh, and we gotta be careful too, because it, it's just like the local government motor fuel tax. As you know, next year, by restoring that, we've got a seven and a half billion dollar gap. And, and it may be the local motor fuel tax could be earmarked for street resurfacing. But it won't, yeah, but it won't do anything to address labor costs and other things in the budget that are showing up just with the status quo. So that the amount of cuts the following year could, you know, be pretty significant to even, but nevertheless, so, is that kinda what I'm hearing? Model D with coming back as quickly as we can, you know, with analysis of the local motor fuel tax, and we would owe you two point five million dollars of very specific budget reductions, as well as the consequences of that. But basically, that would allow us to have a, a balanced budget in the general fund of eighty-eight point nine million, thereabouts.
Alderman's turn.
I'm confused about Model D. I see utility tax, three million, so I'm really confused, I'm sorry.
Now, yeah, yeah, you gotta look at that as it's being taken out of the ninety-three point eight million.
And then revive, I now understand revitalizing the city plan, that's the hires, is that, is that gone too?
No, that, that's not the, the hires is the one point six million, revitalizing our training and other stuff.
All seventeen, all seventeen positions are out, and the seven hundred thousand, all money related to anything, including HR, IT, any of this is out as well. That's what the seven hundred thousand. So, we can bring back that two point five million dollars for the council to review and to react to on, on the way of those further reductions to balance this general fund budget.
Uh, Alderman Schmidt.
Um, I also, as we're thinking about, um, any kinds of reductions, we continue to talk about whether, uh, sort of the fees that we charge for the work that we do, really is cost recovery. And we've talked, you know, many different departments. I mean, for example, our police department does an enormous amount of work for other communities in terms of cyber crimes. Um, I don't know whether our, our building fees really adequately represent the amount of work that planning and code enforcement folks have to put into it. And I don't, I, I know that we've talked about this, I don't know how far along we are in terms of the analyses of these, but, um, it seems to me that, that we need to maybe quote-unquote right-size that as well.
Just, just as, uh, since it's appropriate to that, uh, the, the liquor commission has been discussing raising liquor license fees, some of it to power wash downtown, some of it would be beyond that. They haven't raised since nineteen eighty-three. So, it, just in raw dollars, uh, they are the same, if you're operating a, an establishment, you have a liquor license, it costs you the same today as it did in nineteen eighty-three.
Right, and so, I mean, we did much of that, for example, in rental inspections, I think where we backed off a little bit of the work, we increased and kinda regularized the fees, to the extent we can do that, I think that's, that's fair.
What I'd like to do is put together a list of some of those things, 'cause just as you mentioned, it's like the cybercrime unit. We have three full-time people, but we do, a, a lot of that helps others. We'd like to get that on the list, so again, we have public, or, you know, council support to have that, so that as we reach out to Normal, the county, and others, they know we're coming. Uh, SR, or, you know, school, SRO, school resource officers, school districts are only paying fifty percent of that cost. Um, you know, by having maybe some of these that are on a list, at the police firing range, we, we have the others paying about, what, twenty-four thousand, but we're gonna be facing three or four hundred thousand dollars in capital repairs and costs. And again, that could be one of those, is, well, maybe we have to take a look at that before we commit. You, and again, this council hasn't taken a final position on whether or not the city of Bloomington should continue to be in the business of owning, operating, and subsidizing that range for all others. So maybe we could put some of these items together, as well as some of the fees and charges, with your political support. Then, as we start talking with the other entities, they know that our Bloomington City Council is serious. You know, we have to get into more fair and equitable cost sharing, and we have to be very, very careful about being willing to subsidize, you know, efforts where we are, are going alone. Kinda like the communication center, right?
Don't bring up old woman. Okay, uh, Alderman Fruen?
Mayor, mayor, I thought we were pretty divided.
Mayor, I thought we were pretty divided equally, I thought, on motor fuel tax. And just to clarify, motor fuel tax is used for what reasons? It's used for all new roads. And as I understand it, it can be used for new construction or repair, is that right?
Right.
So, no restrictions?
Just if I can also, for my tally, we had four in favor of the motor fuel tax and three, two against, two undecided.
Maybe we could just have them raise their hands. How many would like to see us bring back kind of some staff analysis on that? This is just...
Motor fuel tax? But without the analysis, well... Why analyze? I think we had at least five who were interested in, and that would help, that would close, I mean, that would close some of that gap.
We may have to spend a little more time getting into that kind of analysis. Maybe the universities could help us. Illinois Wesleyan and ISU do a whole-blown economic impact.
The same thing could also apply to cuts, right? We know that there's gonna be lots of, you know, we don't really know, we don't know what that'll be, right? I'm sorry, Alderman Fruen, you want to?
And Mayor, my comment was that we're, each one of us are committed to road improvements for many years out. And if this tax is specifically for that, it seems to me that it's gonna be one of the necessary evils that we raise. And we still have a gap, so that's why it's a little more palatable for me, knowing that we've got another big mountain to climb with regard to other expense cuts. So, I hope that we can move that forward and have that analysis and make a quick decision, because then, depending on what that revenue is, we might not have the two point five cut.
Yeah, it might be more like nine hundred thousand, which might be more doable in the next thirty days.
And especially if you feel like Normal would be quickly, join us on that and be consistent.
I've been assured of that twice, including last week. Let's see, in order of, I'm sorry.
Can I just say, though, that don't think that that local government motor fuel tax is gonna help us on some of the labor costs. It'll help us in restoring the four million dollars, you know, in street resurfacing, but really, none of these other structural labor costs going forward, yeah.
Alderman, Fazini, excuse me.
Right. Just a little background, about two and a half years ago, Jim and I went to the Champaign and the Urbana City Council meetings. The four cent per gallon was approved by Champaign. It was contentious, and it only passed by one vote. And they didn't do it at four cents, they did it at two. And the city of Urbana followed. And a couple of years later, since it worked so well and it didn't increase the gas prices, and it was being paid for by people outside the community, Champaign raised it another two cents, and it was unanimous vote, and Urbana passed it with another unanimous vote. The same situation happened in Peoria. They went up two cents the first time, and then that was not easily passed. And then the second time, they said, oh, this worked pretty well, so they went up another two cents, and they passed it in unanimous. So, just background information. I think I suggested earlier, seven hundred thousand dollar expense reduction, and that was by not doing three intersections this coming year. And as I said, for the previous five years, we've done none. So, I don't know why we jumped to three instead of going one, one, and one. So, that's a way we can check some money.
That's a specific, yeah. Very, very specific thing that we can then respond to.
And last, I still think if we're gonna, well, if we're not gonna do the four million, then we have no option of doing a bond issue for forty to fifty million, which would allow us three years to take care of all of what we're having. On the other hand, we continue to forget that we have four hundred million dollars in deferred maintenance and pensions in some of the streets. That's nineteen million dollars a year that we're sweeping under the rug and letting future generations pay for if we don't start to recognize it and do something about it.
Thank you. Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talking about the motor fuel tax, I just wanna kinda bring up a couple of things, and I'm interested in seeing more information about it. But motor fuel taxes is interesting in a couple of ways. But in listening to everybody kinda give their feedback about the taxes, it sounds like we wanna go towards more of a user-type tax as opposed to a utility tax where everybody pays it. And motor fuel tax would fall into that category of one where you could essentially more or less choose to maybe drive less. And I can say that, 'cause my car's a gas guzzler, so I mean, I'd be hit hard from this one. That being said, we've been talking about a bike plan, we've been encouraging more public transit, we see more and more people going down that route. Motor fuel tax may have some impact in a positive direction on our budget now, but down the road, it might not be the fix that we think that it's going to be. And some of the things that we talked about when we were in DC is, and this is kinda coming through the pipes, that motor fuel tax is not adequately addressing the needs of the roads that we have. And on the federal level, they're looking to raise the motor fuel tax by at least twenty-four cents. So, if we're, if that passes and we couple it with one of our motor fuel taxes, now we're talking significant amounts of change. So, something also to keep in mind about that. And down the road, they may even get rid of the motor fuel tax entirely and put a little device in every race car and then bill you based on your usage. So, that's the future, for better or for worse. Just some thoughts.
Thank you for that millennial perspective. Alderman Milowombe?
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna pick on John again. Just kidding. But I, at least I wanted to, maybe to give John an opportunity at some point to talk about some of the, some of the pricing of the BCPA and the golf courses and things like that. Because in my opinion, it's not necessarily a given that if you raise prices, you're going to get the revenue that comes with that, because people might choose to do something different. So, that is something that needs to be taken into consideration before we immediately jump to that conclusion. As I understand it from John, is that even in terms of golfing, you know, it's pretty competitive out there, right? Because we have a golf course in Ironwood, we have the ISU golf course, so that's the environment that you're operating in. At the same time, we also have other quality-of-life venues such as ISU in terms of theaters, the Bond Student Center. I think Wesleyan might, you know, has a little bit. You have the Colosseum as well. So, I mean, those are things that we definitely need to take into consideration and not jump to conclusions that just because we raise the price, we are going to break even eventually. It's not a given.
Alderman Fazini?
Just so we know, the mayor of Champaign, after we visited, she instructed the city manager to send me their ten-page analysis of why they wanted to go to a motor fuel tax, and it had all the pluses and all the minuses. So, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
We have that.
You got it, yeah.
We'll kinda see what others have put in, yeah.
Okay, all the women's turns?
Just a kind of, I guess, a kinda question, frankly, for Alderman Fazini. With what you're talking about with the other pressures, you know, you just mentioned that it's not just, you know, what's here. And I've been reading and looking and thinking, too, and I definitely agree with you. And I also kind of agree that, you know, this is something that's been building and building and building. But my question is this. So, the way to not, you know, pass this on to future generations and not kick the can, is that to raise all of these, I'm a little bit fuzzy on what the fix is.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't know the total fix. I do know that we have nineteen million dollars a year that we're pretending is balancing our budget, and it isn't. And for the last thirty years, councils have been doing that, and that's why we're where we're at. So, we really can't keep doing that. We have to come up with another nineteen, not two point five or seven point five or any number like that.
Right.
So, I don't think we can figure that out in the next five weeks. So, what my proposal was is, let's do a bond issue to give us three years to figure out how to start making our structural deficit go away.
So, we would bond out how much, in your opinion?
Well, if we could do, if we were going to do the motor fuel tax, that would support between forty and fifty million dollars. We need to have a source to repay.
Right, right.
And if that isn't the source, then the motor fuel tax won't do it, because that all has to go to one place. That proposal, Judy, won't work if we don't have a solid source. If we don't do that, I don't know how we're gonna come up with nineteen million dollars a year.
But motor fuel can be earmarked for a bond for streets and sewers, too? Sewers?
No.
No?
Streets, street repair and...
Streets only.
We'll get your legal opinion on it.
Generally.
And I agree that the situation is not really, is much, we need much more money than we are actually looking at. So, anyway, I just wanted...
But I think we all know that, yeah.
I don't know if we're, you know, kinda getting to a point of more or less closing here, but I have one more thing. I did wanna clarify, I think, Kevin, I think you mentioned privatizing, and you looked at me or something. I'm not talking about privatizing. Privatizing, to me, means, you know, as in the Public Works concept that was talked about before you joined council. Okay. Well, I just wanna make it clear. Right. Well, obviously, State Farm contracts, I mean, to me, it's much, much different, though, than privatizing a department, for instance, or a group versus contracting here and there for just a very specific task. And I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I first, I just wanna say, as Judy was mentioning, what we do have to be careful about when we just look at piece meeting is there is federal case law that if we still supervise a contract employee, and they're really here, we're supervising them, that's illegal to have an ongoing, you know, arrangement where they are, we pay another company, they provide the employee, but we're the supervisor. So, it is much more...
Everything is illegal, or?
Oh, yeah. Apple and many of these other companies that we're doing that very thing to save on pension costs and vacation and other things, yeah, we're taking the task. Pardon?
Well, that's different probably from the private sector.
But again, you know, sometimes what they do is they say, here's a project we have, and they contract with a company to come in and do the project using that company's personnel, but it's that outside company that supervises those people, that sets their hours, that sets their leave benefits, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'll provide you something in writing to just kinda help make sure we understand that. But second thing, I think it would be helpful, Mayor, today, if we have a little more discussion on the police and fire pension funding policy. Because I know as I'm talking with the police and firemen, they're very, very concerned. Is the council supportive of funding the policy that you adopted last fall? And as you saw, you know, it's gonna take six and a half million dollars over the next five years. I'm just concerned, what do I tell those employees who have been asking since last fall as to, is the council committed to funding implementation of that policy? Now, that comes with a very high price tag on top of just these year-over-year labor costs for just rank and file. And I just throw that out, I don't know if the council's ready to maybe offer anything to help.
I think we can, you know, we may take a pass through this, and I think it was clear when we voted in November. One of the possibilities is we could have in November attached, one of my ideas, of course, not shared by others, apparently, was having a public utility tax designated for that. But it is our policy, and do we want to revisit that? And if so, you know, I guess, obviously, we gotta figure out how to pay for that as well. Is there anybody, anybody wanna speak to that, any additional guidance? Alderman Fazini, I know you suggested maybe we go to ninety percent?
Yeah, I did that, because that'll save a little bit, and it'll be certainly quite satisfactory as a number. But I think we're legally obligated to pay for those pensions as long as we're a city that's not bankrupt. I mean, as long as we're not Detroit or California where they have declared bankruptcy as a city.
We are, but, again, what you adopted was a much more aggressive, you know, funding above and beyond the state minimum required funding. State minimum required funding would not be calling for six and a half million dollars over the next five years. It would be having less increases in pension. And then towards the tail end, that's when you get into your ten, fifteen, eighteen million dollars. So, it's an intergenerational, very unequal, you know, sort of funding. So, it may be one thing to consider if there's not gonna be maybe the support going forward. Maybe the policy needs to be changed to adopt the state's minimum level of funding, which we had before, so that our costs can come down. I'm just trying to throw out, what do we tell the police and fire?
Well, I think the first thing, as Alderman Fazini has said, you know, we are obligated to pay unless we go belly up and we're not doing that. We've got serious issues here, obviously, but we're not doing that. But I guess the other question is, is, I mean, based on the fact that we've got a few ideas for cost savings, but we've got a difficult situation. Do we wanna revisit whether or not we wanna stay as aggressive as we have in our pension policy? I mean, we could, in the short run, we could balance our budget in the next year. That could be one of the ways, by essentially not stepping up to the plate with cuts and/or fee increases or tax increases, and then just not doing it or delaying it for a year. I don't know. I don't know what the council's thought on it is. Alderman Fazini, I think I know what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
You probably do, yeah. Wow. Our now-defunct Finance Committee recommended that we change the policy, and instead of taking what the state of Illinois gave us and putting it at the back end of our budget, the financial gurus in the state of Illinois probably ranked fifty out of fifty in the state. So, why we were ever listening to them is beyond me. But listening to them got us a hundred million dollars in the hole. The new policy made it very simple. We start out to get to a hundred percent funded within thirty years, making certain assumptions that were logical, that we all agreed to, and that we put it at the beginning of the budget and then build a budget around it. I would definitely not be willing to kick that can down the road and say, let's go back to the state of Illinois number or any other number and put it at the end of the budget to save ourselves money as a plug figure. It needs to be, and we need to be able to go back to the police and fire and say, yours is going to be paid and going to be fixed, period.
And just keep in mind, that is what our three-year financial projections call for, including the seven and a half million dollar funding gap the following year, because it restores four, you know, four million, it continues an aggressive funding, so... And we'll come back with those updates as we kinda do this. Just so we all know what's coming up the following year and the year after that in the way of our ever-growing structural deficit, you know, in future years.
And I have to say, you know, as we ask others, I don't think anybody's in favor of revisiting this, but as we, you have said you're not in favor of visiting it, and I think you're the only person who has actually identified a fair amount of pain, Rob. And you've been straightforward about that and how we'd get there. So, the rest of us have to realize that there's gonna be pain if we continue to follow this policy that I think we believe in at five thousand feet. But when the tire hits the pavement, as it's hitting here, we're finding out how difficult this is to close a comparatively small budget loophole. It may be worse next year or beyond. I'm sorry, Alderman Black, you've been trying to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. So, going back off the pension conversation, I remember the financial analyst coming to the now-defunct Finance Committee and scaring me half to death about the projections had we gone back to the minimum amount, but I'm not getting the sense that that's the direction that we wanna go. But politically, I can just say, even some of my more back-to-basics constituents who wanna just see the city services, just on the, you know, streets, sewers, and the basics, wanna see us fund our pensions, and they're willing to commit to doing whatever it takes to get to that point. So, that's, I think that we're all...
The thing that you would wanna ask them is that, would that also mean raising the public utility tax earmarked for?
I'm not sure the utility taxes are the direction they wanna go.
We've gotta pay for it somehow, right?
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. And I will go back to the commentary, and not everybody shares this in my ward. I've gotten people that have adamantly opposed this idea, but the property tax has become more and more of a popular theme of, why aren't we going down this route? We should be more, get that buy-in. So, when we revisit that conversation next year, that might be something that we...
Later this fall, in October and November, yeah.
No, at this point, we've got better budget numbers. At the very least, we're not gonna be here in this situation five weeks out, a year from now, right? So, we know that much, and that's certainly the progress that we are gonna be able to make. We're gonna be ever-conscious and ever-vigilant about this and with contracting out things or perhaps seeing whether or not we can divest a golf course or so, or whatever, we're gonna be doing some of this throughout the year. And we're not gonna be in this situation a year from now. It might still be that we want, we don't wanna say, we don't wanna identify the pain, right? And other than Alderman Fazini, you know, most of us, we're not identifying the pain. But we won't be in this, quite in this situation next year.
And to be clear, I'm not advocating that we need to raise the property taxes. I'm just saying that this is something that, when we revisit this conversation, this is something that I think people need to come forward and say, hey, we're tired of seeing this, and this is things I'm committed to, and here's how I'm going to pay for it. I think that was kinda missing from last year's discussion. And one last thing, on the administrative, I got a note from somebody that says that they're having trouble hearing us out in the world of cyberspace, so getting closer to the microphone is something that they've suggested.
Okay. I'm gonna go for Alderman Lauer, Milowombe, and Sterns, in that order.
Well, certainly, I think that we owe the pension debt... Well, certainly, I, I think that we, we owe, um, the pension debt, and, uh, we need to stand behind it. I think we took an aggressive stance. I think we need to continue. We could have actually realized, uh, larger savings if we'd been even more aggressive. And, uh, it's hard, it's painful, but we're spending a lot of money, and I think Judy and I have tried to outline a lot of those areas, um, that maybe we don't need to. And, 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 yeah, maybe we won't be perfect, and, and again, David and Terry and I talked, sometimes we have to make some managerial decisions that, yeah, it may cost us a little bit, and we may not have the best information available, but then again, if we can alleviate three-hundred thousand dollars here and, and seventy-five thousand dollars there, maybe that's the best thing we can do, you know? And sure, uh, you know, folks can come back in Monday morning quarterback, and, and we're not going to make perfect decisions in those cases, possibly, but then again, we don't have that upfront cost. And, and so those are some areas that I think we really need to take a hard look at.
Talking about consultants?
Consultants, studies, uh, extensive, uh, analysis. At times, you know, at the private sector, they take a, a good, hard look at things, but it's usually just the CEO and, and, and the, and the COO and, and a few other folks, and they make a decision, and they take a stab at it. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it really hurts. I've been on the hurt side. You know, when you go out and buy a floor scrubber instead of a, an, an aircraft, i- it's hard to justify, okay? And we've done that, and we've been there, and, and it was a good decision. Um, and, and, and so those things, you know, without hiring an outside consultant to, to study it to death, um, it, it, it's hard to explain and it's hard to, 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 to look at, at the time, but there again, you know, you, you got to man up and do it sometimes, and, and maybe we need to be doing a little bit more of that. Um, so anyway, I don't want to run on and on here, but I think there's a lot of areas that we need to really take a hard look at inside the budget, breaking down even further than, and he held up the book the last time we talked about it, even further than I can get in here, because I can't see what you can see, okay? And so I'm going to put it back in your lap here a little bit.
Alderman Milowambe.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to speak to pension funding, just for, uh, just a few seconds. I, I mean, in, in my opinion, I, I see pension funding as a moral obligation, so I'm really not willing to revisit, revisit it. Um, and I know, Rob, you were talking about, you know, maybe going down to ninety percent, which I, I understand, but at the same time, I, for me, when I make a promise, you know, I, I like to keep it, you know? And that's really how I saw the decision that we made, and I, I want to keep going in that direction, because we're, you know, Alderman Painter, um, um, mentioned that, you know, she's not sure if people believe in us, and that is one way for people to believe in us. I mean, if we go back on what we said we would do, um, I don't think it would be a very good idea.
Alderman Sterns.
And I, and I agree, I think we've all agreed, and we've all said this, I think, many times, that, you know, we, we owe what we owe. Um, I did a little bit of math and found that in, uh, sixteen, for instance, our pension obligations, if I'm adding these numbers right on sheet, come to nine million dollars in seventeen, ten, in eighteen, eleven, seven, nineteen, twelve, five. Million, okay, twelve and a half million. None of us, I guess, I mean, I don't know, but a few of us will still be here. Maybe some of us will, Scott. But, um, I, I don't, I do think that this is hugely concerning for the huge pressure that it's going to put on our general fund. And if this isn't rather kicking the can, then I'm not sure too much what is. Um, highly concerning, but we are absolutely obligated, and I think we're going to have to get really creative. Um, and I'm not sure that we've done that, that we've gotten really creative in terms of every city asset. Somebody said, I don't know who it was, every, people need to understand where every dollar is going to. I, I sent a number of questions this week. I've been looking forward to answers. I don't have them yet on all of them. I just, I got one answer. But I would also, I would really like to know, for instance, travel and expense accounts. What are we spending in a year as a city on, on people, you know, traveling all over the place? And I, I did some traveling, so let me say that. Uh, but the question is, I think our citizens, and I agree with Johnny, um, that they don't trust us. I tell, I one-hundred percent agree with that. Um, and I agree that, I'm not sure, they should. But I think they want to see a lean, you know, a leaned city that delivers. And every time we can look at one of those deliverables, I think it's very well-done to look at it. But meanwhile, you know, frankly, in terms of administration, you know, assistance here or whatever, and that, that shouldn't be taken as a criticism. It's just the way people think. People are like, you're adding to your administrative cost, and you're not even funding operations, you know, you- and they just shake their heads. They don't understand. This is the emails and the comments I got, Facebook, whatever. Um, so we need to knuckle down. There, there used to be a saying, back to basics, but did we ever go back to basics? Our, um, consultant fees, our outside consultant fees have just exploded. And again, I'd like to see some numbers on that, too, because yes, they're in there somewhere if we can, if we can figure them all out. But I just take them one by one, uh, two-hundred thousand here, you know, we're going to spend a quarter of a million again this year on our Baird Smith, whatever. I mean, to me, right there, there's a lot of money. And what did we get for it? I'm not sure. So anyway, sorry, but I'm going to keep counting up those hundred thousands and those, every, every chance I can possibly get. Plus, we need the numbers from the city to understand, like travel, whatever. Thank you.
Uh, Alderman Painter.
I agree that we're going to have to be really creative with what we cut, because I think maintaining quality of life here is very important. Um, my sister-in-law is a headhunter, and fifteen years ago, she got two people really good jobs in Decatur. They drove down there, took a look around, and they refused to work there. Look at where Decatur is today. Um, we can't go in a race to the bottom, because it affects economic development and everything. So we are going to have to look at, I think, some of the little things, maybe a lot of the little things to cut. Um, but we need to be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think we've got, uh, general direction here. Any other comments? Because we're, we could conceivably be out early. Okay, well, this is, uh, this is an important budget cut, and I'll go ahead and take credit for it. We're stopping, uh, over an hour and a half before our budgeted time, unless there's something else that we want to add. Thank you all very much, and thank you, staff, for coming out again on a Saturday and all the work that you've done. Appreciate it. We're adjourned.